Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Budget workshop time again. What we're gonna do today, at Megan's request, and it makes sense, is just start at the beginning of the book and work our way forward, skipping over what we did yesterday. Again, as we did yesterday, we'll skip the Personnel and Employee Benefits sections for now and get through the rest of all the departments. And then when we finish that, we'll go back and do the Employee Benefits piece as we go back through. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring this all to a close by seven o'clock and come up with a number and vote on the number. That's the plan for the day. So, starting on page eighty-six, Administration. And again, skipping the Personnel and Employee Benefits, so we'll go to Purchase and Contractual Services. Any issues there?
Not for me.
Okay. I guess my only minor things, I had looked at thirty-one fifteen and wrote down a hundred dollars instead of two hundred, just looking at the history. It looked like that would be all right. I don't know. This is for the Select Board. I don't know that we have ever used any.
Oh, it's for the Select?
It's Administration.
Yeah, I thought that was for other administrative people and stuff.
We're the Administration.
I think that was, if you go to a, if you go to the new Board Member Training or any training that lodging is any training that's overnight.
Yeah, I don't think there ever has been, at least in my term, anybody's ever used it.
Yeah, actually, I did, when I went overnight up to Ranger.
That must be the ninety-one.
That's right.
Probably.
So, I mean, considering this only affects the Board Members, and there's no raise included or controversy, would it be out of the question to suggest that twenty-one oh five, the stipends be eliminated?
If we're not gonna talk about Personnel and Employee Benefits in the other departments, we'll wait and talk about that.
Okay.
As we get there. So, anyway, my suggestion on thirty-one fifteen is to drop that to a hundred. Does anybody have any other thoughts on that?
Nope.
Okay.
Are we changing it?
I think so. I don't hear any objection. And we haven't spent it for several years, so.
No, and if this is all truly just Select Board, I mean, I think we could go down here and cut an awful lot of this stuff.
Well, some of it is stuff that we have to do, like the advertising and things like that.
Yeah, the auditing, I know that, yeah.
But five thousand five, the food paper, that, I think that, does that include, like, the food for these meetings, Megan?
Um, yeah, that comes from here, and then, um, the stuff that was done for the Capital Improvement Committee.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be happy to cut the five thousand and five back to at least, at least a thousand, seven fifty to a thousand.
I had written in a thousand myself, but I don't, I wanna make sure, because some of that is to take care of, you know, staff members who we are forced to be here during the dinner hour or whatever. I just wanna make sure we have enough. And it looks like it was cut to fifteen hundred by Rick.
I try to keep the meal expenses under a hundred dollars.
I'd be happy with it.
Let's put in a thousand. Does that fit with you guys?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Okay. Everything else is, in my opinion.
What comes under office supplies for us for two fifty?
I think a lot of that used to be for the Select Board packets that were printed and put together. Any of it is supply, if you needed stuff for certain meetings or...
What about these, like, these budget books? Would that come out of that line?
That comes out of my budget.
That comes out of, yeah.
Okay.
What, it was a hundred dollars spent out of that?
Um, it was probably Stacy ordered stuff for the packets that we needed.
Oh, okay.
What's the five hundred dollars for advertising?
That would be your required posting.
Public hearings and stuff like that.
Oh, okay.
So, but how, where did, why does it, we post it locally around town, compliments to the Police Department, we already pay for. Where does it cost us? Newspapers?
Newspaper, yeah. We've had, we're required to put those things on the newspaper.
But we've spent zero so far this year.
Yeah, but a lot of it is probably, we have public hearings coming up that have been advertised.
We didn't have anything in November. I don't remember.
No, but we had, we've had a couple since then, and we have the ones coming up for the land use ordinance and stuff like that.
Wouldn't the land use ordinance?
That comes out of planning.
Planning.
Oh, okay.
Wouldn't that be out of their own?
Yep.
Well, it's, I mean, you look at what the spending has been, I think Rick cut it to five hundred, and I think that that's not unreasonable.
Okay.
You wanna bring Owen up to speed?
I agree with Ken.
Or do you want me to show him my notes?
We're just, we're just on page eighty-six, Owen, looking at the Administration budget.
Great, I agree with Ken.
So, anything else there? Okay. If not, then we'll turn the page to page ninety, which is Town Manager. Again, skipping over Personnel and Employee Benefits for now. Purchase and Contractual Services, anything there?
Just, Rick, clarify for us what our retainer is for the lawyers.
Oh, that's for anything, the retainer or the, the things outside of the contract?
Well, I guess I oughta, oh, I see, well, there's two lines there.
There's two, yeah.
So, yeah, what the retainer is, thirty-eight, two hundred.
Right, and that's based on a, on a three-year history of what, what we, what we had been doing for services, and the five thousand dollars is for things that are outside of the service, any human resource things that require, that go to, you know, any kind of arbitration, any, any legal cases, land use cases that go to land use court, correct? Or does that come out of your budget? Is that outside of the?
No, it's, any litigation is above and beyond, yeah. And I would point out, too, for you guys, that if you look back at the history, the numbers are quite a bit lower, sixteen, seventeen, and earlier, but that's because in those years, the legal budget was split between several departments, planning and assessing and things of that nature. And since we've gone with Bernstein Sure, it's all in the Town Manager's budget, so it doesn't mean we've had a gigantic increase.
I thought that was since I got elected.
No, no. There were little pieces of legal fees in a lot of budgets, and rather than do that, we just lumped them all together, because it's all one contract now. The advantage is that the lawyers have an incentive to provide the service in the most efficient manner possible, rather than sit there and, and...
Run the meter.
Run the meter up. So, they, like, I just got two answers to two questions, just in the past couple minutes, that it didn't require a whole lengthy memo that, you know, a lot of research, which saves us a lot of money and saves them a lot of time and money. And, and so, the five thousand dollars, we had one case that, as you can see, last year, we had one case that brought it up to ten thousand, a little over ten thousand dollars. I mean, we can't budget for the worst-case scenario, so I dropped that down to five thousand.
Ken?
I just, two thoughts on that. One is, now's probably not the most appropriate time, but when, when reviewing this stuff, looking at the current scope of services with Bernstein Sure, because it lays it out pretty clearly what the scope of services is, what we get for that, you know, thirty-seven last year and thirty-eight this year. And I think going over and reviewing what's not covered under the scope of services helps folks understand better what this contingency, the legal contingency, could be used for. And then the only other thing is, was that three percent increase, was that built into our contract with them? Is that, I just can't remember if we had a flat rate for the duration of the contract or if there was an annual increase.
We did, but then, last year, the Board voted to do a three percent increase for the remainder of the contract, three percent a year for the remainder of the contract.
And some of that was because it was, this was the first town that they did this kind of pricing with. They wanted to see how it worked, and so there was a little bit of a, trial basis is probably not quite the correct term, but they wanted to see how it worked, and we wanted to see how it worked. And, like Rick said, there's a lot of benefits to it. And one of the benefits is that our staff members who use the legal services don't have to sort of worry about something, well, do I call them or do I not call them? They can call them early and maybe get an answer and foresaw something more difficult later in the process, so that's been really helpful.
Well, I think this is an example, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong. So, like, if we were to call up to Bernstein Sure and say, hey, we're curious about our existing TIF, and could it be used for X, Y, and Z, that would be covered under our existing scope of services. But if we were to say to them, we wanna do a new TIF district, that falls outside of the scope of services and would require this contingent money.
That, that's one of the examples, yep.
Ken or Owen or somebody that was there last year?
And bond council is another one.
Can you give me some idea as to whether they asked for the three percent or how the Board came about?
I'm wicked fuzzy on that, so I'll let you.
To give a three percent without?
I think they wanted to review, the initial contract was a little, wasn't by design, it wasn't terribly clear on what the, it was basically an agreement to look at how it went the first year and then to mutually agree on how the second year should go, and that's how that went down.
So, that was last year, and this is the third year, or this is the?
This will be the third year, I believe, right? Yeah.
This budget would cover the third year.
And we have a three-year?
It's a three-year agreement, yeah. So, the Board next year could, could decide. The Town Council is a board hire.
So, yeah, but where I'm going with that is, I wanna put that on Rick's calendar now, so that we don't get, in a pinch, come the end of the year.
Right. Yeah, I think sometime in the middle of the year, the Board will wanna take a look at that and make a decision and see if we...
Certainly before we go for the budget next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And we, when we hired them, we did that. We, we had put out an RFP for Legal Services, and we had a meeting with several candidates who came in, and, in fact, I remember it very clearly, because those of us, Bernstein Sure was the last firm that came in, and those of us sitting around the table said, we looked at everybody and said, well, these guys are gonna have to really blow us away because their number was higher, their hourly rate was higher, but we hadn't considered the fixed rate type of contract, and they, they'd have to really blow us away in order for us to even consider them, and they did.
Was that at a, like, when you did your auditors? I mean, there was only a couple people in on that. Is that something the whole Board was involved in, or?
It was a team.
Two people that made the decisions for everybody?
Well, the Board made the decision, and then, but the, the interviews happened with, with a hiring committee, basically, and it has to be that way, because those interviews, if we meet with more than two, we have, it has to be public. And the Board, the Board could decide to take a more public role in that at some point, but for the initial interview processes for things like that, it makes sense to have those interviews remain somewhat confidential. But in the end, if the Board wanted to hear from, say, the top two or top three of those, the Board could decide to do that. It would have to be in public.
Well, that would be sort of my desire, but...
And I, I mean, I probably won't be around when it happens, but I'm, I would be totally fine with that. I will say, though, going into it, I, I have been pretty consistently impressed with the services provided by Bernstein Sure, their response rate, and also, what that thirty-eight thousand gets us is access to an extremely deep bench to a lot of diverse professional services housed within the same organization, and it's not siloed, and it's not one attorney expected to do the litany of municipal litigation or, you know, legal opinions. If Mr. Sossier can't answer something for us, he walks down the hall and knocks on Joe Schmo's door, and Joe Schmo is an expert in TIFs, and then gives us, you know, an opinion based on that.
Okay, well...
Just to clarify something I said, Megan pointed out that the thirty-eight thousand two hundred includes one bond or lease.
Well, that's right, yeah.
Is part of it, so if we have two...
That makes more sense. That's making it...
Because we knew, I think when we negotiated the contract, we knew we were gonna have...
Yeah.
A library bond, or we hoped we were gonna have a library bond. I think, I can remember if they did the infrastructure bond, or if that was before.
We're not as dumb as you think we are, man.
There's a little more than, but we typically...
I'm just trying to get a better handle on things for next October.
Okay, well, anyway.
It doesn't make sense, because if you look back, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, it's, you know, like, fifty-five, legal fees, fifty-five hundred, forty-four hundred, thirteen thousand, then it was eight thousand, so, you know, I would hope for that extra twenty-four thousand, we're getting something.
Well, and don't forget that there was, there were amounts in those thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen amounts for legal services that lived in other budgets. So, that wasn't the entirety of the legal expenses in those years.
The total for fourteen, fifteen was thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-four thousand, nine ninety-six, sixteen, seventeen, forty thousand, nine forty-four.
Yeah, I felt like every department basically had a legal, had a legal kind of point in time.
Right, right, and so now it all lives here, and it's a little bit easier budget. It'll take a few years for, they just sort of back their way on the history or whatever, but, okay. Anything else in Purchase and Contractual Services? Supplies? And then revenues?
I'm sorry, can we back up to Office Supplies?
Yep.
Because, sorry, fifty-two, fifty-four twenty?
Fifty-four twenty, yep.
So, we, historical data tells us that you spend over a thousand dollars, and we've reduced it, and I understand you're trying to meet LD one, makes all the sense, but entering into a budget line, knowing that we have an extremely high likelihood of overspending it just based on recent historical data, is that smart?
We, we're doing some things to save money at our end with our purchasing of supplies. And it, there's a, several things that we're doing internally to try and keep these supply costs down, because as you see, there were, there were pretty excessive. You know, I'm not a big spender of money and supplies. You know, some of the things, is this where, like, the framing, pictures, and awards comes out of?
Sometimes in the past, if the administration budget ran out of money.
Yeah.
Okay, so is it comfortable with it?
So, I'm comfortable with this amount.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable in making this.
Well, if nothing else, we're, by getting electronic packets, we're saving some paper.
Yep.
Anything else the rest of the way, all the way down through revenues? I assume that we'll get the cable TV franchise fee at some point?
Yes.
Um, yeah, we got it in January or...
We get it already this year?
Yes.
Okay, and it was the thirty-two thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
It was slightly more than that.
All right, good. I, I always figured that that's not gonna last forever, but...
No, I know it.
As long as we keep paying it.
As long as they keep paying it.
Because the contract is up, whatever.
Yeah, right.
I'll see, talk about that. Okay.
As long as they keep paying it, we're happy.
On to Town Clerk. Linda, you wanna seat at the table? Are you okay back there? Oh, okay, because Jeff is equipped.
Own microphone.
Okay, and again, skipping Personnel and Employee Benefits for the time being, Purchase and Contractual Services. My comment there is on the first line, thirty nineteen, election costs. I sort of would like to split the difference between the Department Head and the Manager there, put in five thousand. I'm just concerned with the gubernatorial election and things like that, that we might be a bit short.
Yeah, Linda and I had a follow-up conversation, because I was a little concerned about the ranked choice voting, what that would mean for her for election costs. And Linda, please chime in here. If that was gonna be enough, if that was gonna be enough for her, and I think she, I think she said it was, was gonna work, but Linda, please. It's the first line, thirty nineteen?
It's, it's difficult to tell, because it makes a difference how many ballots we have to have, because that's what pays for my ballots. So, historically, it has not been over forty-five hundred, and some of the ballots I do get reimbursed, so it will be offset in the revenues.
If we have to put a library question on in November, will that?
If you have a special election separate than June in November, it will put me over.
But if we, if we did it at the regular November election, the cost of printing a town ballot in there, would that be?
I think it will be sufficient.
The forty-five hundred be sufficient?
Yeah, the biggest thing would be if we had too, too many items and you had to go to a second ballot, but I don't anticipate, we don't anticipate.
Or if you have a special election in April or another month, then, and we do it with machines, then it's gonna cost more.
Yeah, we probably, I mean, I would anticipate, the plan right now is to have a library question. Probably also, we'll have an ordinance question on the Styrofoam band, which we didn't get in time to get on in June. We may have that on in November, but I'm, that could go on the same ballot.
It can.
So, thirty-nine twenty with Training. Historically, you're well below the twelve hundred, and even this year, you're only indicating two forty. What?
Why is that so low? Oh, that's for Linda.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we've, we've already, I've already been to two trainings for General Assistance. The three of us girls are going to Sunday River for election training in May. There's other trainings I need to send them to. They haven't been going to a lot of trainings, but we need to get them certified, so they will be attending more trainings.
And, and this is another one of those cases, that a lot of, a lot of the training is offered free or very reasonably priced. So, it does help, it does help keep the cost down.
But it sounds like you're doing more than in previous years, so the twelve hundred seems to make some sense. At least, that's my interpretation. I don't know, Mark?
No, it's good. I mean, I, and I understand MMA does a lot for us.
Right.
But I was wondering if there was anything special that you're gonna be sending someone outside of that umbrella?
I, the first thing that came to mind was some of the additional training Diane's had to have to step into her new role and be efficient and effective there, and I, I mean, I anticipate her going to additional trainings.
That'd be in the GA budget.
That's also free.
That was actually one of my other questions, is who's covered under this?
The three of us girls.
Okay.
And the GA training that I took with Diane, the two trainings, comes out of my budget.
Okay.
It's only, it's really...
It's like sixty dollars or forty-five dollars per class, so if you're a member of the association, then, for those organizations, then your trainings are less money.
Anything else under Purchase and Contractual Services? Other contractual services, I believe that's a new line suggested by the auditors this year, that cash over-under line?
Yes, yes.
That's just a pennies line, basically. If you drop a penny on the floor and can't find it or whatever, in the cash drawer or something like that.
It's a lot of pennies.
It's, it's like if somebody sends real estate taxes in, and they're short, less than a dollar.
Yeah.
We can take it out of this and be able to put it in for the person, instead of taking time to mail a letter, pay for a postage stamp, pay for our time to write a letter.
Which costs more than the dollar you're gonna get.
Anything under a dollar, we can put in.
That's the threshold, is a dollar?
Right, we've been putting it in out of our pocket.
As rude as it might be, when you're talking to Linda, no, your, your head's gotta go this way, otherwise, the sound has to go all the way to China and around the world and back.
Okay.
And the folks at home have written in.
I can hear.
They voted you off the island.
All right, I'll see you later. You guys can handle it from here.
Thank you.
I'll be in China with my voice.
Okay. Anything under Supplies?
Assuming that fifty-four oh five is along the same lines as Rick had said earlier about being smarter or better at our purchasing.
Fifty-four oh five?
The computer supply, another, there's a reduction from seventeen hundred to eleven hundred.
Six hundred dollar decrease.
It's not the, it's not the same, Linda's department does not spend a lot in supplies, and historically, has not spent a lot in supplies. I think, we're just doing a better job in my office of controlling expenditures of supplies. Linda's office has never had a issue with controlling expenditures of supplies, and I just made the cut to more match what we expected the, her actual expenditures would be. I mean, it...
I saw your hand up. Okay, anything else under Supplies? Capital items?
She has three computers, computer screen, computer and, is it computer and screens?
No, this is just for the computer screens, for Brenda and Shay.
Okay. So, new monitors for...
Double monitors.
Double, it was, yes, and going to the double monitors, which I have to say, from working with it myself, it's nice, you can get twice as much stuff up there. Under Revenues, as we talked about the other day, my suggestion on excise tax, R O one oh nine, is to put in eight hundred thousand. That's still somewhat conservative, based on the numbers that we have so far, but I'd rather be a little conservative on that and not get surprised if we don't quite reach it.
What was the number?
Eight hundred.
I'm suggesting eight hundred thousand. We, last year, we brought in eight hundred and thirty-one thousand. At the halfway point this year, we were at four seventeen, and, and the halfway point last year was about half of the revenue, and so, we would expect this year that we would come in around eight thirty-four, I think. And so, to budget eight hundred thousand for next year seems quite reasonable to me, and...
I, you know, after speaking with Linda, I mean, and hearing what we've said over the previous meetings, you know, I don't mind inching it up a little bit. I, I don't know as I'd go as high as eight hundred. I might settle for, you know, seven eighty-five, and then see what happens next year and inch it up a little more, but I don't wanna be too courageous with that guesstimate.
I, I don't, I don't think I am being, basically, because, like I say, it looks like we're gonna be, we were over eight thirty last year, we're gonna be over eight thirty this year, I think, based on the numbers that we've seen from Linda so far for collections, so I don't see a decrease of fifty thousand in that line, so I'm, I'm gonna advocate for the eight hundred. I think, I think that's very reachable.
I'll just settle for the seven eighty-five and see how everybody else feels.
I would trust the kind lady behind us to tell us what number we should go with. Did you hear me on that one, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, we heard you.
Yeah, I'd ask for Linda's input there as well. I can't turn around and look at you, I'm sorry, I was honored for doing that.
You've already looked at it?
Yeah.
I already put it up a little bit from last year. At this point, mid-March, we were at close to five hundred and sixty thousand. We probably will match the eight hundred, but I would be more comfortable with not going quite that far, just in case. But it's your call. I trust your judgment.
So, the seven, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand seems more like a good number to go with?
In my conservative mind, yes.
I'm good with that.
Doug?
Yeah, I mean, I think if Linda thinks seven eighty-five, again, I think it's a compromise between what manager and you think, so I guess I'd go with seven eighty-five, too.
Okay, we'll put in seven eighty-five for now. This is one we may revisit when we come to the bottom line, if we're fifteen thousand short for LD one.
Let's make it ten million.
Yeah.
This is one that you always come back to.
Okay, anything else under Revenues or Town Clerk in general? If not, Planning and Community Development. And leaving the Personnel and Employee Benefits for the time being, and perhaps, as we did with assessing, we should leave the miscellaneous professional services as well, to talk about it in conjunction with the Employee Benefits. Does anybody have a thought there?
That's, that's for the Comp Plan Review and for the feasibility study, the RES feasibility study?
Right.
Fifty ninety-five?
Fifty, uh, no, thirty-six, thirty-sixty.
Okay.
Uh, we can talk about it now if you want, I just, I didn't know where we were gonna go with the discussion on the Personnel end of this department, and if that impacts the Personnel Services line or not. What's the Board's thought there? Wait, wait for later for that one, or do it now?
Wait for later.
Okay.
If we're doing Personnel stuff later.
It's, it's similar to the, because it's possible, if we look at that, we may wanna look at more Contractual Services, depending on what we do with that department. Anything else under Purchase and Contractual Services?
I do. We were just talking about how we have, you know, previously had legal fees in basically every department. This department still retains its legal fees. Is there a good reason for that?
Yeah. Yeah, this is one of those ones, it's for the TIF, the work that Sean is doing on the TIF. Any, any work on the TIF which is outside of the scope of the contract?
Have we spent anything year-to-date in legal fees? We've got a dash there, I didn't know if...
She has done some work.
She has done some work.
I'm not sure that we've gotten a bill.
With the Route One TIF, but I haven't seen a bill or anything from her yet.
Okay. And then I had one other question, and this is kind of maybe more of a broader question for the next budget. But we also have, basically every department having an advertising line as well. Maybe in the future, like we've seemed to have found a, a good deal with bundling legal services with an entity. I'm curious if, if that's a potential with advertising as well. And I understand most of it is just money to submit things, you know, to, to get stuff printed, et cetera. But is there a way of, of bundling and doing a mass purchase so every department, just like they feel comfortable checking in with Rick and saying, can I call legal about X, Y, and Z? Check in with, with the head shed and say, I need to go to Adventure Advertising and get X, Y, and Z printed up. Just also, again, for kind of ease of understanding, numbers, when you, when you try to figure out how much we spend on advertising, you gotta add up all these different lines and different departments. Just something for future thinking is all I'm saying.
Yeah, Megan, Ken, in the budget, there's a page in the budget book that gives you all of the advertising lines all lumped together for, for... So you get a total cost of advertising. But the, the types of advertising are dramatically, are dramatically different from department to department. Some of it's just advertising for job openings and things like that. In the case of Planning Board, it's legal postings for, you know, public hearings and all of that. So it's a different, you know, it's, it's a different posting and a different ad that we have to take out as opposed to just the job advertisement.
Along those, well, I guess we're getting to equipment and supply.
I, advertising, the only thing I had was splitting the difference there, putting two thousand in. I was a little concerned about the cut there if we have Planning Board stuff and things like that.
Yeah, we, we reduced that because we, we had a lot of advertising had to do with the dangerous building.
Oh, okay.
Thing. And we don't expect that that's gonna be the case again. There was that... It just seemed like there was, we had a lot of expenditure there because of the dangerous building and I...
Okay.
It just doesn't seem like we're gonna need to go higher.
Okay.
Well, here's a question. The, the, the building at West Rockport, though we have a person who's showed significant interest, we still have to advertise for that, correct? And would that come out of this line?
Yeah, that would come out of my line.
It would, yeah, 'cause it's not a planning issue necessarily.
Okay.
Anything else, purchase and contractual services, equipment and supplies?
Yeah, just, this is a question very much along the lines that Owen just asked. Is that it seems like every department has its own office supply and computer supply line. And, you know, I sometimes wonder if the town wouldn't be more efficient if we sort of centralized a lot of these office supplies and everything. I've worked at large organizations before where different departments can, you know, order their own copy paper and their own pens and paper clips and stuff. And of course, what happens is, you know, you find reams and reams of supplies, you know, that are just sort of being stockpiled. And it might be a little bit more inconvenient, but how about if we put consolidated a lot of these things and again, created sort of a central clearinghouse so that when, you know, the fire department needed printer paper, they knew where to get it, or paper clips?
Yeah. Oh, paper clips? It's a little inside joke. We, yeah. We, we, we do that in part now. All the purchasing goes through one person. It goes through the finance office. And it gets charged out to the department based on that specific need. But like copy paper supplies and all of that, where does that, which, do we divide that up by department?
No, it gets charged, the copy paper gets charged to the town office.
Gets down to the, charged to the town office. And that's a big chunk. This is all for specialized office supplies that one office may need. And, you know, Megan will send out a note saying she's doing an order for envelopes. Who needs envelopes?
Okay, all right.
Or business cards or paper clips and...
Anything else under equipment and supplies? Capital items?
Yeah. How much longer do those blank lines stay on for? I mean, I'm a fan of sometimes leaving blank budget lines in as reminders of where we have been. I just, I don't know, like for that specialty signage.
My intention was to do that this year, but there were other tasks requested that took longer than expected.
But that's the goal, is to get rid of some of these lines that continually have zero in them. 'Cause we are, as you, you've heard on several occasions, we're trying to do some of the things that you're talking about. Consolidate some of the things so we're not separating things into infinitely smaller and smaller detail. But also have enough detail so that you can figure out where money's going.
Revenues. This is a tough department for revenues.
Yeah. And there's not a, there's not a lot on the horizon to, to say that we're gonna see a lot of increase in revenue here. You know, Kerry, I don't, you haven't seen anything coming up?
I think that, too, just that very fact kinda helps guide us in our budgeting as we go forward. And, you know, it's not like we're experiencing explosive growth in this town.
You still comfortable with the twenty-nine thousand number? For, for permit fees?
It's a guess. I'm not, we're, we're not seeing anything coming in.
I think in the normal course of the summer, that some people will do an addition or, you know, something or whatever, that you'll see some stuff. But this is, you know, if you look at the actuals over the year, we had forty-five thousand back in fifteen, sixteen, and we're not coming close to that anymore.
Are most of these permit fees, are these small home additions or maybe a little new construction here?
From that, you know, to the whole house.
Yeah. Any building permit.
Yeah, but I mean, these aren't, I mean, we're not building big tire warehouses or...
No.
Not, not what I've seen.
Or not even any, not a whole...
We don't even have a Dollar General.
There's not a lot of home construction.
You know, a big one that would, if, if the, I think, the hospital has a plan for something. I, I don't know when they're gonna ever get to it or whatever, but that would be, that would be a fairly sizable.
So probably most of this is small residential stuff.
Just about all of it.
Okay.
Wait a second. Can I ask a question? Someone remind me, what year did we build, did they build the Sussman House?
Ooh.
Four or five years ago, wasn't it? Would it show up in this budget as an anomaly of...
I wonder if that's the fifteen, sixteen bump.
Yeah, that could be.
Possible, yeah.
Could be that bump, Owen.
Okay.
It was there before I retired, which was four years ago, some...
Must've been just there, must've been just there then, right, Doug?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't remember.
It seemed like it opened just after I started here.
Is that right?
Maybe it was before that, then.
We've got the right area.
I was just trying to think of the most recent large-scale construction we had and how noticeable it is in these revenues.
I'm thinking Brewster Point, maybe.
Yeah.
Felt like that was backwards, though. Didn't we lose a bunch there?
No, they, they rebuilt the house there.
Oh.
Did some reconfiguring around.
So we lost some, gained a little.
Gained a little.
Yeah. It shows up in the permit fee. So at any rate, it sounds like the twenty-nine thousand is about as good an estimate as we can get.
Yeah.
So. Okay. Moving on. Turning the pages. Finance department. Again, leaving the Personnel Services and Employee Benefits for the time. Purchase and Contractual Services. Anybody have anything here? Supplies? Uh, and then revenues. Guess we're good here. Unless I hear somebody scream.
Ooh, I have a...
Oh.
Almost. This is, no, you know what? It's a conversation for a different time. Every time I see interest, I'm always curious if we have our investments in, in good yielding interest.
This isn't that interest. This is our checking and savings account's interest.
So this is...
It's not the investment interest. It's the operating account interest.
Okay.
It's that money that we keep in the UFB, so we always have some money in the account that does...
And we can't store that in a higher-interest yielding account?
We already have a very high interest rate for savings and checkings account.
That's what I like to hear. Good job. Thank you.
The auditor was actually surprised how high our interest rate was.
Okay.
Don't make too much noise about it.
Right. Don't jinx us.
Okay. Moving on, assessing we did yesterday. Town Office, so page one-twenty-six. Purchase and Contractual Services. I'll just ask a question on, on the copy machine lease in line with, and I'm not questioning the number at all necessarily, but just in line with our perhaps effort to trim down supplies. Is there any time in the future when we could, you know, reduce the copy machines at all?
We just did. We, we just renegotiated a copy machine lease, which saved us a bunch of money because we were, we were going way over. And one of, one of the challenges is that the, the copier prints so well and it's so easy to use. Sometimes we use the copying, the copying machine for things, for jobs that we potentially should go out and have printed X outside. Because when you go to the, when we get into the overages, the cost per copy is pretty high. I can't remember what it is.
Seven point zero seven five cents per page.
So it, it jumps up, so in, in, we have to be, we're paying more attention to that than I, to do... Instead of doing big runs of, you know, if we're making three thousand copies of something, it is actually cheaper to go out and contract with a, a private copying company than to run up our copier lease overages on our copier lease. So we just re, we just redid negotiate a copier lease.
And that's in, that's incorporated in the thirty-five-hundred number?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, 'cause it looks like we're way over for this year.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what happened.
Yeah. And I guess my comment would be just that everybody, if everybody can think twice before hitting the, the print or the copy button, especially for something that's gonna end up in the recycling within a fairly short period of time.
Geez, if I think twice, I may hit that button twice. Oh, I...
Under the... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, after you, Doctor.
Thirty-fifteen, the computer software, that has to do with Trio. And that reflects the good price that we got from the negotiations of my...
No, that's different.
That's a different software.
Okay, that's of the Vision software, right, okay.
Is that like a server? 'Cause this, this number incorporates our server, too, doesn't it?
No.
That's why it's much larger than, the other ones are just kind of more related to computers. This is a...
This is the, this is the accounting software.
The accounting software?
Which is pretty robust.
Why did it take the bump? Is it new software I take it or...
Uh, we have to, so Trio is going to a web-based version. And in order for us to, and the reason this is happening is 'cause Microsoft is no longer supporting the project, the product that Trio has run off of. So we have to move to like this middle platform before we can move to the web platform. And a lot of towns had already moved to that middle platform, but we have not. So it's five thousand dollars or nearly five thousand dollars to move to that middle platform. And then next year, it'll be another five thousand to move to the web-based version.
Geez, that's a good racket, isn't it?
Will it then, will it drop off after you do that?
Uh, it will some, but they've built in some of the upgrades to the annual service contract of...
It's the same thing that's happened with Vision. Microsoft is suspending their support of the language these programs are based on. So they're having, there's no choice. They're having to rewrite their, their software.
And this is much cheaper than the other options that are out there for municipal accounting software.
The challenge is to move, to move up to another, another software is, you know, many, many tens of thousands of dollars, probably closer to the hundred-thousand-dollar upgrade, isn't it, to upgrade? What's the next one up? Munis?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Munis is a Fort Knox kind of deal.
Very, very expensive.
Yeah, and it's, you're, you're talking about many, many tens of thousands of dollars. I think it's in the hundreds.
You were right in about the hundreds, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's that crazy.
And it's overkill. It's more, it's more software than we need. The Trio software is used by a majority of the smaller towns. I mean, Munis is used by probably the bigger city.
Rockland.
Yeah, Rockland uses Munis, yeah. Which is probably a little...
We've got a lot of folks in town that can buy.
Do you think I have trouble with the bridge?
And if we give them money, they buy more equipment. We tax them.
Okay. Anything else under...
Yes.
Purchase, okay.
I'll let Big Fella go first.
Oddity is like forty dollars under a miscellaneous contract. What do we buy for forty dollars? What contract did we get for forty dollars?
Yeah.
Or what does that miscellaneous contract line cover?
She's checking. What's the number?
Is that, uh...
Thirty-ninety.
Thirty-ninety.
Not, not Gus, is it?
No, thirty-ninety.
I wish it was.
His, his numbers are bigger.
Yeah.
Well, that's just, I mean, it almost seems like it ought to be some, something in some other...
That was shred safe so that we could have all documents shredded from the vault.
Good answer.
There we go. Owen, did you have something in this section?
So mowing, and I'm not concerned about the increase, but I've got two questions. One is, when we contract out with folks to do this, are we contracting with like one organization to mow Marge Jones and the town office? We just happen to pay them out of two budget lines? Or is each budget line in relation to a specified contract with some mowing provider?
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Mike can probably answer, but I think the, the mowing contracts were broken up intentionally so that there were the...
Farley and Claybrook do everything in the town. And it's... Farley does mostly the cemeteries and Claybrook does parks, ball field.
And the town office.
Town office, so.
And my second question is, when is that con, what was, how long does that contract go for and when is it up?
Maybe another year. I'd have to look, but I think that's like...
I think eighteen, nineteen's the last year.
So this is our last year?
And, 'cause I don't know if I'll be around for that discussion, I just wanna throw it out there that when those contracts are looked at again or potentially renewed, I would hope that we would, and I know Claybrook's not far down the road and I'm not, I'm, I'm happy. I know we had some issues with, maybe they weren't mowing to what we thought they should be, but they were still hitting the kind of benchmarks we gave them. But we have a lot of contractors in town that are capable of doing those services. And anytime we contract with an organization within our own municipality, we're giving money to our own citizens' organizations that will reinvest that back into their business, which only helps the town out. So I'm not saying, don't go with Claybrook. I'm just saying, when we go and look at this contract again, I hope we would have some propensity to want to contract locally within the municipality 'cause I just see that as a benefit for the town as far as revenue coming in from, you know, if we're supporting them and they're buying new equipment, that helps us out.
When we bid it the last time, that's quite a spread in those numbers between people.
I think, doesn't our bid procedure favor local?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I think we've given some sort of percentage buffer. Once you fall outside of that percentage buffer, all bets are off. If you're within that percentage buffer, we would prefer to go locally.
Right.
Yes.
But I, it seems like when we bid it the last time, we, we didn't, nothing varied much the last time we bid it. Yeah, I, I think...
Well, food for thought along those lines, just shortly, is to be more exact in what we're expecting of them so that, you know, weeds don't grow up on the sidewalk by the town office when you're going in. We don't have a bunch of gravel across the way here in the park.
The flower gardens are actually maintained by Farley's.
Well, I mean, obviously, somebody hasn't been minding the shop, so it's, it's gone undone, so we just need to, whoever...
Yeah, this is strictly mowing, right, Mike? This is strictly for them to come in with mowers. And we...
Well, maybe that's included in the...
We can open that parameter up more if that's what...
Well, maybe that's where I'm going with that, is it ought to be part of it. And that way, you've got one person to blame if, if it isn't done right.
And I don't want, I don't want the mowers going cyclically day after day, but I, I did hear some complaints about the Marge Jones complex and the ball fields especially. I know once you get down to RES, you get soggy in and around there, so it's more difficult to maintain that field specifically. But I had heard quite a few things last season about the ball fields.
What?
Dandelion.
Kids trying to feel balls in the dandelion. Puffs are going everywhere 'cause the balls hitting them.
And it happens, it happens like almost overnight.
I'd say the dandelions come back within eight hours of being.
Hopefully with working with the school and them having a trained person that's gonna work with us, hopefully we can make those dandelions go away, like eighty percent of them, I hope.
It'll take time, but it's, it's a process that will take some time of working those down. But there was, we did have one case, I think it was at the town office or one of the facility, one of the facilities where this past year, there was something that, something that went awry and it didn't get done and they came in.
The bush hogging.
They took care of it, yeah.
Yeah, where's that bush hogging line?
That's under this mowing, under this mowing contract for the town office. They're supposed to bush hog once a year or twice a year.
I feel like there's some person that badgers me once a year about the bush hogging should have been done at this point. It's always the same person.
Me too. I think we have a room named after her.
Okay, anything else under purchasing contractual services?
Massive mower.
Other contractual services? Supplies?
This is the granddaddy of supplies. Not only do we have everything listed under supplies, we have a miscellaneous expenses for supplies.
There's nothing in it.
Things that don't fall into it.
I hate those miscellaneous ones.
Capital items. I'm gonna advocate for buying the generator, $30,000, and reducing the reserve back to 10,000. I'll just throw that out there.
Well, I'm having a hard time disagreeing with you.
I have a solution to that. If you had had a chance to see my email earlier today where I asked about using the 250,000 that we're considering putting into UFB, one of the major items that they considered urgent was the computer, the generator, along with three other items on there, which totaled about 138,000 that we have in this year's budget that we could eliminate by using that 250 or a portion of it.
Well, I think when we, we'll discuss that when we get to the UFB issue, when we see that, because we have to look at that. But I got your email.
I'd say don't put it in there until we figure that out. We can always plug it back in.
I mean, that money is already calculated in, to my knowledge, is calculated into this budget. So when, if you, whatever you do, it's gonna start affecting, whenever you, whenever we make any changes anyplace in here, whether it's the use of that money, that money is already plugged in here as part of the UFB, correct? So it's already plugged in there.
So it's almost like six of one, half dozen of the other?
Yeah.
So there's an offsetting revenue that shows that it's coming out of the 250 UFB?
No, it just goes into this UFB. It shows that money going into the UFB and whatever we take out.
We have to decide what we take out of the UFB.
Right.
To reduce taxes, basically. That's a decision that we'll have to make.
But we still have 250 that were, had from last year's rollover that we've been.
But it's already in the, it's already in this budget, correct? It's already calculated.
It's already been suggested to be used in the budget, so it's just a question of how we use it.
All right.
But you, you know, when you get into deciding what the UFB number is, you certainly can reduce the UFB number to get this.
There's considerable savings that can happen in this budget by using that money.
Yeah, we just have to look at the UFB in terms of what the balance needs to be to support the day-to-day cash flow and meet our charter requirement.
Yeah, I think we're at our charter requirement, aren't we?
I got a question.
We are. The auditors would like that to be higher.
Right.
Right, but.
Go ahead, Owen.
So one of the things I've learned is that I don't know as much as I think I know. And so I'm curious, what do I not know from the public safety folks? If we were to have a generator, I guess what I'm basing this on is, you know, if we, if West Rockport, if we ding up that fire truck and we can't put another fire truck in there, we become a one-station town and that does things to homeowners insurance. Is there any similar argument to be made? How do we benefit beyond, above and beyond keeping our servers going, having a warming station in an emergency situation? Is there any sort of financial benefit? Does it put the town in a better insurance standing to have this generator? Is it just good practice? It seems good practice. I'm just trying to get more ammunition to sell this generator.
I don't think there's anything.
There's no insurance. The big thing is we've lost power, I think, at least three times in the last year, if not more. And when that happens, not only does the fire department, but the police department lose all of their capability of emails and communication. It's also supposed to be the EOC for any events, which we can't have there. So at this point, we don't have a location for an EOC, which is your emergency operations center. And the last place that you should have one is at a fire and/or police station. So, I mean, I think I've brought it up for four straight years. The town office without a question should have one.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for a long time and my thought is.
I mean, those servers go down during one of the last events, we had no power for 24 hours and we couldn't communicate at all via emails when they were looking up information, so.
Last question is, talk me through, generally speaking, the specs on this. This is not above and beyond what is necessary to run our emergency services. This is the properly sized with installation.
From my understanding, it was a twenty five, thirty, twenty five? It was either, I think it was like a 25,000, which, you know, it's bigger than what you would put in your home. The one at the fire station, I think, is twice the size of that.
Which makes sense, because I mean, if we're also potentially a warming station, if people may come to rely on us for charging cell phones and having a charging station and all that stuff.
It's a basic, it's gonna look like a homeowner version, but just a bigger motor in it. And it's gonna run off propane with a big tank out back. So it's gonna look like your homeowner version, but just a little bit bigger.
I'm not against having the generator. I just don't want it to be added into this year's budget. I'd like to have it paid for elsewise.
Well, you'd still have to put it in the, you'd still have to put it in the budget, but you'd pay for it using UFB. I mean, it's, you still have to have it budgeted somehow.
Yes, everything lives here, including the money we take from the UFB and things like that.
If you were to ask me to prioritize the cuts that I've made having to do with to meet LD1, this would be one of my top priorities. We've pushed this one off a number of years, ever since I've been here. We've talked about this and talked about it. And, you know, we've been lucky. We've been okay. You know, the closest we, the closest we came to it being a serious problem was in the year we had the election. And that was the closest we came. Luckily, we got the power back on. But, you know, if they, if you were to ask me to prioritize the cuts that I made, this is one that, if we could get this back in, that, I think the town would be well-served. I would like to think that I could say, you know, that we could say there's an insurance benefit or there's something we, it makes us eligible for more emergency management grants or something. Although there is, there is the potential for, they've changed the rules for emergency management for generators, so there's a possibility we could get some grant funding, but, you know, that's, it's very competitive. But this is the one place that I would, you know, one of the priorities I would put.
So we, so the number you think that's safe is $30,000 for a unit installed?
The supporting doc says 25. That was the question I was gonna ask.
Yeah, that number is five years old or something.
Yeah, and we rounded it up.
Well, where I was going with that is, I think there's 5,000 in the reserve for that now, isn't there?
The town office reserve is.
Well, that's what, that's what the capital improvement information had on it, was that there was 5,000, I think.
Page fifty, page 55. Town office building reserve has 5,574 in it right now.
So we've got 5,500, so you'd only actually need 25,000.
Well, I mean, we had, the budget was to add some money to that reserve also, because I think there are other things.
Well, wouldn't that reserve money potentially be for the fire suppression for the safe as well? I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that reserve money could be used for.
Well, I think.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to using it for this purpose.
Well, no, I think there was specifically one in the capital improvement paperwork that we had the spreadsheet that indicated that there was 5,000 set aside for the generator.
That reserve account is for the town office. I mean, they could use, it could be used for that.
Well.
I don't think it was set aside specifically for that. I think the capital improvement plan suggested using that to partly pay for it.
The system for the solar panels may be a little more complicated as well, since we got that number, because they put the solar panels on the roof, so tying the solar, the actual power and the generator altogether might be a little more complicated than it was when we got that number.
They were supposed to, when they.
They done some work for it, but there's still, I think, some additional.
Prep for that, yeah. When they did install the solar panels, they were aware that, when they did that, that there was a good chance in the near future we were gonna have, we were gonna have a generator. And so they planned for that, whether there's additional cost for buying the equipment we'd need to interact with the solar panels, that hasn't.
Right, we did run most of the conduit that we could and have it as close as they could get it at that point.
So I guess the question is back, do you want to use that 5,000 as an offsetting number?
Well, and then the next question is, do you want to make a deposit into the reserve account or not?
Or placement?
I mean, I think like we've talked about that, that vault issue is something that's gonna have to be addressed in coming years. I wouldn't want to draw that reserve down to nothing without adding something to it. You know, if we want to, say, put 25,000 in the generator line and then with the idea that if it's over 25,000, we'll pull it out of the reserve account, that would be okay. But I would still advocate for adding the 10,000 to the reserve.
I agree with you. I'm trying to move some stuff along here.
So we're gonna put, we're talking about putting 10,000 in. There's already 5,000 in.
Right.
And then the generator.
Use the generator, budget 25 for the generator and whatever. It ends up being over that, use from the reserve. Because I think one of the things we, one of the things I want to do is I want to make sure that generator gets bought and installed this year.
Yeah, I do too. I'm a very strong advocate on, for this, largely on the basis of safety. And I want to make sure that we put in a very good, adequate, more than adequate generator. I don't want to find us wishing we, you know.
Yeah, because once you buy one, you can't make it bigger.
I'd almost go with 30,000 if that's.
I'm okay with that. It's the rest of the.
And then we would put in the reserve 5 instead of 10.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I'd do 30 and 10.
30 and 10 is what I suggested initially. Mark wanted to shave that back a little bit. I think 30 and 10 is okay. That's something, like I say, if we get down to the end and our LD1 number is where we want it, we can come back and maybe shave 5,000 out here, but I would advocate for the 30 and the 10.
I already wrote 30 and I was just listening to you guys talk.
And we can, now that we're DIMs compliant, we can apply for the grant. They're very competitive, but maybe we'll get lucky.
Yep.
Whose responsibility will that be?
Yeah.
That'll go through EMA?
EMA, EMA office will do it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Town office revenues or? Anything else there? Okay. Insurance, page 132. I don't believe there's anything we can do here. Anybody have any comments there?
I'm sorry, under capital items, what was our final number, and this is back at municipal building?
127.
Building improvements reserve, what did we end up?
10,000 and 30,000, a reserve and generator. That's where we are right now. If we come back at the end and we're spending too much, we can come back and maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Turn that a little bit. So page 132, insurance, there is really very little we can do with this.
No, but there is some good news. I saved 10% on my auto insurance.
That's the opposite. This shows a 10% increase.
Okay. Moving onward. General assistants, again, leaving the personnel and employee stuff aside for the time being. Again, I don't have anything here.
Do we have enough in there for training? And I know that you're getting some money for training out of your budget, but do we have training and education? Is that an okay line with our reduced rate training through MMA?
Most of that training is free, and, you know, free are 30 bucks for, per class.
What is retail mortgage assistance? 3360.
Rental mortgage assistance.
Yeah, Starling.
Rental, not retail.
The mortgage you get at Walmart.
The greatest places around town that we.
Gotcha.
And remember, all of the ones that are in gray are the ones that are reimbursed.
Seventy percent, probably.
Just the 12,000, 880.
Right. Okay, moving on. Police department, we did the other day, but I did work up a, while we're here, a vehicle replacement, a new vehicle replacement schedule based on our discussion yesterday with what Randy had told us, which was that we didn't need necessarily to purchase a cruiser this year, but that we would retain the third car for this year, basically to keep three cars available, see how the department might do going forward. Based on your discussion yesterday, it sounds like your vehicle is getting close to replacement age. Well, okay, well, what I did was I, I pushed the current SUV and the cruiser out one more year each here and put 1920 in for a chief's car. And then the assumptions I made here, putting this thing together, was that a new cruiser would cost $23,000. The new SUV would cost 35,000. And that half of a chief's car would cost 12,000. Now, those numbers, if we can play around. But I think that's kind of what I heard the other day. I also made an assumption that if we sell the vehicles at, in the case of the cruiser and the SUV, if we sell them at the third year at about 100,000 miles or so, that we would receive about 10,000 for the cruiser and about 12,000 for the SUV, either in a sale or a trade, whichever worked out. And I made an assumption on the chief's car that after, I used a six-year cycle on the chief's car and made an assumption that if we traded it, at that point, we would get 4,000 for it. Now, having said all that, I reduced those numbers for the 20, 21 and 21, 22 years because if we push those cars out the next year, they're gonna have more miles on them. They're gonna be another year older. So I dropped those numbers back as far as revenue that we would receive from sale of vehicles during those years. Also, during the 1920 year, that's when we would sell, if this plan goes according, we would sell the third vehicle. And so that sale of old vehicle estimate at 12,000 includes both the sale of that third vehicle and whatever trade-in, half of whatever trade-in value comes from the chief's car. My goal in doing all this was to keep that annual budget impact at the bottom fairly stable through the years. And also to try to monkey the numbers around a little bit so that the reserve account remained reasonably stable and didn't grow too much. And actually, the way I did it, it ended up growing a little bit more. And the reason I ran this out 10 years is that to make a comparison, and with the odd of the first few years, you have to look at the first year in the cycle as being 22, 23, which is the skip year. And at the beginning of that year, the reserve balance is 8,800. And if you run it all the way out to 28, 29, the beginning reserve balance is 13,000. So we gained 5,000 in the reserve through the life of this thing if we do this. I wish that hadn't been so much, but on the other hand, we're looking out 10 years and there's liable to be some inflation there in terms of the cost of vehicles and things of that nature. And also, it gives us a little flexibility, and if any given year, we have to chop our reserve balance by 1,000 to make the taxpayer thing, it makes a little bit of sense. So anyway, that's how I did this, this whole spreadsheet. And I guess the bottom line for this year's budget is that if we look at this sheet and if it doesn't make sense, Megan, you probably can tell me I'm full of hot air here with this thing if it doesn't make any sense at all. Or Randy, if the vehicle replacement schedule doesn't work, then please speak up. But basically, the bottom line is it seems like if we do it this way, that this year, we don't have to buy a vehicle and we don't have to put anything in the reserve.
So you're saying eliminate the 15 that's there?
Is in the, yeah, let me find it here.
On the budget?
Yeah, take that to zero. In other words, no cruiser purchased this year.
And you're saying take the suggested 11,000 out?
Correct.
You know, I would advocate for at least three, like the chief had recommended. You know, I, I would advocate for at least three, like the chief had, had recommended into the reserve.
Well, like I say, I, I just ran these numbers and, and looked at what would happen if we put in, if we started, you know, putting in the numbers. And basically, my reserve fund deposit, starting in 1920, is 6,000 a year, except for the year when we buy the SUV, it drops to 4,000 a year, because we're spending more on the vehicle that year. And, and the numbers, unless my numbers are all wet, they work. And, but I would, I would defer to others on the numbers.
I think your numbers are low, like when you're 21, 22.
Probably.
23, 886, I don't think it's gonna be, I think you're gonna be higher than that. We're about that right now.
Not having a terrible-
Which number, say again, Randy, which number?
Well, yeah, I think you're, you're 23.
23 is too low to buy a car?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, about what we are right now, to purchase one. I don't think they're gonna go down much.
Okay.
Is that just the base car?
The Chargers.
All-wheel drive.
It's a drastically discounted vehicle. I mean, I, not having a crystal ball, I would say, let's just do it year by year, and take out the 15, put in three.
I think cars are like computers. I mean, it's, when you try to go out that far.
Yeah, and the only reason I-
I understand the rotation of it.
The only reason I did it was because I wanted to see how the whole cycle worked and, and whatever. I, I fully understand that, and the out use here, predict what the cars are gonna cost is, is throwing darts to some extent.
So Mark, are you saying put the three in, but put the three into the reserve?
Yeah, on line 83 that she's at now.
Yep.
I mean, instead of the 11 that was suggested, keep it at three, you've got something going in, and if worse comes to worse, we tap into that line to give Randy some money for his car in the future, but-
Well, and I think that, I think that's okay. But I think the main point of my exercise here was that we weren't, if we, if we look at this plan, at least out the first few years or whatever, that we're okay, kind of really trimming this budget back this year, if we buy into the idea that the department can run with two vehicles. If we find that the department can't run with two vehicles, then we have to sort of revisit the whole thing. Because basically, what this does is says that, after you have the adjustment of this year, that for a net annual budget impact of $6,000 a year going out, that we can maintain two police vehicles, never go over 100,000 miles with them, rotate them in and out as needed, and we can fund a half a chief's car every six years. And I'm fully, you know, I take your point that 23,000 probably doesn't buy a car in a couple of years.
Your mileage is gonna be about 35,000 a year, depending on what the, some years more, some years less, so-
Yeah, and Randy told us 33 the other night.
Yep, you're looking at 105 or so.
Right.
So, and that could be managed, whatever car that is, to drive the other one a little bit more and-
Well, I, I think, you know, if we're not gonna buy a car next year, we really put the miles to the oldest car.
Right.
And then look and see, but that kind of doesn't give you an honest, how many miles you're putting on it, if you're really putting the miles to one car, to keep them off the other ones.
The bottom line's still the same, though.
Yeah, like I said, I, I, you could go two years, as far as I'm concerned. I've pushed my cruisers out to five years in Camden.
Yeah.
You're just not gonna get that trade or-
Right, and that's, I mean, that's, that's, you do see that drop off, you know, and you want, you want to sort of, you know, as, as that value curve goes down, you want to grab it before it drops off the cliff, if you possibly can. And I think that the town has done pretty well in doing that.
True, but picking up, picking up an extra year on your cruiser saves you a lot of money as well.
I mean, I know some people don't think we're in the used car business, but I think you'll find that when the car we got rid of for 10,000 is sold for 15, we may have to rethink what we do, so.
And if the board wants to sell those cars, I'm all for that. I, I didn't sign on to be a used car.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, we're, we're in it to try to do the best we can for the taxpayers.
Absolutely. My feeling is, I don't think that we should be selling those cars out to the public myself. There are other agencies in the state that are running into problems with cars that they sold, that people are doctoring up with 911 and police and things like that. And they're finding that they're actually allowed to do that, because that's their freedom of speech. Just saw that on the news the other day. I don't like putting cruisers out there for people to-
Well, if we don't, somebody will, so.
And you know what? That's on them. I don't think putting cars out there for people to dress up like police cars is prudent.
I think what this, what this chart shows, though, Ken, is that, you know, we can't say with any accuracy, 28 and 29 is an accurate number.
Yeah, agreed.
But what it does say is that we're not, like you said, we're not gonna fall off a cliff. And if we have to make an adjustment in, next year or the year after, we're not talking about a huge adjustment to, to, to get us back on track. I think you're talking about some minor adjustments to keep up with inflation and some other, you know, some other factors. But it's not like we're, oh, here's a big problem year that we're gonna have to deal with, we're pushing, kicking that can down to the road to that problem year. We don't have it with this analysis.
Right. And, and you may have to adjust the, the reserve deposit a little bit from year to year. Like you say, if, if the car is 25,000 instead of 23,000, then okay, we gotta, we gotta make an adjustment, and there's enough play in there to do that. We're never bringing the reserve down to the point where, you know, we don't have anything there. And there's also enough play, I think, that if we have another tough budget year, that we can say, well, gee, for this particular year, we're doing okay in the reserve balance, we can, we can cut 2,000 out of the reserve for a given year if we need to, so. That was my thought in doing it anyway. So, but at any rate, if, if everybody feels more comfortable putting 3,000 in the reserve now, then I think that-
Well, I'm not quite ready to go there, Ken. I think you put a lot of work into this document, and, you know, Rick says, Mike Rick says, as we refer to it, as a living document, which means it's not-
Organic, we call it.
Organic, okay. It's an organic document, and that we can, I think it gives us a good path forward, that it can be adjusted up or down.
Zero, I'm okay. Wave it out. If that's what, if that's what, that's what was recommended. I don't think it puts it into, I don't think it puts us in a dire situation. The, the other thing it does, is it does push out the cru, the current vehicles to four years instead of three. But that, again, that can be wiggled around, depending on when your chief's car comes due, and if your chief car doesn't come due next year, because I, I can't imagine that Camden is not gonna ask us for help with that. It would make sense for, and it makes sense for us to contribute to that, in my opinion, whether, you know, maybe some people may say, why are you inviting them to bill us for something? But it's only, it's only fair. And so, if, if next year, for example, your car isn't gonna be replaced in Camden, then, then we slide one of those other vehicles in and replace that, and then, and then pop the chief's car. And I, I think, like Doug says, you know, you can do a little mixing and matching here, but I think that the, the premise of it is not unreasonable.
Does Rockland still have its police motorcycle?
Couldn't tell you. I think so.
Do you ever think about, with all the open highways that both towns have, of having one?
I have not considered a motorcycle. I have other things to consider since I've been here.
All I can think of is the episode on Barney Fife.
Got a motorcycle for Mayberry.
Are you and Doug looking for part-time work or something?
If, if you do, I would, I would promote BMW over others, but-
Okay, so anyway, that's, that's my pitch on the vehicles there, and we already went through the rest of this budget, so.
They're talking about a sidecar now.
Yeah, right.
So where are we now?
Uh, see, fire department, we already did. Just paging through here. West Rockport Fire Station, we already did. Other Public Safety Services.
We did not do that.
We did that?
No.
Okay, yeah, Other Public Safety Service, page 172.
That's all our streetlights and stoplights and-
Well, you know, my question is, how did we get a decrease of 8,000 in our streetlights? Did we lose any?
I thought we did, didn't, through the counting, didn't we reconcile some of, we'd been paying for streetlights that we shouldn't have been? Isn't that all that work you did, riding around, counting streetlights?
Well, that equates to about 32 streetlights we've lost, then.
I thought the number was substantial, not, maybe not 32.
I found the monthly average, and multiplied by 12, added their projected increase, and came up with that number.
So it's based on, on bills and usage?
Right.
Okay.
So-
That's how she did it.
All right.
And we talked the other day that the camera LED light upgrades didn't, they had already taken care of that or something? That was a, or the cut there?
Which one?
Uh, 7305.
That is for the-
Oh, that's right, the Goochra Bridge, right. Uh, so that was cut out for LED one purposes. I don't hear anybody arguing with that one, so.
Yep, that was Goochra.
Oh, whoa.
The bridge down here.
Yeah. Are we, are we going to talk about Northeast Mobile Health?
Well, that's right, this is here too.
That's here, yep.
We have a meeting, was it tomorrow?
Well, no, actually, actually, it's today. It's actually going on now, I think, at 5 o'clock, but they, I think they-
Oh, glad we got a seat at the table.
Yeah, last I knew, they were gonna, they were trying to postpone that meeting to next week. Because not only were we not gonna be able to be there, but Hope, I think, also is in the same boat. They, they had a cancellation, or, you know, with budget meetings, so that they were, they were all tied up in budget meetings today.
I think, I mean, basically, this number, as I see it, is a, is a placeholder until we, and, and this may end up having to be amended on the, on the floor of town meeting, once we have the contract back, but it's, it's probably not gonna be wildly different one way or the other. No.
I, I believe Chris Farley is at that meeting.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, okay.
So, so he might be able to get an update from you.
They were trying to, they were trying to, they were trying to postpone it, because the chair was not gonna be there either. Mark Ratner was not gonna be there.
So, I was correct, it is tomorrow at 5 o'clock.
Tomorrow at 5? Where?
Camden Town Office.
At the Camden.
At the Washington Street?
Remember, we went back and forth like 20 minutes, and we finally agreed on the Wednesday, which is tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's what I had it in, is tomorrow at 5.
Okay.
Because I was gonna go from there, back over to here.
Right.
So, the question is, is it closer to 90 than it is 95?
That's close, the 95 is the number, is the number that we've been using, that's the, that's, that's where it is, closer to the 95. It's, I doubt if it's gonna go down. It depends on what the committees decide, select for coverage.
Where, where was the number I saw at one point of 88? Where was?
That changed, that's if you decide to use a different level of coverage, but, but also, we're looking at a, we're looking at a performance-based contract, rather than just assigning levels of coverage.
Yeah. Yeah, the number is gonna be, we, we really, we don't know what the number is gonna be. I, I think it's reasonable to hold this in here as a placeholder for the time being, but like I say, this is one that, like last year, we amended the road article, because we had to change a couple of weeks before town meeting, and we may end up getting this number and having to amend this article on the town meeting floor.
The last meeting I had with Butch, he said it will not go above this number.
So that's the top number, then?
Yeah, the assessment is the top number.
And it's possible, we may have a number, if the committee agrees and select board agrees, we may have a number on April 9th, when we meet to place the articles, we may be able to change the article at that point.
I doubt it. I, I mean, I'm not-
Yeah.
Butch was supposed to have a number tomorrow.
Right, but then the committee has to agree.
Right, no, and I understand.
But Butch doesn't even have a contract yet.
No, and I understand, but he was gonna come back with a new number, saying, if you do the performance-based, this would be the number.
But, but he doesn't know what the performance-based is yet. You know, he doesn't have anything to-
Based on what we discussed, he was gonna come back with a number.
Yeah.
Okay, well, at any rate, for now, holding that 95 in there is probably the prudent thing to do.
Right. It's a lot easier to reduce it at town meeting if we need to.
It's not possible to raise it at town meeting.
It's not possible to raise it. And he assured us at the la, the last time we spoke, that it, that the assess, the assess, the more, the, the assessment that he had given us initially will not go any higher as a result of any changes in the way we have the contract.
Okay, Animal Control, we did yesterday.
The next one, sanitation.
Harbor, what page is that, Megan?
It's in the public works section. So your next tab over.
Okay, we've done all these, okay. So we are looking at, uh, page 206. And, oh, 208, sorry. My eyes are, and this is basically the Midco Solid Waste Assessment, which has already been agreed to by that board, I believe. And the revenue side is the payment in lieu of taxes, which that board has agreed to.
And you will see, Jim, remember, Jim is coming to the next meeting on the 9th, I think it's the 9th, to talk about the raising the bag fees.
We already did that.
Oh, that's right, too, yes, we did.
We voted that last meeting.
Yeah, that's right, sorry.
So, okay, so we can move on from sanitation.
Conservation.
Conservation Commission, which we talked about yesterday initially, but this is our review of that. You have that, that's up there, right? I'm just gonna, I'm looking down to see if your numbers agree with what we-
I don't think I changed anything, well, I might have.
It was, I don't know that you made any, recommended any changes on this.
Well, we, it was mostly getting things, the numbers right, because we had some-
Did you update it so the numbers are right now?
Yeah, that's what I'm checking, and it looks like you did.
Well, that's not true. 5,005 was not to 0.
I had it at 0, actually.
Yeah, I had it down to 0, right across X O, 50 to nothing.
I didn't have anything in there for signs.
I made, well, I had just 0.
I had 0 in there for signs.
Yeah, I don't, at 50, I don't know how that-
Don't they take signs from you when they do the roadside cleanup?
At 50 for, I had 50 for postage.
Right, 50 for postage.
Because she said that they were able to piggyback on a lot of the other mailing, so the postage I had is 50. And supply, 750, that's what I had.
Yep.
1,500 for the tree thing. So I think that looks, does anybody want to go over these numbers again, after we did yesterday? Okay, moving on.
ARCs.
ARCs, page 224. Purchasing contractual services.
Is anyone aware of any historical grants we can put in? Those lime kilns, I mean, you're losing boulders out of that thing, and I, I'm, I understand that it is not a high priority. And so, putting $9,000 towards it now, I get where we're coming from, but it's almost to the point where it's either health and safety concern, you gotta rope the dang thing off, or we tear them down and spend money, or we restore them. How much have we looked into any grants for historical renovation that may fit with what we've got, to fill that in a different way?
Legacy Rockport is looking into that right now.
Awesome.
That's a project that they're gonna be looking into and doing a little bit of research as far as that sort of thing goes. And so, they, they are on that at this point.
When I was on the now-defunct library, lime council committee, I did ask Bill Nape Power, and he said there was little to none.
Okay.
So.
And typically, I'd be okay, but just, just this last season, you lost how many boulders off the-
There's one that's in, that's in need, we're gonna have to fence it off.
And you got all those little trees growing out the top, which aren't helping anything, and you got holes in the top, and you got holes in the top for the kids to try to fall through.
We've been keeping the trees cut down, but it's deteriorating, and you're right. If we don't do something fairly soon, you're gonna be cleaning it up with an excavator.
Yeah.
And I believe that, uh, in the eighties, um, you, I think in the eighties, they, they did a lot of work on the, those, through a community development block grant, I think.
They did. I don't know that that, and particular end one, I don't think, saw a lot of work, but it needs some now.
It's the one closer to, the one closer to your, closer to the Harbor Masters office is in worse shape than the other ones.
Of all.
And we're gonna have to put some...
So far, the number I've got to repair that's like nine grand, which probably isn't the prettiest repair.
Yeah, it actually seems low.
Makes it at least safe.
Yeah.
And that was last year. We've lost more since we got that quote. I mean, it continues to...
There weren't small rocks falling off the side of it, either.
It's not a safe job.
And it's not getting any better.
Well, what does the board wanna do there?
Speaking of thirty-six forty-eight, tree work?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, why do we have a separate line for tree work? I mean, we have, Mike has a line for tree work. Why don't we?
Tree work along the roads versus tree work in the parks, I presume.
Yep.
Well, tree work's tree work, and that's why it's gonna be supervised by somebody.
It's just a way to, it's just a way to separate it out.
Show it where it's, where the money's going.
Where it's going, yeah. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, this gets to the, kind of, bigger issue, um, again, of, uh, maintaining infrastructure that we have already. You know, I've been a big advocate for the Keep Rockport Beautiful program, and, uh, I went to the Parks Committee last week, or two weeks ago, uh, and, you know, next door here, they've been having issues with the gravel paths. Uh, they really need to be taken up and, uh, new filter fabric put down, new peystone put down. And, you know, we, if we're not putting money into the budget to take care of our parks, they are just gonna slowly deteriorate. So, and I'm getting to line thirty-six twenty-three here, where we have no budget for general repairs and maintenance. I'm assuming, Mike, that that would cover the, any pathway work that we did, or...
Thirty-six, right, I think.
Thirty-six twenty-three.
There are another line that you combined that with, Megan?
I think the Public Works is gonna do the work, so we put it in general maintenance, the supply line.
Okay, so if we did the pathway out there this year, where would that be paid from?
That would, would come out of Public Works.
Well, that sort of contradicts what I just asked about the tree, where you combine it. You'd like to have them separately so you can tell where they come from. I mean, it...
Well, if we jump down to seventy-one sixteen land improvements, the twelve thousand five hundred that was, that the department had budgeted, that was to cover forty-five hundred for the Mary Leah Park path, and eight thousand for the Kramer Park wooded walkway replacement. My suggestion there was to put eight thousand back in for that wooded walkway replacement, thinking that the Mary Leah Park path may be able to be picked up by, you know, another budget someplace, or the Garden Club, or something like that, uh, to help with that. That's just, that was, that's an initial suggestion to see what the rest of the board thinks there.
Do you think it would be eight thousand for the Kramer Park walkway?
Well, that's what it says, and, that's what it says in the, uh...
Is that with you guys doing the construction?
That was with us doing the...
That's just materials, just for you guys?
Materials there, it's...
Cause to me, that's, I mean, yeah, the, the Kramer, uh, Mary Leah Park pathways need work, but the wooded one seems more of a safety issue to me.
And you can do both of those for twelve five, is that the, uh...
Well, we've, we've talked about Keeping Rockport Beautiful, getting some volunteers, Public Works doing some of it, and Volunteers doing some of it, so we'd kinda, extra...
Well, I guess I would say, I'd put twelve thousand five hundred in that line.
If we do it for last break.
My money where my mouth is, but...
I'm okay with that.
The, the walkway is gonna become a safety issue soon, and it's not in a great place.
Yeah, we haven't looked at it this spring yet. It's been, it was bad last fall.
If somebody decided they didn't want the little wooden walkway, we could possibly look at it and change it and make it not a walkway where that is, but it probably should have a walkway there, so...
So, all these little things that we're gonna be giving you, like these two things, you're gonna be able to do that this summer?
That's the plan.
Good. Twelve five, as far as I'm concerned. Let's get 'em done.
Was there a decision made on the lime kilns line?
Well, so, here are my, so those two side-by-side lines, irrigation and field maintenance and lime kilns maintenance, I, I would love to put the full nine thousand. Actually, I'd, I'd prefer to put in even more and get it done properly.
The irrigation and field maintenance is in the recreation now, I think.
Yep, that could move to rec...
This is culture and recreation. I actually, I was just looking for...
This is just parks. We have a separate recreation budget.
Okay.
That's where, that's where the spirit of irrigation is.
Past Opera House? I wanted to look and see what was in there for...
Yeah, that, it, you weren't here for that part of the discussion, but that's been...
No, I just wanted, now, I'm kinda...
That's been, that's a really challenging part of this budget. Probably the most challenging part of this budget was separating out the parks and rec, separating them into parks and recreation and making sure...
Okay.
That we had things in the right places, and is, we're not a hundred percent convinced. I don't think that we've gotten it all, um, we did our best. We had Suzanne come in and, and do a, you know, do a quick, quick run, once-over, and you'll see, I mean, I made some cuts, uh, to the recreation budget that, in both of these budgets, that I wasn't crazy about making, but, um, I made them to, to get us into that LD one.
Well, I mean, we have to see, when we get finished with this, we'll see where we are, because we've made some significant cuts in some other budgets, too. So, adding stuff back in, and, um, I mean, I would say, just to see how it comes out, I'd put the nine thousand into the lime kilns and see where we, see where it ends up. Um, we may have to come back and revisit it when we get our bottom-line number.
That's worth that.
I would support that, knowing that, that is an area to look at if we need to whittle a little bit back. But I wanna make sure you got something to pack, cause it really is, it's a borderline safety concern.
But are we taking the pressure off of Legacy Rockport if we...
Well, no, because I think, I mean, those lime kilns, those lime kilns are a hole. It could swallow an awful lot of money, I gotta tell you.
A hundred and seventy-six thousand, if I remember correctly.
I view that as supplementing, not supplanting what it is that Legacy Rockport's doing.
And it may be just, you know, enough to, to sort of maintain them until Legacy Rockport can get a program together, maybe line up some donors or something like that.
Nine thousand will cover the fencing to put up around the park.
Right.
About right.
Cover the excavator.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're done with parks, unless any...
Did, um, so is this dramatic decline in mowing, that's because portions went to the rec budget specifically?
Yep.
Rec is nice.
And what, what I guess I would say back on the lime kiln for a little bit, before I put ten thousand in it, I'll try to get a couple people that, you know, deal with rock and what's going on with that lime kiln. Looks like it's moving a lot, so before I do put ten grand into it, if somebody specialist that does it tells me the things look like...
That's one of the things that Legacy Rockport is, is looking to do, is to try to find some experts that, you know, that have some interest in the historical preservation.
You know, I think a lot of what you should be looking at is the hill behind it, cause you get that hydraulic pressure from that hill behind it, and it starts pushing on that bottom.
Stuff going on there. I, I just don't wanna, you know, put ten in it, and then next year...
So, you may be scraping out behind it to relieve some of that sideways pressure, so...
Okay. We're going to Recreation next, which is page two forty. And, uh, I, again, thirty ninety and fifty-three forty, which has to do with the maintenance of the fields. I would support putting those back to the department head request, ninety-three hundred and an eighty-two fifty, respectively.
And I think I said before, that was a little under what they had asked for, their rec committee themselves, but was hoping we could, you know, do, have Public Works and, you know, with the school.
Yeah, I think, and keep in mind, if you do that, you, there's two places, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, is if they do that with the thirty ninety, they also have to look at...
You said both of them.
Oh, fifty-three forty, okay.
Yeah, I said both lines. I, that's my, that's just my suggestion. The rest of the board can chime in and tell me to get lost.
They've been, they've been underneath, underappreciated, I think, in the last few years, so I'm okay.
And, o- only cause we're on it, could you maybe talk us through, you've spent some time talking to the folks at the high school.
Yep.
We hope to have a better relationship in using some of their professional knowles, skills and all that stuff.
Knowledge.
We anticipate these numbers not having to grow over time, but either plateauing or possibly slightly declining based on us getting a better handle, building good relationships and annual upkeep.
I don't think they'll decline because of the numbers in the, um, fertilization and grass seed. I think we can get them to a stable number. I think they still may have to go up for another year or two to get this. The fields are pretty rough shape, the grass is, you know, there's so many weeds in there, like the dandelions. We're not gonna be able to take one year and just kill all those and have new grass, so after, after, say, three years, I think these numbers will stabilize, but I think there's still gonna be up and down as we work with the school. And, and hopefully, they're, you know, what we've talked about is some of their, some of their equipment they have, they're gonna...
Yeah.
Work with us as well.
And here's my quick pitch to everyone, is you sometimes don't, during the summer months and during the ball season months, whether it's soccer or baseball, you don't fully appreciate how much usage that complex gets because it's very difficult to see all the cars there. You don't see 'em from ninety. So, and, you know, during the summer months, take a cruise in there anytime. I do it frequently, and I'm astounded at how many people are there, walking their dogs, playing at the basketball courts, doing a pickup game of this and that. It's a great facility we've got there, and it's just been slightly under, underappreciated, and I'm, I'm happy we're getting back on track with it.
I, I, in the future plan, would like to see the parking, when, when big games happen, the parking is a mess over there.
We're gonna get that overflow, what was supposed to be overflow parking.
That old house, yeah. So, under, under fifty-three forty, did you say that's going up as well? Is that...
That was my suggestion.
Yeah, they, they both need to go up together.
Well...
Or else you'll have the work, the work being done, but no supplies to do it with.
Yeah, but if we kinda strike a, you know, like a eight thousand, seven thousand.
My, my pitch for that is, I anticipate, and I hope not to be wrong, one of the things that the rec committee, when we were talking about this in a robust fashion, was if the town can be Johnny-on-the-spot with the supplies, then the leagues can do better at volunteer work, but the kind of ask between, with the, how the relationship would be is, we'll get the volunteers there, just give us all the supplies that we need to do the work. So, and we're talking, uh, backstop restoration. You give us the paint, and we'll strip it, and we'll paint it, or we'll replace some clabberds and stuff. Just get us the supplies for it.
You mean dugout restoration? Right.
Yeah, what did I say?
Backstop.
Backstop, right. The dugout, sorry.
So, I guess, you know, I was originally looking at maybe a fifteen hundred dollar increase, but I would go back to maybe seven thousand, as Doug had said, and see what we can...
No, he said eight.
He said some, I think, I don't...
Well, I was eight for the thirty ninety and seven for fifty-three forty.
Right. So, I would go with seven for fifty-three forty, but I'm also gonna ask a question about the ball field backstops, because which one of those, is it the one over here at the old RES, or is it the one...
D, it's D, all of the above.
I think thirty-five, yeah, they're, they're all deteriorating.
I think the softball field's good, and the Little League field's good, but the Babe Ruth one, the Babe Ruth, am I right on that one? It's the Babe Ruth one is lean and hard.
They've all got some issues, but yes, that is the worst.
Before I lobby to put the four thousand in there, I wanna make sure I'm lobbying for one that's been overlooked more than not.
The worst, the worst one is the RES one, I think.
Right.
But that's the one that gets, doesn't get the biggest use. You know, the one that gets the use is the Little League one at Marge Jones, but they, the one that, i- in my opinion, the kids that play the hardest are the, are the Babe Ruth kids. It'd be their, their upper middle school and high school age, and when they're charging for a ball, they're charging for a ball, and, and, um, so it's, the Babe Ruth field backstop is, uh...
But this money was for the RES backstop. The four thousand's the RES.
Thirty-seven fifty.
Oh, that was for the RES one?
Yes.
I thought we had a separate bu- budget for the RES one, so...
And, and I would point to the fact that, in the supporting documentation, this is to go with money that had been encumbered from a prior year, where you'd already appropriated four thousand. Now, when we did that, we appropriated four thousand. The thought was that there was gonna be a private donation to match that. And that hasn't come along.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I quite honestly, am kinda still waiting for that, um, so I'm, I'm okay leaving that out at this point. Cause I think, as, I think as we talked, the backstop, it doesn't look very good, but it is functional. It works. Uh, and I think we have other things in town that have a higher priority.
And I hope we get to a place to where we can spend more time with RES, but the Marge Jones is the one that's used more. It's, I mean, people are coming...
My, my overall proposal was, was, as I say, to restore the ninety-three hundred and the eighty-two fifty, and, and to leave the four thousand out. Others wanna cut those other lines a little more, and we can talk about that.
It was cutting lines and not paying attention that made me have to spend, Jason, how many months did I spend trying to get money for that field? And it wasn't, it wasn't fun, because you're clawing for money, but we ended up spending close to twenty thousand dollars, if not a little more.
Three, maybe, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three. The, we're gonna get ourselves right back in, and it's not like we, we did an extensive, we only did infield work in a transition, and then...
Where did that money come from?
But the reserve account that was supposed to be for the tennis court, but because it wasn't specifically named for it, we, we put that money out there, and we're not one or two, we're one or two seasons away from getting right back to that same place if we don't continue. So, at some point, the board needs to have a conversation of, do we maintain this facility, or do we sell it to a private organization? And the cost is too much for us. I would prefer that we maintain it and let it be for the public, but we've got to maintain it at an adequate level, and this, to me, is kind of a, a good bare-bones adequate. This isn't even above and beyond. I've climbed on top of all over that place. I lived right next to it. It gets huge amount of volume and traffic. A lot of people are using it, and it's, I think it's a, it should be one of, if you, if, if maintaining our infrastructure is something you're looking for, either we cut this as an infrastructure item, and we turn it over to someone else, or we maintain it, and these are the numbers we gotta go with.
Rick, what's the, uh, is there any precedent for user fees on this sort of thing?
Currently, we don't have any, we don't charge...
I just meant, and I'm saying parks and, you know, your background is parks and recreation.
Typically, typically, you don't, uh, have a user fee for the organizations that are providing services to kids in, in town. You know, that's, you know, there, there's, it's the cost of doing business, the cost of being a, you know, a, a good town that people wanna live in, and, you know, I think one of the things that we are working with is, as Mike mentioned, is working with the school to make sure that when we do spend money, we're spending it in the right place, the right places. I mean, cause the, the highway guys are doing, good at doing the work, but none of them are landscapers and groundskeepers, and the school does have a really good, qualified person there.
That's a lot with fertilization and grass.
Right, yeah, so...
How you plan it.
I think you almost, you have to be licensed to do a lot of that stuff, too.
Yeah.
I have a question with relation to, I mean, we have some lines, you know, like your sewer feci, uh, usage lines, uh, that you have numbers. Your, uh, electricity, you have numbers. We've not had any water usage for numbers. We've not had, I mean, there's portable toilets have been out there, but we don't have any history of it.
Again, that may be in the, it's a parks and recreation budget split. You'd probably have to look back at the parks.
If you look at the top, everything in green is from the RES budget, which was combined to recreation.
Ah.
So, it's, it's an artifact of splitting these budgets up.
It makes it confusing.
It's a little hard.
It made, it, it, you know, I'm not, it's hard on us to keep this straight, so I...
After we get through the first year, it's gonna be a little easier.
And I, here's one quick fun fact, is, um, I remember talking, I think it was Stephen Beveridge, and we were trying to get a handle on the irrigation system and what it actually looked like, and where heads were, and this and that. And what was interesting was, we happened to be having that conversation about irrigation in one of the driest summers we'd had in a long time. And we'd never, we hadn't used it in years and years and years, but it was one of the few summers that it actually was beneficial to get the irrigation system up and running again, and if, if memory serves correct, that irrigation system is in better condition than we had thought it was going to be. We, we were borderline just gonna shack the whole thing and call it good, but it turns out, it, it's still functioning well.
And working with Mr. Novak from the school, he, that's something he deals with every day. He knows what heads we should be buying, that, you know, we're not gonna be replacing in a month, cause he's said he's been through that.
So, where do we wanna go with this budget? I mean, I'll go back to what I said, which is run the thirty ninety back up to ninety-three hundred, run fifty-three forty to eighty-two fifty, and, and leave seventy-three seventy-three at zero. I'm fine with that.
Well, in view of what Owen said, I guess I'd make fifty-three forty for the supplies, eighty-two fifty. Give that the full amount, but still cut back to eight thousand, uh, thirty ninety. Because you say you have people willing to do the work.
Yes, and, and they're willing to do the work. I think what's different with that thirty ninety line is the volunteers we would be utilizing do not have the professional certification to do the type of activity that that line covers. But I, I mean, I make...
That's the sports field, that's the...
Sports fields of Maine, yeah.
That's, that's to have sports fields come in.
It's all itemized on the next page.
Here's what I was getting at, Doug. The, 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 the prob- Here's what I was getting at, Doug. The, 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 the problem was getting compounded by the fact that the volunteers didn't have good training. So, rec committee's gone so far as to do proper field maintenance procedures for rake-out after a game. Instead of raking in one direction, you rake in a different direction that maintains certain things. Um, and we also have had conversations about restructuring the relationship between the, the leagues and their volunteers and the parents and the town, because it has to be a collaborative effort, but with us bringing our resources to bear on our end to expect them to bring their resources to bear on their end. I, I mean, I, I would be okay with reducing that line down to nine thousand even. Um, but because of the amount of time that I've spent there and the amount of effort that we've put just to, to kinda polish it up slightly to a place where, going back into history, this became an issue when my old stomping ground, Waldiburrow, refused to come and play on our fields because they were too dangerous. And I've played on Waldiburrow fields and they ain't a beacon of safety.
Was that, was that the fields, or?
It was the fields.
What were they referring to as dangerous?
There was a gap of about that much between the backstop. There was exposed concrete that someone walked around with a can of orange spray paint and randomly started spray painting all the hell. We had irrigation junction boxes that didn't have covers on them. Um, and we, it got to the point where, how much of your own equipment? We had folks bringing in their own equipment because we wanted to salvage the season. Waldiburrow refused to come and play on our fields.
All right. Well, I'll go for the full amount there.
Okay.
Both lines.
I think I saw Mark nodding.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
You need to pay attention to them.
Long-term debt.
Next is long-term debt, page, uh, two forty-eight. And again, here, there's not much we're gonna do here, just, uh, it is what it is. Any comments there at all?
Looking at county.
Okay.
Long-term, two forty-eight.
Two forty-eight. And after, after that is, uh, uh, the intergovernmental county fees, again. That's, uh, dictated. Purchasing contractual services, anybody have anything there?
Well, we shouldn't talk about it, should we? They're not here.
Huh?
Yeah.
Personal.
A little humor, we haven't talked about any of the other ones.
How'd we get away with keeping the mowing contract the same? Is it a multi-year contract?
Yeah.
Flat, flat rate?
Uh, to me, the only item to talk about in this budget is seventy-five, seventy-one, the reserve account. Um, if we don't put anything in there, uh, the cemetery committee's been working hard and getting information about, uh, getting a columbarium in there, which would serve the cremation needs of the cemetery, uh, for quite a few years, and also will generate revenue, actually. Um, but we gotta, we gotta pay for it.
Why don't we float the same idea, no pun intended, like you did with Abby's tie-offs? We build it and give them the option of having, what was it you were gonna?
Three-year term.
Do the three-year thing, get them to give you money ahead of time.
Well, that's the idea, actually, is that, you know, people would buy the, the niches, you know, like most likely they buy cemetery plots now. You'd buy it ahead of time. And actually, we have talked about, you know, if we, if this board makes the commitment to do this, and, and the suggestion was twenty-five thousand over three years, which would give us about the amount, right amount of money, that as soon as we made a commitment to do it, that we could actually pre-sell, uh, things. So, people would have bought one and have it prior to the thing being constructed, so we might be able to generate some revenue.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
And this is to, maybe to Linda and to other folks more familiar with, I guess we'll just say.
And Helen, it's you, too.
And Helen, Seaview specifically, what's the opportunity cost for investing in the columbarium versus expansion? Cause I've heard Seaview, we could put another row in there, and is that not a feasible, just, would it make more sense to invest in our current standard style of cemetery expansion, or is the columbarium the smarter way to go?
I'll let Linda answer that one.
We already have money in the budget to expand for full burials. So, One Avenue is supposed to be, um, expanded this year. Um, but we're talking about space for cremations and we probably have twenty-five lots available at this present time. We can, in a small section, we can get like thirty-six, forty-eight, um, niches for people in the columbariums. It's, I believe it's more cost-effective, it's less room. It, I mean, it's not gonna look, I don't believe, out of place, because you're gonna put, uh, the groundwork, you're gonna have benches, you're gonna have a garden, you might have a, um, place so that they could do a service there. Um, you know, we've looked at a lot of different ones and we will be going probably to look at, um, any that's available in the state to see what they actually look like. We're going to have a site walk at the cemetery where to place it. We wouldn't place it where it would look out of place. We just wanna, it will look much nicer, in my opinion, than if you go look at where cremation section is now and the way it's done, it is scattered. I mean, you have benches, you have different soundings.
That was a good part.
It's all week, folks.
With cremations, yes.
Basically, it's, you know, to be somewhat crude about it, it's, it's more, more burials per square foot.
Oh, and I'm not, I was just, I was curious what the plan was. I had heard about potential expansion of another row and didn't know if that was an already budgeted amount to where we could still work on expansion in the standard full burial and, or if this money would be better placed towards the expansion of full burial, but it seems like we've got that covered in the existing budget. And so, putting some money into the reserve for the columbarium does make sense.
And I think, uh, we have the, the current moratorium on Seaview.
Right.
For Rockport residents only. And, and one thing that this would do would be allow non-residents to, to come in and use the columbarium and to be, have cremated folks be able to be, uh, there if they wanted to. And there is demand for that cemetery from people who are in other towns.
Oh, yeah.
And that does generate revenue. And the fees are, are higher for out-of-town residents than they are for town residents for that sort of thing. So, it's a potential to bring in some revenue for other areas, particularly the folks in Camden who live near that cemetery. I, I always feel bad about that, because that cemetery is totally, it's in Rockport, but it's totally surrounded by Camden. It's an island of Rockport in the middle of Camden. And yet, the people who live right next to it in Camden, right now, can't use it. They're not allowed in there. Um, so, I would advocate for putting some money in there. I, I'd be okay with, with cutting it a little bit to the twenty thousand number instead of twenty-five, because I think in three years, if we do that, we have enough money to probably, um, to have a reasonable, uh, chance of, of getting something in there. The cemetery committee has also talked about developing the site where we would put the columbarium, so that in future years, other columbariums could be placed in there and it would be an area where you could have a gathering of them. Um, and one final thing I'll say is that, uh, Julie from the funeral home in Camden, who's a member of the cemetery committee, has told us that eighty percent of people now are choosing cremation. So, that's the, the lion's share of how people are dealing with their remains.
Linda, do you have a sense of the break-even point for a columbarium? How many, um, internments do you have to have for, for the one we're talking about?
I can answer that to a little bit, cause we did, the cemetery committee did some research on what other cemeteries charge for the space. Um, and I think it was about a thousand dollars plus or minus, which included some engraving and things like that. And, and the columbarium would hold, depending on which one you pick, either forty-eight or sixty-four or something like that.
More than sixty-four.
Yeah. Um, and the cost of the columbarium is about sixty thousand. So, we're not gonna make money on it, but it probably is a break-even proposition as well as providing service to the people in the town.
And it will be less maintenance than?
That's right, too, yeah.
If you have people buried in the ground.
What, what are the, hmm, possibilities of selling, uh, spots in the columbarium before it's built?
We talked about that in the cemetery committee, and I think that there are some, Linda has a couple people now who, who are not from town and want lots there, and because of the moratorium there, they can't get them. But they have been, and Linda can, can chime in on this also, they have been, uh, very patient in saying, and they're not people who are gonna have an immediate need, if you get my drift.
Right.
That they know of.
Yeah, that they know of. And so, and we've talked about that in cemetery committee, that I think that there will be, if it's, if it gets some publicity, that people probably will wanna get in there.
Yeah, I mean, so my point, my point obviously is, you know, could you pre-sell thirty spots?
Thank you for more eloquently asking the question I was getting to last time.
Well, and I think, I think, we've talked about that. And I think, I don't know how many you could pre-sell, but certainly, I think that the, the important thing will be the commitment from this board to move forward with the project.
Yeah, that's difficult.
People aren't gonna pre-buy something when, when, if we don't put anything in the reserve and, and they don't know whether it's coming or not, they're not gonna pre-buy it. But we did talk about it. And the other issue, too, is that if somebody pre-bys and then, and then has a need before the columbarium is there, we would have to accommodate them. We'd have to make a promise to them, basically, they would accommodate them in some other way.
My mom's in the living room.
Well, maybe you'd like to pre-buy one.
Why?
I guess, I guess if she's happy there, but whatever. But, uh, so, um, at any rate, I, I understand the budget pressures, and so I, I would advocate for twenty thousand in that reserve instead of the twenty-five.
Could you be okay with fifteen?
I think if you go fifteen, then you gotta go out four years.
Before?
Well, not if you started pre-selling some of them. I mean, you know, maybe it's a give-and-take sort of thing.
Possibly.
But chief, you're gonna commit right now?
I'm going in the ocean.
That's illegal, isn't it?
I won't be here to get charged.
That's our law enforcement.
All right, happy, happy medium. What do you think? We'll put the twenty thousand in here, but just like we did for the lime kilns, we'll keep that one flagged in case the numbers don't make sense at the end. Gentlemen?
That's okay with me.
Yeah, but I'd also like to add on there, sort of a directive to the cemetery committee to put together some sort of a marketing program. And I don't know what we, as a select board, need to do, but if there are people that are willing right now to, you know, sign a check to reserve a spot, you know?
And the cemetery committee is working on that. They're doing some research, looking at other cemeteries, what the costs are and things like that. And we have, as Linda said, we have to go down to the cemetery.
Columbarium coming to a town near you, put a sign down there.
I thought the plan was to present to the select board, then we had, uh, a storm couldn't get into the cemetery to, to do some pictures and have some, uh, input from, uh, another cemetery that has that sort of a system.
Well, uh, you know, I'd be willing to put some money in to get the ball rolling, but I'd sure like to see the cemetery committee step forward.
They have been lately.
Marketing it, okay.
Yeah, they have been. It's, the cemetery committee, I think, in recent months is a little bit re-energized, which is a good thing.
Yes.
So, okay.
All right.
Um...
So, what did we decide to put in?
I think twenty thousand with a flag on there in case we have to come back and look at it.
All right.
Uh, page two sixty-eight, provider agencies.
Oh. Yeah, well, I guess I, just for fun, I'll make the motion that, that this line, uh, I would make a motion that this line be set to zero.
Okay, we're not in a meeting, so we're not, not having any motions.
Yeah, but you get my drift.
I will, I will argue against that, as you knew I would. Um, and I guess my point would be, um, we asked the budget committee to do a lot of work. We asked the agencies to come in, um, and put forth an effort. Um, and I think we need to honor the budget committee's recommendations. That's not to say that on the floor of town meeting, the residents could decide not to fund this. Um, if we, if we put this, these numbers in the budget as they stand, then the residents will have a chance to, at town meeting. If we don't put them in, the residents can't raise it. That's the way our town meeting works. Um, and I, I know that you've felt strongly about this for a long time, so I think that...
You can say that about anything, you know, in the budget.
That's true. That is true. But I do feel that the budget committee put in the work and the provider agencies came in good faith and made their presentations.
Yeah, I understand that. My argument against it is, to be honest, we've just spent a lot more money than I had anticipated, going back to some of the recreation things we've done. And so, I'm kinda back in the, the minimizing mode. And so, just besides the monetary reason, again, as you know, I'm philosophically against the town being in, uh, the charity business and redistributing taxpayer money to charities who they may or may not have wanted to give to.
I, you know, I would all, say along those lines that we got back into this because it wasn't working the other way as we might have hoped. So, why wasn't it working the other way? Did people not want to give to organizations through their tax bills, or did they wanna do it separate and choose who they wanted to give it to rather than who we have come before us? So, I mean, I'm sorta leaning in Doug's camp as far as letting people make decisions for themselves and write their own checks and do their own deductions.
Sort of, part of my understanding is we got back into doing it because Leonard Lookner shamed us into it. But I, you know, that just doesn't carry weight with me for the reasons that Mark said.
Well, he did, but the shaming wasn't difficult. All he had to do was bring it up, and we felt shamed. Um, I, I would advocate to keep it in right now and to also flag this one, uh, as a potential area for balancing some things out. However, at this point in time, not knowing exactly where we're gonna fall, I would say, keep it in as a placeholder, um, for all the reasons that Ken said and some other reasons as well. I mean, look at, look at the, some of the GA numbers. And I, I know that we've brought this up before, but one could make a pretty reasonable and linear argument that our GA numbers will go up to exceed this eleven thousand eight hundred if these, some of these organizations are, are not financially viable and are not helping our citizens outside of the services that we provide.
I guess I would say, let's leave it zero and come back and revisit it later if we have extra money.
Well, I mean, one of the things that I had a difficulty swallowing is, and if I had my papers here, I would show you the five different motions I tried to make to get the historical society five hundred dollars, because they, they were ones that asked.
Hey, you got it.
Nobody wanted to give it five times. And at the very end, when we finally may or may not have thought we had money, you know, we got five hundred dollars. So, it isn't necessarily everybody, you know, some people like some things other, over others. I mean, I figured that they were coming before us, so they ought to deserve something. Not everybody thought that way. And there, again, I mean, it's, you know, why should we make decisions for people that could write their own check and get their own deductions?
Well, and I think that's an argument that, that could be made at the beginning of the process, um, and for next year. Uh, but I, I do feel that the organizations came here in good faith, uh, worked out their presentations, the budget committee did the work. I think we need to offer it to the taxpayers for their, their decision on the town meeting floor. Let, let them decide. And I know that there, I'm fairly certain that Doug, you'll, you'll probably make a motion, if, if this is in the article on the town meeting floor, you'll make a motion to amend to, to reduce it, and then we can see what people on the floor wanna do. I do think that there's also the idea of how our town is perceived by those in the surrounding area, because many other towns do make these kinds of contributions. Camden does, I'm fairly certain Warren does, uh, having been on the other side of requesting these funds. Uh, and many towns of more limited means than Rockport make these kinds of contributions to the agencies that provide help to citizens in the area. And I think it, the optics of it from Rockport's point of view are not terribly good if we, if we don't do it.
Let's see where we are at the end and come back and plug in a number.
All right, so we'll leave it at eleven-eight and moving on.
Start it at zero and come back and we'll...
What were you saying?
Leave it at zero and come back and plug it in.
Yeah, but I guess I wanna know from Rick or Megan or whoever, so, you know, what do we do?
Well, I mean, I've been sitting here thinking, thinking we're gonna get to this point, this point. Well, I mean, I've been sitting here thinking, thinking we've got to get to this point, this point. I mean, we've moved the number over, not at your direction, so...
Oh, yeah. What's that all about?
So, I mean, you have, you have, technically, you have to move the number over. You have to move numbers into those columns.
So that happened how? Who did it?
It's just the easiest way to do it.
It's the easiest way to do it, but keep in mind that...
But we're here now, we can make the decision as to what we want to do.
Right, is, you know...
Okay, well, I made the motion.
I think we're split.
It would go to zero.
I mean, we're split on that right now, so...
But I'd have, you know, I'd have to say, as much as it, you know, as much as it pains me to say this, it's, the number that belongs in there, you know, without your authorization to put in a number, there shouldn't be a number there. So if there's a debate about what number to put in, you haven't, you haven't voted to put that number in.
So any line that we have a 2-2 disagreement should be zero then, is that what you're saying?
Until you can come to agreement.
Well, at this stage of the game, eventually, we're going to have the compromise on this, because we can't not put something before the voters, so...
Well, sure we can.
You'll just say 2-2.
Yeah.
Well, but you have to, you have to have a proposal there, you have to place an article, so... We'll come back and look at it. If you want to put zeros in there for now, but we are going to, I'm not going to let this go without coming back and looking at it again, just because as I say...
Well, as we will the other ones.
As we will the other ones, that's right.
In fairness to our explanation of why the numbers were brought over, they're not numbers that are brought over until you agree to bring them over, so...
The procedure is just easier.
And so, if you're not agreeing to bring them over...
You know, part of that conversation needs to be had with us too about giving the budget committee specific guidelines, like you have 8,000, you have 10,000, regardless of whether you have two people come in or 22 people.
Right, and we, no, let's not have that discussion right now, because we want to...
That was a problem.
Schools, page 270. The numbers are what they are. There haven't been any revelations or updates here, have there, Megan? That's too bad.
Good lord.
Have you updated it with the new numbers?
Yeah.
Because we did get...
I expect more new numbers.
Oh, great. Bigger, bigger numbers.
Because we did get some changes to their number last week, was it? What, which was 100 and...
Something about...
1,000 more than we expected.
And what line would we be talking about, the total schools 100,000 more, 10,386?
Right.
Now, does that number include any of the new construction?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, that's why the SAD 28 number is up so much, because they include a bond payment there.
And what about the VOTEC school? That's not in here.
That's in the CSD assessment.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. It's their, our portion of that payment.
So that's currently displayed in there? I mean, how much of that is, is the VOTEC?
I would have to ask.
You have to look at their budget.
The VOTEC portion is actually down a considerable amount because of the savings of not maintaining the old building. So the net is actually down some money.
Oh, and also, I believe that the state legislature changed some of the rules that allowed for the CSD to get money that they previously had not for the technical schools. There was some language in there that the tech school had to be in certain close proximity to their other schools. And so, we weren't getting certain reimbursements, but we recognized that that was kind of ridiculous. So I think that it also went down even further because the state finally ponied up some money for that. And I am not saying that with all kinds of authority, but I believe that to be true. Yeah, they came up with some money offset.
Okay, well, in any event, we, there's not much we can do with these, so...
And that's what we end up paying, that 10,386?
Yep.
That's our share.
That's our share. That's just our share.
It's kind of nice to write those warrant articles every month.
So what we're doing is a small percentage of the total.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I understand that.
Uh, page 272, special assessments. We do have to remove, maybe you already did it, Megan?
Yeah, I did.
The 40,000 and the use of the downtown Tiff has to come out on revenues, because we're not going to do the library parking project this year. That's a, that's a, that's a revenue we lose, which is not a good thing, but it is what it is.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Owen.
And I actually don't want someone to answer this now, but I'd be curious to see which non-for-profit land conservations paid payments in lieu of taxes in 14, 15, because to lose $12,000 one year over the other, it's not like we lost a bunch of non-for-profits. It's just some organizations chose not to give a payment in lieu of taxes. Because, I mean, that, that number's down.
Some of that is, like other organizations, I'm sure they have year-to-year budget fluctuations.
And what if we came, they came in, double payments came in in the same year? We'd have to, we'd have to look that up.
Yeah, okay.
Would you please, would you please look it up? I mean, not right now, but...
Speaking of which, has there been a decision, what, what's come of people that have paid next year this, in 17? Where did we put that money?
You can't do a payment in lieu of taxes in the current year for the next year.
He's, I think he's asking about the people who paid ahead because of the tax law change.
Oh, it goes into a liability account, because we can't technically claim it as revenue.
No, no, I was just wondering where we put it, and it'll just be nestled aside.
I think we're, we've finished everything, have we not?
What about, well, we were talking about the UFP, the revenues, use of UFP?
Oh, use of UFP, okay.
Yeah.
No, we weren't going to forget that one. So the proposal, that's line R 2,500. So the suggestion there is to use 345,000 out of the UFP, and that includes, I presume, the 250 from the, the overtax last year.
And we're going to use that for what items in particular?
It's just, it's, it's on the budget. I mean, it's not designated for any particular item. It's just, it's, basically, the motion on that is to reduce, to relieve the tax burden, we can use the UFP. That's what it's for.
It just brings the mill rate down.
Can we give directive as to...
Well, we've done that through the whole budget document. When we just, when we decide all these lines, like the ball field, whatever, we've had that money in, that's, that's our spending directive, and then this is, so it's not, it's not specifically directed toward one project.
So what about a lot of the capital improvement projects that have been put off for years that might not be in here?
Well, we'd have to decide if we wanted to add those back in.
What you'd want to do then, Mark, would be to, you know, for example, say you wanted, you wanted to add the generator in, let's use that one. We hadn't, you hadn't made that decision. You wanted to add the generator in. You knew that was going to be 30, $30,000. You'd add that in the budget side, and then you'd, you'd make, you'd, you'd increase this 345 by that corresponding $30,000.
So it'd be like 375.
Yeah, you could do that.
What's the 345 now?
That's what I'm looking for. Is there a UFP? Oh, here it is. Page 53. Actually, page 54 is probably better, because we can look at where the UFP stands, has stood in prior years. So ending 16, I guess we don't have the 17 numbers here. Are they on the prior page? Yeah, and on page 53, UFP after audit adjustments, 7,117. So at the start of this fiscal year was 2,314,000. The funds that have been encumbered, which we've already voted to encumber, drops it by that amount. And then we used 110,000 in 17, 18, so the balance was 2,136 at the beginning of this fiscal year. The 12% number is 1.8, but our auditors like 15% better.
And actually, they're going to a number of months of, a number of months of...
90 days.
A number of days of expenditures rather than a percentage.
Right.
They'd like 90 days.
Now, Megan, does, do these UFP numbers on page 53 include the 250 or no? No, okay.
We had to put that in a separate account, because it has to be used.
Okay, so that has to be used this year. So basically, the proposal then is...
Well, that's, that's where I was going. I thought it had to be.
So the proposal is to use to 345, 345 less, which would be using 90,000 of the actual UFP, which would leave us with a balance of, updated balance is 2,136. I don't know why that number is the same as the one above. Oh, the proposed UFP isn't, is, is not used in here yet, so... So if we use 90,000 of the UFP, then that will reduce the UFP to the, to 2,46,000, which would be still within our 12% pretty easily, actually.
Okay, so that's 90,000 we're taking out of there and then adding on to the 90,000, the 250 that we have.
Right.
So we'd be using all of that.
We have to use all of the 250.
Correct.
And then it's up to us to decide how much of the remaining UFP we want to use.
In case you're interested, the 345, 765 represents about 32 cents on the go rate.
32 cents to 345?
Yeah.
That's about 60% of the UFP.
So we have to make a decision as a board. We can't go below 12% by policy.
By charter, yeah.
By charter. We can't, we can't let the UFP drop below 12%. Our auditors have said that they would like us to hold, what is it, Megan, a three months, 90 days? How much is that? Do we know what that number is?
And where are we now with so many days?
Close to 60.
I mean, all, all things being unequal, I would rather take the gamble on using this money now and then adding to it as we go to get some of our projects that are woefully not done, done.
We can certainly think about that. Megan's going to get us the numbers here.
Well, I haven't been keeping a running tally. Megan has, but she hasn't looked at that total. But we were, when we ended the day yesterday, we were $15,000 under LD1, and then you've, you've added...
We've added, we've done a little adding and a little subtracting today, I think.
I would say most, more adding than subtracting. So now you've put yourselves over that LD1 target, and if you're...
But then that LD1 target assumes this 345 is...
It assumes the 345.
345 is being used.
So the place you have some wiggle room is that, you know, the use of the UFP.
Right.
To cover the things that you just did.
What are we waiting on?
We're waiting for Megan to give us what the 90-day, because the auditors wanted us, wanted us to keep a floor in our UFP of 90 days of expenses, as opposed to using the 12% number. We have to use at least a 12% number by charter.
So, and right now, we're at what, 13.92%, is that correct?
Yeah, 13.92% of our...
I thought I had heard the number that we were closer to 17%.
I don't think so. I never heard that number.
That would have been awesome.
90 days is 3.8 million.
Wow.
If, if we wanted to...
3.8 million? Wow, that's, so that's considerably higher than what we have right now.
We have over our $15 million budget, so...
If, and someone with the math or their calculator in front of you, if we took the, the UFP down to the 12% requested in charter, how much would that yield up in money?
Well, you're going, you'd go down to 1...
Almost 2%.
1.8. Let's just say 1.9. It'd get you 200,000. I don't want to get you away, I think, because if you look at your...
Megan's calculating.
Thank you.
Yeah, that one...
12% would be 1.8 million.
Right, and the question is...
1.8, and it's, so that would get us 300,000?
Well, less than that, but between 2 and 300,000 if we went all the way down to the 12%.
Right.
The thing that we want to be careful of there is if we do that, we increase the possibility that we've got to take out tax anticipation notes.
We would definitely have to take out a tax anticipation note if we went down to 12%.
And it costs us money, both in terms of interest paying on the note, but also in terms of our bond ratings and stuff like that.
It puts us in a funky cycle.
It costs us way more, way more than it's worth doing if we don't have to.
Any idea, Megan, what, what we'd need to have to avoid being, taking out a tan? What we'd need to keep in there?
Some of it depends on when you spend the money, too.
Right, right. That's where, when she's been doing a lot of this cash flow analysis stuff, she can predict that out. She can predict that out a little bit better.
I would say going under 2 million would cause us to have to do a tan.
Okay, so we're still good.
So if you, so that's, that's where we, that's the lower, the lowest threshold that I would recommend.
Well, can you tell us where we are with LD1 right now? This, this assumes the personnel costs are as the manager suggested, so that's, there's, we still have to have that discussion. And, and we also would have to go back and look at some of the things we flagged and decide if we want to stick with those or not.
Currently over LD1 by 42,000.
42,000. That's not bad.
That's not bad. That's workable.
Almost.
You've done good.
We're getting close.
We're getting there.
We're getting there.
Oh, that's...
This is exactly what Megan and I go through.
Bring the excise tax number up.
This is what Megan and I go through.
Right. Back up to 800,000 or whatever it was.
Maybe it's time for a break.
Well, I, I'll just throw something out there. We got 2,136 in the UFP right now. If we take another 36 out of that, that leaves us with 2.1.
Which is 100,000 over a tan.
And then, and then, and then we've got to go find some other money. And maybe that's increasing the excise tax number. We could get there if we increase the excise tax number. Not all the way to the 800,000, but to 795, we could get there. We haven't had the personnel discussion yet. I don't know where we want to go with that. So, anyway, let's take a break and think about that.
Chew on it. Get it? Chew on it?
Say again?
I'm sorry.
Because I don't know, we put some 6 away.
Just remember that the mics are still all on, okay? They're still on over here. You and Randy have to go? So let's grab it, this, let's make it real quick, 10 minutes or so, and then we'll, we'll deal with, we'll do the personnel and with you guys first. So let's grab this. Let's make it real quick, ten minutes or so, and then we'll deal with, we'll do the personnel and with you guys first.
That, the difference between a one percent raise and a three percent raise for all of the current employees, the difference in dollars is actually about sixty-seven hundred dollars, sixty-four hundred dollars, something like that.
That's a little bit more than that.
It's in that sixty-four, sixty-seven hundred dollar range. And then the other thing that I had done in the budget was added another ten thousand dollars in there to be divided up for, to make salary adjustments that were, that were shown to be, salaries that were shown to be low by the salary survey, which we've been using the same towns for, ever since I've been here for five years, the same towns in that salary survey. And that ten thousand dollars is also in this number. We also did, what you're looking at now is, what we also did was, Megan went back and actually, that six thousand dollars in increase is based on just some rough numbers that, not of actuals. But when you look at what our actual projected wages would be with no increase, and our actual projected wages would be with a three percent increase, we're still at, and the ten, and the ten thousand dollar wage adjustment, we're still gonna be seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars less than what we would have been paying out last year, correct? So, you know, we're already, our wages are already for the total town, this is the total non-union people, correct? All of the non-union people, we're already about seventeen thousand dollars less than what we, what we were last year, because we've had changes in personnel, changing, changes in staffing, and rates of pay, and things like that. So that affects that total number. The other one is in the change in the position in Public Works Department, is correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is the change in no longer having a, an assistant Public Works Director, or Deputy or Public Works Director. So even with all of the changes, with the addition of, an additional person for...
That's a union position.
Oh, that's a union position, so that's not including, thank you, Megan. So with all of that, we're still gonna be seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand dollars less. So as you get into the discussion, if your goal is to be under LD1, if that's what your target is, which, you know, you gave me that as a target, and you've been working towards that target, if you're, if you're aiming at that target, and you're already reaching that target, you know, is there, the rationale for going forward and, and not, not, not moving forward with those employee raises for the employees that we currently have, it seems to me, is, my recommendation is, the employees are the most important piece of equipment, apparatus, it's what, what makes the town work the best is our employees, and making sure that we take care of them is, is important to me, and it's important to the service that we provide the community. So, now, is there some other savings you can make? You know, we do have positions that are vacant, that's another part of the discussion, so...
I guess one of my first questions would be of the previous Select Board, I mean, how did they sort of allow the town to get this far behind?
Can you define "far behind"?
Well, seven, you know, we're, we're already behind the surrounding towns, apparently by this amount of money, even if we went ahead and gave a raise.
No, not those...
It might misunderstand.
Yeah, and that's, this is, the zero percent column here, as I understand it, is what your projected actuals will be for this current budget year, is that correct?
Plus the manager's adjustments with the ten thousand, 'cause it was a lot of work to take those out.
Have any of you other board members seen the, the list of numbers from the comparable towns? I haven't.
It's in, it's in the budget book.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget book.
There is?
Yeah. And to answer Doug's question, what this board has, the previous boards have done, is, in some cases, we have had people with the salary survey that were so far behind that we made the decision that we couldn't make it all up in one year.
Mm-hmm.
And so we tried, we've tried every year to, to push the numbers to where they need to be, but in some cases, we couldn't do it all in one year.
The salary survey's on page thirty-four and thirty-five.
And, and the other thing is, of course, the salary survey is a moving target from year to year, and so that sometimes we, we make, we make a push toward getting up to parity with one, we know we can't do it all in one year, and then the next year, the, the goalposts have been moved again, so...
So Rick is saying the three percent raise wouldn't get us up to full parity, we'd still be seventeen thousand short.
No, that's not what this number is.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Same number last year, because we cut positions, even with a three percent increase for all of our employees, our payroll expenses will be seventeen thousand dollars less than it was last year.
This number here, the 1.24 million, is our payroll expense this year, non-union.
Okay.
And these are the projections for this year, based on a one percent, two percent, three percent raise. So if we give a three percent raise, we'll be spending seventeen thousand dollars less on salaries for the non-union people than we have spent this year.
Three percent raise, we'll still be spending less money.
Correct.
And the ten percent.
I see.
Because of some attrition in positions not currently filled.
Right. And if we went with two percent, then we'd be even that much better.
Yeah, we save eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
So the question of the board is, you know, do we wanna, do we wanna save the eight thousand dollars, or do we wanna, you know, give our employees the three percent raise?
So, we, I started doing this, I think it was last year or the year before, you know, 'cause there was always the conversation about, you know, is it a two percent raise, or is it a three percent raise? And when you're really talking about how many dollars that actually is, it's not, you're not gonna balance the budget on, on the difference between a two percent raise and a three percent raise. You know, I could see if, if you were, if we were talking about the difference between giving employees a two percent raise and a three percent raise was forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars, then you'd wanna, you might wanna consider it. But the total cost is, is not enough to make us, to get us within LD1 or, or not, and it's not gonna really change, it's not gonna really change the outcome of the budget. You have far more impact on the LD1 number by working on the UFB and some other places.
Right, and, but I guess what does matter is, if we wanna use Ken's example earlier, what's the impression that'll be given to the townspeople? Because, you know, townspeople hearing the difference between a, you know, one percent raise and a three percent raise, you know, may raise some questions at the, at the town meeting. When you look at the, on a national level, the average wage increase for the last, oh, ten years has been 2.4 percent. Another question too, Rick, is we kinda give these raises across the board, you know, what about the concept of a merit-based raise?
That would be a major change.
Does that not work in government, or...
That, yeah, it has not worked, it has not proved out, even in private sector, it doesn't, it's really hard to manage, and it's not, it would be a big change in the way we do things.
One of the problems too with doing merit-based raises in any type of government is that you have to make public what your merit race, what your merit is based on, and you can't, municipal government, anything like that, you'd have to make public, and you can't make employee reviews public because they're a personnel item. So in order to justify merit-based raises, you'd have to then make that public, and by statute, you can't do that.
Guess that's what gives government such a good name.
And I would point out that our union employees, which are Public Works employees and the police officers, by their contract are getting roughly a three percent raise, I think it's a little different for some, a couple of employees from what I heard, and so...
It's not apples to apples, though, I mean, considering the job that they do, whether you're driving a several hundred thousand pound truck around town, or taking the risk every day of being shot, that's different than saying, they're both responsible, but, you know, it's a different job, you can't...
I understand that, but it's, and they, they're paid differently as a result.
Absolutely.
And, and, but I think it's, it does, it sends a signal from this board to the non-union employees that, you know, that we're not willing, if, if we don't decide to provide a three percent raise to those employees, it sends a signal to them, and we have to, we'd have to be comfortable with that signal, knowing that, as Owen said in the, in the beginning of this thing, that our town employees are, are one of our best resources, it's what our citizens really like, you know, the citizens respond well to the town employees, they're treated well when they come to the town office, they're treated well when they have a, a fire call, or a police call, they're treated well when they have to call Public Works, there's a tree down across the road, and things like that, so...
I wouldn't argue with any of that.
It's one of the, one of the, one of the strongest assets of our town.
And I also, I mean, from a personal perspective, every time I've, virtually every time I've asked for something in my capacity as a board member, it's been the employees. All the things that I think are important, based on what I hear from the citizenry, I, I'm typically not the one doing it, it's the town employees. So, I mean, in all the various different segments, whether it's the citizenry, the Select Board, the manager, it's the employees that are doing all of this stuff, we just ask them to do it.
I'm just, have we chewed up enough time, so you guys are gonna be late with everybody talking?
Yeah, I'm curious, can we just, can we hammer out fire and...
Well, I'm perfectly willing to.
I have a question on the survey, how come, I mean Booth Bay, for instance, provided no information?
There's no require, I can't force them to respond to the survey.
No, but you could call them up, I guess.
We did.
We did.
Actually, I reached out, is it, it was Booth Bay Harbor, was it Booth Bay Harbor was the one that reached back?
Right, well Booth Bay.
And I, I reached out to several of the managers, and was able to get some, some results, but I was not able to get...
I mean, that's like using Knox County, I mean, they don't have any of the things we're looking for, for answers, so why use them?
It was just the ones that they, that...
Some years they provide it, and some years they don't.
Well, Knox County, I don't think has a fire chief, so that would be hard to answer. Do they have a harbor master, a library director, any of those ones? That's what I'm getting at, is if you don't have the people to answer the questions, why you got them in there? If Booth Bay won't answer, find somebody else. Just narrow, narrow it down to what you got, and be happy with it.
It was, these, these were the towns that were basically discussed many years ago, and we've been using, and the board agreed, agreed to many years ago, using, this is a basis, is it perfect? No.
Change isn't bad.
No, but it's what we used.
I mean, with SCASID, I'm sure they must have a fire chief, or...
Okay, well, can we, can we go to page 146? Can we go through the, the police and fire wheel?
Yep, 146.
146 is the police department, Personnel Services there.
Chief, you got a 22.8 percent pay increase, justify it, sir.
I'm getting a zero percent increase in pay this year.
Thank you, chief.
Is that, is that, that must be an artifact of...
How did that mistake come about again, refresh my memory?
The numbers provided at the time that we did the budget last year from Camden were not accurate.
Is there, is there a new...
So it's our good number?
Yes, and I received the backup this time that goes with the number.
What's the number in the agreement?
Yes, we pay fifty percent.
It's just under, it's like forty-six point something, something percent.
So what number should, should be in there?
The forty-six...
The correct number is in there, the number last year was incorrect.
Oh, that's what twenty-two...
But we paid, we paid the correct number.
Right.
Gotcha.
This year.
Everything from the administrative, from the sergeant on down is union, so we can't, there's not much we can do about any of that.
Well, you can, I mean, you could take the part-time officer out of there.
Then who's gonna do the drug testing?
Blood, I think it was, blood.
Blood testing.
Yeah. Administrative assistant, I'm, I'm okay with everything the manager has suggested here, I'll just leave it to the rest of the board if anybody else wants to chime in there.
Is the administrative assistant non-union?
Correct.
Non-union, yeah, half-time.
I'm fine with it, how it is.
I'm not hearing anything, so let's move on.
Yes, I might, what would 2.4 percent of that be?
Of what number?
2.4 percent increase, you mean, as opposed to three?
For what?
The administrative assistant.
I mean, I think you're looking at nickels and dimes, quite honestly.
Yeah, you're looking at dollars.
Well, I know, but again, I get back to that, I think the townspeople expect us to look at these numbers, and not just, you know, say, well, okay, you know, bye. So, I do wanna look at them. What's next?
2.4 percent would save a hundred and thirty dollars roughly, on that line. Next is Fire Department.
Having that in mind, I would suggest going to the 2.4 for that.
For which?
Well, you just said the fire chief, so, starting at the top.
Well, the fire chief was, there was an extra adjustment made there to, to bring it up to parity from the other towns, I believe.
Yeah, that's...
That's one of the ones that, if you see the three percent of the department had in the six point six, that's where Rick applied some of that money to bring up to...
But didn't you just ask for an opinion, or...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I just...
Yeah, no, I mean, I heard all the preamble going into this, so...
Okay.
So in this ca, in this case, the, you know, according to the data that we use, the ser, survey data that we use, the fire chief is under by about nine thou, ninety-four hundred dollars. So what we proposed was a twenty-three hundred and sixty dollar increase. The cons, the, you know, the concept is to not move everybody up in one year, but to show some acknowledgement that there, that there's a...
Did you say a twenty-three hundred dollar increase? Because that looks more like fifty-three.
On top of the, a twenty-three hundred dollar increase on top of the three percent.
Is... I think, given the state of our fire department with some of the surrounding towns, surrounding towns having real trouble getting call firefighters to volunteer their time, our chief has been excellent at that.
I agree.
And we have a robust fire department, our fire protection, in fact, often when mutual aid calls go out for surrounding towns, our fire department gets there before theirs do, so I'm gonna support the manager's number on this one.
Except we're not merit-based, you know, it doesn't matter.
Except that this isn't based on...
No, no, this is, this is, this is based on the average.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that...
I'll go with the manager's recommendation.
I will as well. I think the increase in the volunteer firefighters is more just the number of hours, isn't it?
Correct.
So that's, that's not, that's not an increase in there, although did they get a three percent in their, in their stipend? And again, these guys aren't making a living at this, and what we pay them is...
I know, and I appreciate it.
Whatever, so, so I think, so are we okay with fire, then? Okay.
I'm good with it.
What, Mark, did you have something?
Doesn't do any good, I already said the 2.4, I was just trying to mirror as we go.
Okay.
We could be excused, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. For Jason, I think the EMA...
Thank you.
What page is that?
That's another one where Jason gets a...
Where are we?
191.
Thank you.
Probably 192, actually, and that's just the, the stipend for EMA Director.
Well, speaking of having comments, I realize there's conflicting time schedules with your meeting, Jason, with the EMA meetings, and I know from what I've been told, other people that attend those meetings, that was the most popular day to have them.
Abby's number's...
So, you know, I just feel as if we're gonna pay somebody a stipend for something, we should get that service. So if you can't, and you do reach out to Abby, which I know you have, but it needs to be more than just one day in advance or the day of, which goes to Abby's side of it, if, I don't know how many meetings you've made, but one, so I mean, that's a pretty good, I, you know, I want to make sure that the five hundred dollars is earned.
And it's not just the meeting, it's not, I agree, I agree with what you're saying, I'm not saying that, but there is...
And I, and I think I've expressed that to the manager, and I hope that is followed up on this year for better attendance.
Well, I...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jason.
Go ahead, Jason.
I know that, since I've taken over, I've made more meetings than the previous EMA Director did for three years, he made almost none, and he got a fifteen hundred dollar stipend.
I, I can explain that, because I, having been there, there was no interest in the EMA Director at the time following through with NIMS, or any other of the things, according to the letter that Bob Peabody gave the then EMA Director.
Still is a stipend position that wasn't...
Well, different board back then, now we're being more conscientious of stuff.
Okay, my, my kinda bottom line on this is that I'm happy to pay the stipend, you know, as long as people are participating in the EMA meetings and activities, because I'm a big supporter of EMA, you know, you don't need it until you need it, and, so fine, we give the stipends, but again, you know, the expectation is, is that, God forbid, this town ever needs to work in concert with the rest of the, the county or surrounding towns, that, you know, you people will know who the other attendees at the meeting are, and what's expected of you.
I can assure you that the fifteen hundred dollars covers a very small portion, which is the meetings. I spend at least an hour every week on something that's been emailed out, there's other events that I go to that are involved in this, the pre-planning that we do, there's tabletop exercises, so I'm still, whether I'm attending the meeting, I still get the information, we get a, we get a full agenda, it's discussed, we get an email after, so, I mean, I've made the ones that have been happening this year, I just made the one this month because it got moved, so the fifteen hundred dollars has nothing necessarily to do with the meetings, there's, there's way more to it than meetings.
Right, but the meetings are where you, you know, face-to-face communication with your colleagues, and that's important.
Did you, did you explain that they've changed the meeting schedule?
Yeah, so now it's every other month, one month it's on a Thursday night, the next month it's at noon, so, they're doing this because they know the attendance has been low with a lot of departments, so they're changing it so that we can at least try to make fifty percent, or obviously a bigger number, so...
Having that in mind, I guess the two of you ought to be able to talk, and somebody, one or the other can be there.
Yeah, they've already arranged, when, when, when Jason can't be there, Abby will, Abby will be there.
And I will say that when I first got on this board, the town emergency management plan was a train wreck. It was, it sat up on a shelf, it got dusted off once a year, brought to the Select Board to approve it, and, and I looked through it the first year, and I said, I can't believe it, they're referring to buildings that aren't here anymore, it was, it was terrible.
Something like the Capital Improvement Committee.
Whatever, but, but since, in more recent years, we've done a lot of work at, at getting that plan up to date, and as Doug says...
The town is now NIMS compliant, which, that's right, to me, you know, it's very, very important.
Previous boards didn't wanna have that happen.
What I'm hearing is that the, the meeting issue has basically been solved, and so I think we can accept the manager's recommendation here and move on.
Perfect.
Okay, do we have anything else for Jason? I don't think that's stipends or anything like that. Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Doug, you wanted to move to planning, you wanna, you wanna go there first?
Yep, I would.
All right.
What page you were talking?
Oh, let's see, where is that one? Planning and Community Development, page 104. Back towards... As we know, the Planning Community Development Director position is currently vacant, and we have an ad out there, I don't know what the status of that is as far as response goes.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't even started to do the interviews yet, we've been just collecting, collecting resumes, we have, you know, I haven't really dealt, dug in at, with any depth, but there are several potential, from resumes, potential good resumes there.
Can I, can I give you my two cents for us, so you can beat that one around before we get, I, I would suggest we do away with the position, and it's my understanding that contracting with someone such as Bill Nell Power and Jamie's group, it's seventy dollars an hour, so that, times fifteen dollars, fifteen hours a week, fifty-two weeks, is about fifty-four thousand six hundred, if you're gonna do a contractual thing, so...
For fifteen hours a week?
Yeah, you're gonna get far less service, you're gonna get far less service, and you're gonna get fifteen, you're gonna get kinda drive-by service, you know, it...
Well, we are the...
I'm just starting a number, I'm...
Yeah.
And here's my, 'cause, correct me if I'm wrong, I felt like I heard recently, we're the smallest municipality with this Planning and Community Development Director position, is that correct?
It was when I looked, when I did a salary survey three or four years ago, that may have changed since then, but it was at one time.
And so I'm, I'm open to this concept as kind of a one-year exploratory thing, does it turn out that we have put ourselves at a disservice by doing just these hourly contracted-out rates? Yes, we saved some money one year, did it work well or not? And if we can get by with doing cost savings and still get things accomplished, we currently have an unfilled position, I feel like, you know, we're not, we're not putting someone and their, and their family at a disadvantage by cutting a position to try something new, but where we have this vacancy, it doesn't seem like a horrible idea to make a, a one-year go at it, and see if this is a, a system that actually may benefit us, 'cause we save thirty thousand dollars annually, and if, if we don't see a reduction in service, and I, I'm sure that there will be some, but is it enough to be noticeable?
You know, Plan B is pulling a similar situation like Kerry has, where it's a fifty-fifty cost share with Camden, so whatever their wage is, we pay half of it, which is probably less than the fifty-four thousand, but, you know, there, there are options I would like to see explored, before we fill the position.
You know, I think sort of also in view of the low growth that we've seen, it, you know, wouldn't be the end of the earth to try this for just a year and sort of see how things went.
Could I tell you my only, my only concern, and I guess it's because I, I'm not the biggest fan of how we voluntarily went into Mubeck, but I haven't necessarily been tracking on how Mubeck has affected this department.
Yeah, it, we haven't, we don't have enough construction going on to, I mean, that was one of the challenges, was, we, we haven't seen enough new construction to, to say that that department is overwhelmed.
And I gotta tell you, that's one of the other reasons to why, when, you know, Mark and I discussed this, this kind of concept earlier, with the pretty substantial decline in, in permitting and associated revenue, and the fact that we can get high-quality contractual services for fifteen hours a week, I just, I don't think it's a, a poor idea to explore.
I will say that I had an email from the Chair of the Planning Board when this idea was first approached, and he abdicated for keeping the position as full-time, and that's, that's the one piece that I quite honestly think is the most important right now, is the support, the professional support for Planning Board and Zoning Board, 'cause if those guys screw up, then we're gonna be paying a lot more money than, than, than saving, the savings in the salary here. All you have to do, as I said the other night, is look at Appleton, when they had that zoning board decision that messed up on that house, it cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees to set it right, plus three years of agony.
How many hours a week do you estimate Jamie was putting into Planning Board activities? 'Cause then we can less that from the potential fifteen and see what we're left with.
I mean, it's, it's hard to say, you know, I...
that's the one piece that I quite honestly think is the most important right now, is the support, the professional support for Planning Board and Zoning Board, because if those guys screw up, then we're going to be paying a lot more money than, than, than saving, the savings and the salary here. All you have to do, as I said the other night, is look at Appleton. When they had that zoning board decision that messed up on that house, it cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees to set it right, plus three years of agony.
How many hours a week do you estimate Jamie was putting into Planning Board activities? Because then we can list that from the potential 15 and see what we're left with.
I mean, it's, it's hard to say. You know, I.
It's different from week to week, I think.
I mean, on average, what are we?
It's the command, it's the Planning and Community Development piece. If you were, to be honest, this, as much as I, as much as I think we, we do need this, and we, we should have a full-time Planning and Community Development Director, there are other places that I, there are other things that I think are, when it comes to employee, employee stuff, I'm not willing to, to fall on the sword over this one. I think, you know, there's a, it's, it's worth exploring, can we do something part-time if you put some money in there for, you know, and give, give me the flexibility of, you know, if you put, you know, an amount of money in there and say, give me the flexibility to either hire somebody, you know, contract with somebody like Bill Nell Power to provide services, or if something comes up with using Camden, you know, sharing services with Camden, I can do that also.
What, what is that wage and benefit line total for that one particular person?
With benefits and everything? Megan will have to get that.
$99,062.
Pardon me?
$99,062.
That's the wages and benefits for the Planning Development Director position?
That's certainly, even if you give them 20 hours a week at $74,000, you're still saving $25,000. And as, I mean, we're going out on a limit in working well in other areas, whether it's assessing or, or with the police department back and forth. So, let's be a little.
Can I just mention one thing? Mark, I interrupted, I want to add to what you're saying there. And that, we were talking earlier about how little growth there is, how few building permits there are. Camden is growing, Warren is growing, Rockland is growing, and it makes me wonder if we just need better economic development. So, even if you're talking about cutting it to part-time, I think the focus for this town is best spent on economic development, you know, even more so than planning, because we, there are people that are building homes and, and starting businesses, they don't seem to be doing it in Rockport.
Well, that actually gets into this, the line 3060 on here, the miscellaneous professional services. And I'm very encouraged to know that we have at least $5,000 in there to begin starting the master plan for the RES site, which is going to be economic development and everything else. So, again, if that was part of our, the main part of our Planning and Community Development person's job, I'd be more worried about it, because I think we do need to come up with a, a master plan for that area. And I think if we have this money in here elsewhere, then I'm not as worried that we'd be doing this on a, an hourly rate with consultants, the rest of the work. Can I make that clear?
Yep. The question I have is on logistics of doing it with a contract. For example, we're going to have a new Planning Board Chair coming into the new year, because the previous Planning Board Chair is termed out. If we have a contract person working with the Planning Board, or if we contract with an organization, would we be reasonably assured that the same professional will be working with the Planning Board regularly, or would they be getting Planner of the Day, or how would that work?
Yeah, I think we could work that in, in our agreement, or, I mean, it, it is possible, I haven't had a chance to talk to Camden about it. It is possible that we could do something with them. You know, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to.
I think the issue with Camden is that they have somebody who's brand-new. I, I can't speak for Camden, but typically somebody coming into a new, and it's not only a, a new employee, but it's a brand-new position for the town of Camden. They didn't have this position prior to that, and I, I don't know how that would work as far as having somebody learning that position in Camden and all of a sudden being able to provide service to Rockport, too. I don't know.
It may be that we, you know, we work with somebody like Bill through, what's his organization?
MaKed, isn't it?
MaKed, yeah. We work with somebody like Bill through MaKed for the economic development piece, which he was really good in planning as well. And then, going forward, you know, we have conversations with, with Camden to get us through. You know, is it, am I happy about this option? No, I'm not thrilled about it, but I think it's like, it's one of those things that may be worth a try. If it mean, you know, it's not, it's not one of the things that I'm going to fall on my sword over. I think it's worth a try. We, we don't, like has been said, we don't have a lot going on.
So, at $70 an hour, which is what I was told their fee is, for 18.9 hours or 19 hours a week, that's $69,000, which is still 30 less than the total that Megan gave us. And that'll get you 19 hours a week.
And to Kerry's point earlier, you know, it's been one of the few things that's kind of frustrated me about this job, is we've got so many various and sundry things that we haven't been able to focus on economic development in any sort of cohesive, meaningful way. And if that becomes something, once the library's on a, a good path, and, you know, where we've scraped some things off the plate and have a little bit of breathing room, you know, to get to a place to where the conversation at a budget meeting two years, three years from now, where Jeepers Crow, we, we need a Planning and Community Development person to manage all the new growth in our town, because our economic stimulus, you know, through selling ourselves as a municipality is doing well, then that's a great problem to have.
If you, if you, if that's your motion, I mean, if that's what you decide to put in, we'll do our best to make it work. And then, you know, it's, it's not like we have lunch going on that we're going to, we're going to find ourselves backed up into a corner all of a sudden here, in this case. And it may be that next year we're coming back and saying we, we absolutely have to have the planner back and have that be a, a full-time position.
Can I ask one other question that I just hope someone in management, Town Manager, someone could speak to, is within our existing workforce, we've had some kind of new hires. We've, we've got Hannah, Molly, you know, Diane's been, been moved around. So, we've got some folks with what appears to be good potential. I don't know, because I guess I'm not allowed to know what their existing workload is, but is there an opportunity for some personal growth and expansion into this area to where we don't feel like we've fully cut this position? Someone's doing a similar but smaller scale internally to supplement the kind of per-hour person that we may contract out for. And I don't want you to speak all about, you know, per, people's personal capabilities and intellectual abilities, but.
But I, I, I think if we went that way, if we went the route of a part-time, you know, a part-time person with somebody contracted, then it would mean that the administrative assistant in that, that job would have a lot more responsibilities.
That's what I was just going to say.
Yeah.
That was going to be my question, is how, how much burden does that put on that particular employee? Is that particular employee well for that?
We don't really know yet.
Well, everybody keep in mind, I mean, Planning does pay 50% of her salary.
Right.
So, there's no, there's no reason not to, not to have an expectation that she can help out there.
And she's, and, you know, we've made, we've made some really, really good hires.
Yes.
And.
Hannah's very smart, very hard worker.
Right. And I've had nothing but positive comments about her participation in, in the Ordnance Review Committee and Conservation Commission and some of the other boards that she's been attending. She's not, she's not a planner, Community Development Director, but she is really good at administrative support. And if so, if we were using somebody like MaKed, they're not here in the office, they're going to require a lot, to get the most value out of them, it's going to mean that they're going to work much more closely with somebody like Hannah. And may, we might be able, we might be able to make it work.
And just dreaming out loud, if we are three years from now, and, and Hannah's gone through certain training.
Sure.
To, to be the kind of, hey, I've prepped for the MaKed person to come in, here's your packet, MaKed person, here's what I know about it, and here, then all of a sudden, there's an opportunity for an internal promotion potentially, with some minimal amount of final certification, et cetera. It seems like a decent concept to explore.
The tasks for this position, whether it's a contract position or whether it's an employee, are, to my mind, being the professional manager of the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, Board of Assessment Review, all of which are quasi-judicial boards, also the Ordnance Review Committee, as well as the economic development issues and, and dealing with the intake of permits and things of that nature, that, that person is the person who basically, I believe, is, if somebody comes in with a project and needs a building permit, that's, that's who they have to see.
Right.
So, I guess the question is.
Hannah's handling a lot of that.
She's doing that already.
On that quasi-judicial front, there, obviously, the person that's going to be prepping, the MaKed person, is going to probably have some questions. I know when Megan has a question, she can reach out to the auditors. When other folks have legal questions, we reach out to legal counsel. Who does the, the former Jamie, who, who does he reach out to when there's a planning question for guidance?
Boy, you're a little too old. The town attorney.
The town attorney.
Like, like dealing with ordinances and things like that, and how to write ordinances, it would be contacting the town attorney.
Okay. And the bulk of that would fall under our existing scope of services?
Yeah.
So, it's not like there is additional cost for the fact that Hannah may be on the phone every other day asking a quick question?
I, I'm sorry.
And also, keep in mind, I mean, I don't, we do have the former Planning Board Chair that has, how many years?
Nine. You term out after nine.
Nine years.
Oh, you mean me?
You, yeah.
Oh. That'd be 14.
14 years on the Planning Board, that she works directly for Kerry. That's the way the chain of, kind of, his, who supervised her. And, you know, so questions that are, can be handled internally in some of those cases, we, we do have a good resource with, with Kerry. We, we do have a good resource there. So, I mean, I think, I think if you're, if we're taking a risk on something, this, this one is, is not, it's, I don't think it's a huge risk. We may be coming back next year, but maybe not. I don't know.
Well, it's possible, too, that we would do it, and halfway through the year, we'd realize that, oh my gosh, we need somebody in this office.
That's fine.
In which case, we would probably, we would have to manipulate with a budget. But if we put, as Mark suggests, he said $69,000 for 19 hours a week, if I round that up to 70.
18.9 hours.
Right. So, if we round it up to 70 and say that it's 19, just to make the numbers work, and then add that to the 3060 line, professional services, which would take that line to $85,000, and then we zero out the, I'm, I'm just speaking out loud, so.
She's already.
I don't know whether that's where the board is going with this, and, and zero out the, the Planning and Community Development Director line, and then the associated benefits will, will fall with that.
Could I make one suggestion, and that you consider upping the training and education budget, if this is the way you're going to go? Slightly, just so they can get the training.
For Hannah, for Hannah?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Another $500.
Thank you, Kerry.
That's a smart idea. What would you, knowing what you know, would a $500 increase or a $1,000 increase?
I would say $1,000, because I, I just don't know. So, I, unless, unless we say 500.
And we're still on balance, saving what?
Unless we say 500, and your understanding about going over budget if a good opportunity comes along.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Megan, is it possible for you overnight to, to know, to figure out, if we zero out the line for a full-time person, what the associated effects with benefits and unemployment?
I'm doing it right now.
She's doing it right now.
Yeah, she'll have it here shortly. Megan is amazing with that kind of thing. And Megan, I, I want to thank Megan, too, for the, for the food once again. She's doing all this stuff and feeding us, too. It's, how she does that, I don't know.
Have we zeroed that out yet by next year?
Yep, she's already done it.
So, it's a reduction of?
I don't know if you can take it, big fella.
Sandwiches.
Can't even watch.
Of $98,358. Plus, you got to factor in the $75,000 you just put in.
Was it 75?
75, 70,000.
70,000.
70,000 extra, yeah.
70,000, not 75.
Right.
And so, on balance, we may not save what we.
$28,351. Savings?
Savings.
Savings.
It's not chicken, 28.
But then you said something about increasing education and that.
Yeah, that was 2,500, so that'll.
2,500?
That was, I think, the suggestion there, was 2, 2,500. Yeah, so raise that to 2,500, so that reduces your savings to 27,000.
27, 351.
There's our LD1 number, let's go home.
Megan, or Rick, I'm a little concerned about putting that $70,000 in with the miscellaneous professional services, just again, because 5,000 of that is dedicated to working on the master plan.
Yeah.
Is there any way to kind of?
It would be in the backup?
Tonight, when I stay super late to finish this budget, so the Budget Committee can have it tomorrow, I will update the backup information to say that that.
What you've done.
$70,000 increase is to hire outside services for planning.
And it would still list those other two things, the RES, the RES project.
Master plan.
Master plan, and then the, is it $10,000?
$10,000.
$10,000 for the comprehensive plan.
The comp plan, which I'm not convinced we have to spend all that, actually, because in the previous comprehensive plan, a lot of the residents use their personal talents to get that done, so.
One more line you could decrease is dues and memberships.
Yeah, because we're not going to have a plan.
Well, because if we don't have a person.
Unless, unless we want to.
Well, are there town memberships there?
Yeah, what, what gets us access to MaKed? I don't want to lose whatever thing gets us access.
That's what, that's in there?
I don't know. I was, I'm just asking the question.
Leave it alone for now.
But there's also, if we wanted to have, have Hannah go.
Yeah, but I doubt it'd be as many as Jamie. But I have no idea what they cost.
Quick question for Megan. When we're done with this, do you want me to go get you a Red Bull? It gives you wings.
She'd like to be able to sleep eventually.
Okay, is the board, the board, I assume, is comfortable with this?
I'm good.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained, yes.
If there weren't so many surrounding factors, I maybe wouldn't be. But with our existing professional support network internally at the town office, with a decline on permitting, with us having a position that's atypical for where we're at, and with this position currently being vacant, I'm, I'm surprisingly comfortable with, with giving this a shot.
We're saving money, we're going to get less service. And that may be okay.
Maybe.
Well, yeah, we will, because we'll have, we won't have the wiggle room to, to respond nimbly to grants and things like that, and there won't be the Support for Pathways Committee.
That's about the one few, the one thing that we are losing, a kind of person to be dedicated working on grants. However, I don't, I haven't seen a plethora of grants come in recently.
The previous planning director, not so much with.
And, and you know, if, if, if in that 19 hours a week, or whatever it happens to be. That could be part of, you know, if they have four or five weeks, so they're only doing 10 or 12 hours.
That's got to be a major component of it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, why not add that to the list of things that you might be asked to do?
Yes, Jan?
I just want to remind the select board, if you're going to count on the, the talent and the, of the employees that we have to add more work to their, to their, to their workload, to replace this person and to help the contractor, you'd better keep their morale up. You may want to rethink your idea of zeroing out all of the raises.
Okay, good comment.
Anyone was talking about zeroing out the raises.
I hear you doing numbers down, whoa, what's 2.4% instead of 3%? Don't tell me you're not thinking about.
That's not zero.
I will tell you that, Jan.
Okay, let's, let's, let's get going. Speaking of, we want to, I would suggest.
In fact, I resent having that implication made, that I was going to be talking about zeroing out the wages, because that's not at all what I said, just for the record.
I will apologize.
Thank you.
We're all here doing the same. We're all here doing the same thing, trying to do the best we can for the town, let's keep that in mind. Administrative assistant, I assume we want to keep that where it is, particularly given the demands that we're going to, what the manager has suggested there. And that's, that looks a little funky, the negative thing there, because it's split between the departments differently than it used to be.
Right.
But weren't they split last, I mean, when Diane was there, I mean, weren't the two people out back split equally between people last year?
I think the split was different, but I don't, I don't remember.
It was, finance and assessing was sharing an assistant, we switched that around. So Jamie shared an assistant with the town.
No, Jamie had his own. It was all under his budget.
Oh, okay, never mind.
So, I mean, one of the things is, you know, with Hannah, I mean, talking about a person, but with the administrative assistant, right now, we are, we are under utilizing her and her skills, and it would be, I mean, it'll be a good thing for her to be utilizing her in her more. My biggest fear with her in that position is that she'll get bored. I think this'll make sure she's not bored.
Doing my best to keep her happy.
Yeah, I know. She's, she's, you know, with the young people we've hired, they're all really bright.
She participated with the ORC this year, and she was great.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I've heard, nothing but good about her, yeah.
Okay.
And that's my fear, too, Rick, is that if she's not active, she'll be bored and look for something else.
And I'd say that for a lot of our hires, is that, you know, they're all, I mean, I say this often, I wish I was half as smart as some of these people that are coming in.
Okay, let's, do we want to do anything else with personnel services here in the planning department? The only other one is the CEO LPI.
And I just, because Kerry made me think about it, and I've been looking through, trying to see if some of the tweaks that we've made affect other budget lines within this department. I'm not seeing any, but I just wanted to raise it as a, does anything else strike folks as, we should make sure if we're making these tweaks, that we tweak the last bit. Nothing struck me when I looked through it.
Well, can you zero out the cell phone stipend and pager stipend?
You can't zero out the pager, because that's Scott. You could the cell phone stipend.
Cell phone stipend.
Who still carries a pager?
Scott.
Those that are smart.
Okay, so are we through with this department?
We're next.
Can we go to the beginning and go back?
We can, or do we want to let some department heads that are here go? Whatever's easier for you, Megan, I guess.
Whichever.
I mean, I guess I would suggest, since Kerry is here and been sitting here for the whole time, that we go to assessing, which is...
One nineteen.
One twenty, basically. This is where the other half of Hannah lives.
Correct.
So that number is, I'd suggest sticking with that number. Does anybody have any thoughts here?
What is the part-time board assistant?
Is that a note taker?
That's the minute taker, correct?
Correct.
Is that, is that just for assessing?
Yes, and actually, you could, you could take that out. I didn't even realize that was, it feels kind of arcane. I have Hannah come to those meetings, and she takes the minutes.
Shifted...
Yeah, if we can shift that three fifty to another, because I know Conservation Commission, they were trying to figure out, because they had hired someone for a while.
Someone takes minutes at the planning board meeting, there was a gal there.
Right. And that's, that's, that's in the, in the planning budget.
Deborah Sealy, yeah, the planning budget.
Question, Hannah has forty hours a week now, right?
Not in assessing, not in assessing.
Yes. So if she were to go take minutes, that would be overtime, which I'm okay with.
No, the meetings we're talking about here, Board of Assessment Review, they hardly ever meet, and it's during the day.
And I'm happy to pay her overtime, I just want to make sure if she's going to be doing it, it's over forty, that she's properly...
Great, great.
...compensated.
Yeah, I have nothing against that either, yeah. But we tend to start the meeting at three o'clock.
So it's within her regular hours?
Just wait a second. And I know this isn't Personnel Services, but we have web hosting for MAP, GEO, GIS, and two separate, are they two separate, the planning versus yours?
GIS is, and MAP, GEO are two different programs, two different services. The GIS is the software I use to do the tax maps.
Yeah, and MAP, GEO.
Is what everybody gets.
Oh, so this wasn't for MAP, GEO, and GIS, it's saying, it's either one or the other.
No, that one right there, you're talking about thirty, twenty-six?
Yeah, it's divided up amongst...
That's just MAP, GEO, I'm sorry, and it's divided between planning, assessing, and public works.
I get it now, okay.
So, back to the Personnel Service and Employee Benefits, and we also said we were going to talk about line thirty-sixty at this point.
Well, yeah, no, and that, and I do have a couple of things, and for starters, I want to apologize to Kerry in some respect, because it may have come off that I was a little abrasive the other night, but it's my, my, my problem is not with you, it's with the manager of the agreements, which would be Rick. Because when I asked for those the other day, we have one coming up for Caitlin, well, we have one with Caitlin that's two years old, the first of April, has never been signed or dated. Yours expired in January of this year, it's not been renewed. Those are just symptomatic of other things that I get frustrated with. Nothing against you, it's just the way things that don't, they're small, but they're big, because the contracts and agreements are there to protect you, it's there to protect the town, and if they're not in place, how can I, in good conscience, approve something that isn't there? So that's the hard time I have with it.
Appreciate that.
So, that's my two cents on that.
Thank you. Well, for budget reasons, I think what the manager has proposed is good, and I thought about this more after our discussion the other night, and we talked about Kerry working basically fifty hours a week, roughly, and he's an exempt employee, so he doesn't get overtime, whatever, but he puts in his time. And even though the salary number looks high, and we have assistants coming over from Camden, but basically, we have Kerry for half of his time, which is twenty-five hours. We have this person coming from Camden, Caitlin, for eight hours, so that's thirty-two, and then we have Hannah for sixteen hours, or twenty hours, so that's, that's fifty-two hours. So we had fifty-two hours a week of assessing service, Personnel Services, between those three people, correct me if I'm wrong. We're paying Kerry at the higher rate, because he has the expertise, and he has the certifications and things like that, and we're getting the other services at a lower rate, but where they're still very good services. Caitlin does a good job, and we've already heard Hannah's virtues extolled, so basically, if we were to change back to having Kerry come here full-time, and then cut out the other people, and we'd have Kerry for fifty hours, we'd be paying more for assessing than we're paying now, because we have, we've divided the workload up. Plus, the way it is now, we get the benefit, as Kerry explained the other night, of having the Camden experience in there, and learning more about properties and things like that.
So, let's step back one notch and just say, if we don't have an agreement in place, how can we, in good conscience, go ahead and approve something that isn't technically there?
I was trying to talk this out with Mark earlier today, and we were talking about, you know, if it's a rental agreement, you know, currently, we're operating without a rental agreement, and I brought up, well, maybe we're kind of viewing this as a tenant at will, and I, I don't know if that's a proper analogy or not. When we first went and did this agreement, it was signed and dated and all the proper paperwork, and I feel strongly that we should be doing this housekeeping on an annual basis and signing these pieces of paper, that we should be intending to sign, it doesn't take us long to sign them. But I'm just curious about the nuances, probably looking a little more to Ken, of is it absolutely necessary to take action on this, that we have that signed piece of paper, knowing full well that we should have a signed piece of paper? Well, for the purposes tonight.
For the purposes of this budget, this budget is a planning document. The budget is going to go into effect on July first, and if we approve this budget, and the budget's approved at town meeting, and we can direct the town manager to execute those agreements by July first, so that they're in place for the budget, the new budget year. So I think that's how we can approve this, we can go forward with that. I'm a little more concerned about the agreement with Kerry, because that's a fairly major one, I'm less concerned about the situation with Caitlin, because it's a...
But it's a two-year piece of paper that never got authorized, so I guess that's going back to, if you can get that stuff done tomorrow, hey, not a problem, I'd be happy to do it tomorrow and give you my blessing, but I don't feel comfortable, because they were put in there for a reason, with all the verbiage that's there for specific titles and sections to protect whomever, and give us the authorization to do it. And I suspect it was done on council's recommendation. So, to go ahead and approve something that isn't there right now, and I'm, I'm okay doing it tomorrow, but I'm not okay doing it tonight.
Well, I guess I would, I would compare it to what we just did in the planning department. We've agreed to contract out planning services as a plan, it's a, our budget document is a planning document, and the Planning and Community Development Department, we've just agreed as a board to contract for services. We don't have an agreement in place for that yet, but we're directing the manager to execute that agreement by the time we get there. We're doing the same thing right now. Is there an issue with things not being kept up? Yeah, I guess you could say there is, but I think...
When we did that, your agreement, the understanding at the time was, when we did it, was that it was going to be a rolling over.
Well, there was a sentence in there that, I don't know how it got omitted, but there was a sentence in there about automatic renewals.
It does yearly, is what it says on yours.
Right, but there was another sentence in there that said that this would agree, this would renew annually unless either party stopped it.
Right.
Number eight on yours, term and termination agreement, the initial term in this agreement shall be one year, commencing on the day it was signed by both town managers, and that's in number eight for you, and number six for the assistant is the same verbiage as number eight that I just read. But then again, I had, it was never signed or dated, so I didn't see anything that it was a rollover.
I know, I know that. I wrote them both, and that sentence was in there, I don't know when it disappeared. Probably my oversight, but...
Well, let's get those agreements fixed, but for purposes of planning, I think we can go ahead and, at least I'm comfortable with it, saying this, this budget doesn't go into effect until July first, and like I said, we just approved, or suggested a contract for the planning department that we don't have in place yet, and I think it's perfectly fine to do it here, too.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's sloppy paperwork, but I see what Ken is saying, and I think we can put in, you know, that we're going to spend ninety-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, you know, for the assessor, whom we all assume will be Kerry, but, you know, just have it signed before July first.
I would just assume have it done this week.
Yeah, we can, I think that's something that can get taken care of.
I mean, you know, Caitlin's is coming up on the first of April, so by doing it now, we're only a little bit late.
We're only a year behind?
Two, actually.
Two years behind?
Anything else on assessing?
Again, Kerry, again. Understood, I appreciate it, Mark.
I'll swing by.
So do I.
Is there anything else, any other departments that we want to sort of, that were, I don't want to say contentious, but require more discussion?
Come on.
Before we just start?
We've got Sam Temple here, do we want to do harbor real quick, so Sam can?
Okay.
And, I mean, I was obviously thinking about Abby as well, but I got a two for now, so.
Okay, let's do harbor, then. Safety, that's page, whatever it is here.
Abi.
Oh, okay.
It's an harbor, it's after public, it's after, for public works.
Well, harbor.
Thank you all, and good night.
Thanks, Kerry. Page one eighty.
Is it after public works? Well, I'm just curious, because you know me, three percent is fifty thousand, six hundred and ten, and where did three point one come up with? I mean, why not three point two, or three point nine, or, not that thirty dollars makes a difference, but...
It's that adjustment, it's that adjustment, because if you go back to that other page, that her, her salary was slightly, I mean, ever so slightly under, comes up to a hundred and forty-five dollars, is that, am I reading that right?
Hundred and forty-five dollars?
I think what, and it seems a little trivial, but I give the manager credit here, because what he did was, it was very formulaic, how they went through these positions that were underfunded. They said, okay, the positions are, these positions are underfunded, we're going to take a pool of, what was it, ten thousand dollars, and then apportion that to the positions, depending on how much they were underfunded. So Abby's turned out to be underfunded by a small amount, so she got a thirty-dollar raise, or thirty dollars above and beyond the three percent.
How do we keep this as a living document, these adjustments? You know, I mean, because we don't want to have to visit it every three to five years and say, oh, my God.
Well, I think you have to visit it every year, and we have, actually. We've visited every year, the tough part is that the...
I've done this, we've had the comparison to other towns as the front-loaded information to get our bearings, and it...
And having said that, though, some of those towns, we're not even getting anything back, or they don't have that equivalent service, so...
True, and it's also difficult, because are we keeping up with the Joneses, and what is the differences between us and Camden? Because there are big differences between us and Camden, and maybe, maybe, Rick, take a second, maybe, and talk about, well, I think it's beneficial to talk about the theory behind trying to get on par with other folks. It's, it makes us competitive as far as finding good talented work, to want to come and work for local government.
Right.
It's not, I think I've heard Rick say at some point, you know, I don't know how many kids say when they're nine, I want to go work for municipal government.
Actually, I did.
There you go. You know, but you're, you're an anomaly.
I have, my grandmother has a thing that says, I want to be a town clerk when I grow up.
And so, heaven is a little bit of an outlier there, but it's a great, it's a good example. It's, it's an attempt to try to keep us in a place that we can retain and attract good talent.
And admittedly, the, the towns that we're using are, there's two pieces to it. The towns that we're using, the, their willingness to share that information has, has dwindled a bit, and so you're right, there are places where we're not getting full information. The other piece is, just recently, MMA switched over their salary survey, they, they used to do an annual, they still do an annual salary survey, but now it's all online, and so when they made that switch, or when we made that switch over to the online one, which we were part of the beta testing of, you know, we participate in it, and many other towns do, but there's a lot of towns that have not made the switch to going to the digital input of that data. So we, it's harder for us to go back, we can't go back into the MMA information and kind of bring up other comparables to make sure we're in the right ballpark. You know, if you, if you want, in, for the next budget round, we can have a conversation about what towns we should be looking at, we...
They ought to be revised, I mean, like I said, if Knox is not, if Knox doesn't have anything we're looking for, or Booth Bay is not answering the bell, then let's just swap them out.
Right.
And one of the reasons they were chosen is, was similar valuation to Rockport, and if they had a harbor or not, and things like, so trying to find as, I mean, no town is going to be just like Rockport, that's just the way it is.
Well, maybe we ought to do a job specific, instead of one size fits all. Well, maybe we ought to do a job specific instead of one size fits all.
You know, one thing that would be interesting, too, with our collective history here is to look at employees who have left and gone to other towns for whatever reason. I'm assuming we do exit interviews with people when they leave. And I mean, I'm aware of a couple of employees that have moved.
Improper assumption.
Wait a minute, what was the assumption?
That we do exit interviews?
Oh. Well, the point, obviously, the point that I'm making is, is have we had a lot of people kind of jumping ship and going to other towns?
To go to work in other towns, I.
And there was something, and I don't know, finance director or something, wasn't it?
Right, the finance director left and she went.
Went to get more money.
To get more money.
Yeah, right.
We've had police officers.
Jamie just left for McCad, Stacy, Stacy left for Union.
Stacy left, yeah, okay.
Short to Union. Melody down.
Melody left for Warren.
Okay, so it happens. And certainly, exit interviews would be an important part of that.
Sue Dates just left, but I don't think she left for another town, she just retired.
Yeah, retiring doesn't count.
But we could go, you know, go back and look at those numbers, you know, look at the towns we're using. The challenge was when we went back to try and fill it in with new towns from the MMA, the MMA survey, as I remember, Megan, there, a lot of the towns that were in our size didn't respond.
Right.
So we didn't have any numbers we could fill in. But we also, I mean, I do have, I know most of the managers in these towns and I reached out to some of them. And Megan reached out to the finance directors to get the information so we could plug it in. And there were a couple that I just couldn't get the information.
I mean, that's like using Ellsworth. I mean, Ellsworth's the biggest city in the state, the biggest town square mileage in the state.
Oh, by area, you mean?
Area wise, I mean, they're, so, I mean, them, I mean, getting back to using towns that are job specific, because I don't think you can take one set of four or five towns and they may not adequately fit each person specifically. It's more labor intensive, but it gets you a better sampling of what.
We've been using the same towns for about five or six years, so it.
Yeah, it's probably time to look at it.
Time to look at it again.
But anyway, I mean, we can't do it tonight.
No, no.
But it's certainly something to consider for next year and.
Let's think about it for next year.
Where's our, I apologize that I don't remember. Where is the car attendant choker person in the budget?
That's in the police department budget.
It's in the police department budget, okay, cool. Looking for part-time work?
You should see me with chalk. Draw a big old smiley face.
So do we have any comments on the Personnel Services employee benefits for the harbor?
How's the cut for the park attendant in 2220? I mean, it's pretty much a little more than 50% cut. Are you still going to be able to find people to fill that even though you're?
I've had a harder time filling it recently with people other than seasonal college students, high school students. So it seemed to, just historically, I mean, I know I had a big bump in that, in the 1718, but that was my current deputy. I was there, she was a park attendant, but I was pretty clear that she was more than a park attendant. So when the other person left, I used her more, so it was just in a different line.
What, well, this is, anyway, another time.
What is the job description of the park attendant?
Pretty much bathroom cleaning, you know, park maintenance stuff. They don't do anything really past the bulkhead, so, you know.
Taking out trash.
You know, they don't really do a lot of boat stuff. I try to make sure that anybody that is going to be there is, feels competent enough and is competent enough to run the boat if they need to. They know, they know how to do it if they ever needed to. Or they run, they'll come out and support me doing boat stuff, but they're never solo on the boat. So, you know, picking up trash, dealing with customers, selling t-shirts, picking up the beach. Lots, I mean, it's a big, because we have, there's five acres of park there, too. So we try to work with.
I've sent my guys down, had them work, you know.
Together.
A couple of them working together than all of them.
So actually, I immediately was thinking of Public Works to fill that role. However, to take some of your folks out to pick up dog doo-doo, I'm not.
Well, or to sell t-shirts.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's too much.
You know, rather than me having to send two guys down, I can put one of my guys, she has work in, they work together doing park maintenance as well.
So just as a thought, does Camden have a park attendant down at their harbor?
Well, they don't have a park, so they have just more, they have more, I mean, we call it a park attendant. It's really another system. They have, they have probably three deputies rather than.
I guess what I'm wondering is if they have someone that might like to have more hours.
We've, I've tried that a couple of times. They just haven't had the personnel, really, the actual people to do it. We have, I have, I talk to Steve all the time about it.
And we actually did share, there was one young woman we shared briefly.
Briefly, she didn't want to clean the bathrooms. And so I, you know, I needed her to clean the bathroom.
Camden, like you were saying, is, if I remember correctly, it wasn't more than a year or so ago, they had to have a pretty strong conversation about whose job it was to clean the trash in and around. And some folks thought it was the harbor master and his folks, other folks thought it was Public Works. So clearly defining, and it's an issue that we run into with you specifically because you're harbor park. So is it, is it the harbor committee, is it the parks committee? Whose responsibility starts where and ends where?
And that's one thing that we're working, I've been working the whole, 10 years I've been here to define that clearly. Luckily, I have a good, I have a great working relationship with harbor committee, with Public Works, and we can, you know, work together where I use myself and my people to keep the park clean, but use a lot of Public Works, Public Works equipment and labor, because, I mean, can't do it. It's five, you know, five acres of park. And, you know, it's gotten progressively better, I think.
We've added on the cleaning up of the seaweed on the beach in order to help with the, you know.
Right, we do that, you know, bi-weekly, a couple of times a week, when it needs, you know, when it needs it, so.
That rack line, getting that cleaned up.
Sorry, I don't have anything in there, I mean, I'm good.
Okay, I'm good with the manager's recommendations here.
You sell the seaweed for compost?
I know, I want to do that, too.
I've been down there a couple of times.
For the deputy harbor master, you know, that bump, I guess, was that Eliza's request or?
The, the jump, the bump a little bit? It was basically because I knocked down that park attendant. So I was, in theory, going to use, having, having those two to play from, you know, I kind of took that down and bumped that up a little.
Okay. More hours for?
A few more hours for Eliza.
So it's not necessarily a rate increase, it's an hourly, hour increase in decreasing the park attendant?
Right.
Okay, good.
Thanks for your input.
Glad I could help. Okay. We've got a department head, well, we've got the town clerk here, we've got Public Works, and we've got library, where do we want to go?
Let's keep Ben for last. No, no, just say.
I'm so used to late meetings.
I just, you know, I just want to make you worry a little bit more.
Actually, you know, Public Works, let's do Public Works because quite honestly, most of that is union. And so there's not a lot of, not a lot of wiggle room there.
Can I make the assumption that the manager's increase over the 3% was to try to get that position on par with surrounding communities?
Yes, exactly.
I'm inclined to go with the 3%. I know, we could talk about that all day, but we've talked a lot about this position in the past, and I'm okay with 3%.
He's at $6,600 under.
I'm.
I'm just giving you the numbers.
Yep. I think in the, in the grand scheme of things.
I'm going to go with the manager's recommendation here. And part of the reasons is Mike has sat here for the last couple of nights and talked to us about a lot of different things around the town, about the recreation fields. He has some knowledge there, certainly about his own department, cemeteries, he's chimed in there, even the harbor, the Opera House. I think there's a lot of value there and.
Holiday in the harbor.
This is minimal till the 80 hours sitting in a truck.
So I'm going to, I'm going to stick with the manager's recommendation here.
I will also.
I, I actually could be okay with the 3%, but if it's going to fall on a two to two, then I am comfortable. I'm okay with the manager's, but I would not be opposed to the 3% solely.
Okay. I think the other, other personnel expenses here are all union, I believe.
We made increases to overtime because we're projecting that as much comp time that had been allowed in the past would not necessarily be allowed in the future. So you'd have to make up that difference, so.
They were taking, they were taking time off instead.
How we figured that extra overtime was taking the comp time they had been earning before, multiplied by their wage and came up with that difference.
I'm, I'm going to go back to the 2110. Sorry, my feet. So we have, we have potentially a two-two on the 3% versus 5.4.
I thought Owen said to avoid the two-two, he would go with the manager's request there.
I don't think that's what he said, but.
I mean, that is what I said. If we're revisiting it, I am comfortable with 3%.
That's what I thought, but there was a caveat after it, but.
There's a caveat that.
In order to.
To, well, if we were to tie two to two, would that mean that that line gets zeroed out? Or does that line go to 3% versus 5.4?
If you can't agree, it goes to zero.
Then that's what I'm, that's what I would avoid. But I will just again reiterate that I am comfortable with the 3%.
Well, I would go up a percentage to four, but that would be my.
Split the diff, fellas? I'm going to stick with what my recommendation was.
Yeah, I think I will, too.
Owen, cricket, cricket?
I'm not comfortable with zeroing out that line.
You have to vote.
But I'm just not comfortable zeroing out that line. I am comfortable with 4%. I, that number was to get us closer to where other Public Works directors are at. I value the hard work that Mike puts in in leading that department. I'm comfortable with 4%.
About 5%.
We're splitting a percentage of a hair.
You're right.
Or let's do 4.2, that's down the middle. You know, you know, I mean, I, I have, I have.
I've got to say, this is, this is extremely uncomfortable and unfair to do this, to single out an employee this way. It just, it.
Wait till we get to your line.
Yeah, well, do, you know, what you want with mine is, you know.
Well.
I mean, I, frankly, I'd give up my, my salary increase.
Okay.
In order to.
Well, that's, that's a different situation because it's a contract there.
But I'd be willing to agree to that in order to.
I'd be willing to give up my stipend to make up the difference.
I was going to give mine to Bob Hop to keep his.
Uh huh.
Bob Hop, he's the guy that maintains March Jones.
Opens gate, locks the gate.
I'm fine at 5.4% with the manager's report, moving on now.
We, the overtime number, Megan explained, so we're through there. Lost track of where we are. I guess we're at.
We have Public Works, so.
Public Works and Mike doesn't have it. There aren't any other personnel costs in any of Mike's other departments, are there? Or maybe there is.
Opera House.
Yeah, the Opera House.
Oh, okay, Opera House. Page.
Which was Opera House?
You're good with overtime? What we've got in there for overtime?
Yeah.
I assume we didn't trap Terry in the basement as well, if that's right.
I'm looking for the Opera.
Page 230, Opera House. The house manager line is a wash, there's a corresponding revenue, so it doesn't matter what we put in there, it's going to, the revenue line is going to adjust. It's a net zero.
Is this reduction, because Terry is in a temporary, she's transitioning out, correct?
Correct.
So I'm curious about our ability to hire the person that we may want with the amount that we've put in down. I'm curious about bumping that up, not to offer that to whatever candidate we choose, but to make sure that we have enough money there to back up whoever we may get. If we get a phenomenal individual and they just maybe are a little bit higher than this 16.5, would it make sense to put a little bit of money in there because we don't, we intend to fill that position but don't know who we're filling it with?
Aren't, and correct me, who, who is 2120 and 2205? Can you put a name to each of them?
The same person.
The same person. The reason that the house manager is there, Mark, is that that's a, that's a cost that gets billed to somebody who rents the Opera House in order to have somebody there, and they pay that, that's why those lines are separate. If you look in the revenue section, there's a house manager revenue as well. That's line R1055. So that money is basically paid by the clients to, in this case, Terry. That's why they're in separate lines.
There's two areas in this budget that, that I made changes to that I'm not terribly happy about. But one is the 2120, as Owen suggests. It was based on the fact that Terry, the person in the job, was not reaching that full amount of money, what we budgeted. And so in order to get to LD1, I reduced the number of hours down to be more, to more, similar to what she's actually doing in the job.
You're referring to the 4060?
No, the 2120.
2120.
19.5 to 16.5.
Right. And so we talked about that at the meeting, and Owen, you're correct. If we, when we go out and if there's somebody else, they may put in more hours, you know.
The more time they spend, the potential for more revenue for the Opera House.
There's a, there's a good potential here. So if we find a suitable candidate, but we've underfunded this position.
Right.
This is one of the few positions to where the harder you work, you can get more, more bodies, events, programs, conferences.
With those numbers that were in here, we were trying to play with Richard, still giving him some work, but the, if, if the board wants the grounds maintenance, some of that work was going to, you know, he would be spending some time here, too. So it was trying to divide it and make that job without adding a lot to the budget, but creating another position.
So, yeah, as Mike said, the other place that we made a cut was in the custodial position, which, you know, could that go back up some potentially?
Well, I'm kind of curious, I was half expecting to see a revenue line for custodial. We don't, I mean, I understand we're not going to pay a custodian. We don't, I mean, I understand we're not gonna pay a custodian extra money to clean up for us doing municipal things, but when we have, fill in the blank, school that does a program up there for three days, is it not part of the contract that they reimburse us a little bit for the custodial services?
That's, that's part of the rental fee?
It's not separately stated, like the house manager is.
Oh, okay. So, but I could look at 1052-
No, it is true-
Opera House rentals as somewhat offsetting that custodial line?
Yep. But if we did have, you know, if somebody walked out of here and left the place in absolute pit, had to spend far more time, much more time cleaning up than normal, we would, we would charge them a fee to, for cleanup. But typically, people leave, people typically leave the place fairly clean. So, I mean, that's, that's one place, the custodial, particularly as we're moving into this building and grounds maintenance position, is, you know, there might be some overlap, and it might be-
Position.
Yeah, it might, it might be a good idea to bump some of that money back in there.
What you're getting after, Owen, I agree that you, we may get a little bit better person as well, has more experience, if they've got more time to put into it.
Mm-hmm, right. Ken-
What I just did as a calculation, just for something, maybe to start the discussion here, is I looked at the Opera House rental line, which is projected to increase nine percent. And that's, that's based on an estimation that the facility will be used more in the next year. I said, okay, let's take that nine percent and apply it to the last year's budget for the rental agent, which was 19.5. And if you do that, you come up with 21255. So, and I don't know whether we need to go all that way or not, but maybe, you know, bumping that up to 20,000 gives Rick a little bit of flexibility in the hiring there, if there's somebody that comes along. And if we don't find the right person, we don't spend the money. So I'll float that as something to-
I'm comfortable with that. I just, I wasn't super comfortable with custodial stuff, but with the grounds and maintenance person-
Yeah, the grounds and maintenance is covered.
Okay.
Twenty, 20,000.
There was a lot of work put into that to try to get that grounds and maintenance without making the budget have another person just plain added. It was-
Could, could we, and I didn't see anything, and maybe it's blended into something else, but the custodial, the 2206, the 4230 number?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Can, can we bill for the use of the Opera House, even if it's just a minimal amount of 25 or 50 dollars on top of what we already do, and have that earmarked for an offsetting revenue for the custodial portion of that?
I would leave that to the harbor committee to make that recommendation.
Yeah, good, the harbor committee can do that.
Sorry, the Opera House committee. I mean, I think that that's, I know who the, I guess Owen is the liaison to the Opera House committee right now, and maybe they-
Oh, that's right, that's a new one for me.
Maybe, I would like to hear it come from them-
I just, it was just last month.
...because they're much more familiar with the rate structure and how it works and things like that.
Well, why don't we ask the bearded fella to maybe provide some input? Thank you.
The bearded fella who knows a little bit about the Opera House, not much.
Just a little bit.
Your comment, if we find somebody, the Opera House will go belly flop if we don't find somebody. You know, who do you have that's gonna take the calls, that's gonna do this, and the weddings? And all of a sudden, it's, it's like the five years that Abby has spent building up the harbor. We've built up the Opera House. And if all of a sudden, we don't have anybody to take those calls, to be knowledgeable, to be friendly, we're, we bend over backwards for our clients. Is it worthwhile, even from a revenue standpoint? I think so. But you have to find somebody.
I was not arguing that you shouldn't find someone.
I just didn't want that comment to take seed.
If we found someone that, you know, had the professional knowledge at 16,500, that's one thing.
Right.
If we have a suitable candidate that has, if you came in and said, I'd like this position, then I would think that you, with your professional knowledge, would be deservant of more money, and we would be benefited by having you. And seeing myself up in here is wicked distracting.
Yeah, isn't it?
And so I can switch.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi, Mom, yes, yeah.
So I guess that goes back to, I mean, if we had the ability to put a little extra onto the billing out to offset the custodial, which might free up a little more money to put on top of the rental. Am I missing the whole point?
I think we'd be looking at our rental contract then and getting like Rick's on the board.
I mean, it's a little bit nickel and diming. One of the things that we are able to do is to, now, the select board has, for the past number of years, had a school come to, the select board saying, we've exhausted our appeals. Will you do this for us? And the select board says, oh, yes, you know. But sometimes that, that, that extra added custodial thing means that they go somewhere else. Is that our problem? Maybe yes, maybe no, but it sure is nice to have, you know, the street filled with cars a lot of nights.
Could you maybe structure the contract with the person to allow for X amount of money as a salary plus a bonus based on performance?
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
Let them share in what they bring in.
Well, to a certain extent, that's happened, because it was an hourly position. And so if there were more events here, then you work more hours, so I think so.
Plus, I think one of the things you may not be aware of is that a fair amount of Terry's time was spent in a lot of promotion.
Yes.
And, and there's no particular way to, to pay that back in terms of results. Maybe there is, but, but there was a lot of effort, and I suspect a lot of unbilled time as well. But, but-
But you can see by the-
I mean, the custodial thing, I think we, we can refer that to the Opera House committee and let them take a look at the contract and maybe be creative about that, and taking into account whether, as Jeff says, is it too much nickel and diming? Or is, you know, somebody gonna say, well, the rent is X number of dollars, but then all you got this and this and this and this? It's like, you know, when you go to buy a car and you gotta pay the dealer destination charge, and the sales tax, and the dealer cleaning fee, and the dealer prep fee, and all that. We gotta be a little bit careful of that, I think. But at any rate, I think that's a discussion that should, should generate with recommendation from the select board at the Opera House committee.
So the, one of the, so you, in 2120, have you moved that up to 20,000?
20,000, I think, is what, is that what the board wants to do? That's-
And have you done anything with custodial part-time?
No, I think we just leave it.
And we're not doing anything with revenue?
No, because the revenue is already projected to increase to nine percent.
So I think that's-
I mean, I think that the message we ought to ask the Opera Committee, Opera House Committee to look at is, you know, in an ideal world, in an ideal market, we would keep increasing the rental fee until we saw it start to level off. You know, what will the market bear? So.
I think right now that it's more of, they wanna increase the amount of time it's used. And when they get to the point that it's, that they're having a lot of demand for, that's when you can push the fee up, I think. So right now, the revenues are, I think, are gonna increase by people realizing, hey, this is a good deal. I'm gonna come here and I'm gonna increase the revenues. And then when we get to the point where we're saturated, then we go that route.
You're exactly right, Ken. The goal is to have the building utilized more and generate more revenue that way by filling it up. One of the beauties of our, you know, the challenges for us is there are, there are a lot of other good venues. I mean, we're not the only show in town. But I think one of the things that we offer is we're easy to work with. We're versatile in, you know, what we can provide. Like, the last couple nights we've had, they've been filming a TV pilot upstairs, so that somebody can come in and rent it and make that work for us. And then the school can do a play, and they can have stuff happening on the floor. There can be a dance here, which you can't do that at the Strand. You can't do that at the Opera House, Camden Opera House. You can do it here. So we, we just have to find our niche and work at that niche and do it really well. And I think that's what we're starting to do.
And I think that the work that, as Jeff mentioned, the work that Terry did in marketing and the website and stuff like that, that work typically takes some time to realize the benefit from. And I think we will see that over the next couple of years.
Can I ask a quick question about, so we know that Bay Chamber is scaling back? Is that why the revenues?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a good reason for that? And does that reason involve our services at all? Or is that just a decision that they happen to make?
Not that I know of.
I think they're using other venues, and that may be because of capacity or something like that, or certain requirements that they have.
I just feel like they've been such a staple, I hate to see them.
So I'm good with the Opera House.
Okay. Ben, we can wake Ben up and do the library. Sorry for jumping around, Megan.
Owen, also, I've been talking to Monica some. She has people around her a lot that, you know, knows about this, and she may have some candidates to talk to for the position as well, so.
Awesome.
We've got a good relationship with-
And who's Ma, is she Bay Chamber?
Head of Bay.
Yeah, she's the executive director of Bay Chamber.
Okay, library, personnel services, employee benefits.
So are we splitting your salary with the, she said it was a joke?
No, no, we're not doing that.
It's in the past.
1.2.
1.2.
Someone guiding us?
Again, I'm okay with the manager's recommendations here. We have a young, vibrant staff at the library. We're trying to catch them up. Those folks do a lot of good work.
I personally, I brought it up the other night. I want to see the overtime actually, in the overtime line, which there hasn't been in the past. I know when I've done the payroll, I've seen overtime.
I have, I looked, after you said that last week, I, or whenever it was, I looked through all of their time cards for the last year, and there was no overtime.
Well, or it may have been comp time earned, six and one and a half dozen.
Well, comp time is what they take.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, it's overtime, comp time, it's-
But there's no budget expenditure for it.
For comp time, yeah.
Comp time gets paid out, it's earned at a time and a half, but it's paid out at regular time, just like it would be any other department.
Ben, why did you go with the 5% increase as opposed to most of the other department heads at 3%?
He has an employment agreement, which jumped that up some.
Dawn, if I'd have known it, I'd have asked for that one too. Is yours signed?
Yes.
Ah, you were looking.
No, no, it is. I was thinking, I have a, I have a signed copy-
Thank you.
-in my files.
Yeah, this was Ben's first library director job, if I'm-
Yeah, there were stages that I was bumping up over the last year and a half.
Ben came here, hired by Ann, actually, as the assistant director. And then when Ann left, Ann recommended Ben, and as Rick sometimes does with, with people moving into those positions, he sets some benchmarks.
How did, I'm just gonna ask moderately. 2125, cultural and technical services librarian, has a 10.1% increase, or 10.4 if you go by the manager. Where did you get those numbers, Rick, somebody?
That comes, all that comes from that survey.
I didn't see that, I mean, was that? All right, I'll go back to page 35.
2125.
2125.
It's our circulation and technical services librarian, AKA our cataloger.
Yeah.
I, invaluable. I mean, to me personally.
While Mark flips through, can I just take this moment to say that our library-
I'm just trying to find it.
Oh, no, they're top-notch.
Including you.
Oh, thank you.
34, 35.
I have some really good people.
They're incredible. I might be biased, but they're really good.
No, they're very good.
So, you know, there again, we have, out of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 towns, we have two that responded for that position.
Yeah, 10% does seem generous, you know, in view of other folks.
I assume that's, I assume that's splitting the difference between the only two that replied. I mean, that, that goes back to, you know, I appreciate all the names of towns that are down here, but when you're basing a 10% increase on an only two-town reply out of nine, I would hope-
Granted, Mark, that is a problem. But that's, those are the numbers that we, that we had to go on.
Well, I'd, I'd go to 5%. And I know we're talking pennies, but again, it's just sort of the principle of it.
I mean, just sort of in defense of that, Laura has stepped up in a very big way, and we would probably be hard-pressed to get somebody with the cataloging skills that she's got. Again.
Yeah, no, and I, I'm just, again, when I look at the, not to pick it to death, but, you know, your library assistant at 4.2%, and your assistant, where is it, a library assistant? We don't even have-
Those are part-timers, aren't they, Ben?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are three, well, four part-time people.
Is that an adjustment in hours as well as in salary, or is it-
No, I haven't really adjusted their hours. They're, I've got three that are regular, and then one that is a regular, but very limited, and then she substitutes in whenever I need help.
Part, I think part of the problem here is, and maybe I copied it over wrong, I'll have to look at the 17, 18 budget, but her wage this year is not 34,000. It's 36,587.
So the percentage is different then?
Who's wage?
For Laura.
Laura?
Well, wait a minute, well, that makes a big difference.
That makes a big difference.
So it changes it to a 3%.
Changes the percentage down.
3.3%.
Yeah, well, then, okay. Then I, given that, I think-
I would track my 5%.
You know, I mean, so that's, I mean, I hate to be a, but that's why we're asking questions, because, you know, we end up finding things like this, and-
Yeah, and that's okay, that's fine.
So are your top three, I mean, your, your full-time, your deputy director and your children's 2120, are they full-time?
Yeah, the, the top four, there are four full-time people. So the director, the deputy director, the children's, and then our cataloger are all full-time.
So is that, would that be the assistant library director listed in the survey?
Yes.
So again, we've got only two out of nine respondents. 43, 45. I mean, it's pretty hard to go, I mean, we're, when you don't have anything to go on, and you're looking at, the only two respondents were 43,000 and 45,000, you know, is-
That's a tough one, is a question about that.
No, I'm, just, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we, we don't really have anything to go on to base the 8.5, other than, yeah, it would be a nice thing to do.
I guess, you know, instead of cut, what I would suggest, given the, the proper current year salary of 2125 is 36,587. Is that right, Megan, is that the right number?
Yeah, I've got it.
Which is essentially the same as the 2120 line. And I would suggest that those two lines should be the same going forward, which would be increasing the 37,790 to 38,250, which is only 255 dollars. It'll put those two on the same level. I would suggest that.
That would make sense.
Yep.
Well, this is a good time to-
And then I think the rest, I personally think the rest of the manager's numbers are fine.
It wasn't that bad.
No, I never worry.
Owen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Okay, so that, that one for the...
That one will go up to thirty-eight, two, fifty, rather than the thirty-seven.
Thirty-eight, two, fifty, okay. And so that's the four, okay.
All right, so that basically puts those two at the same level, which is, it seems like they were at about the same level previously.
Yeah. And that would make sense.
Okay, good.
Excuse me.
Okay. I'm gonna roll it. We have the town clerk here. There isn't any other, your other ones that you're in charge of don't have any personnel services?
Uh, no, there's no personnel associated with the library building.
Uh, probably ninety-five is what I'll guess.
All right, I'm right behind you.
Okay. Ninety-six.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Ben, for hanging around so long.
Thank you, Ben.
Anybody have anything here?
All right, let me get my pages unfolded here, hang on.
Page ninety-six.
Yep.
The manager's number for the deputy town clerk does stand out, but I'm sure there's a good...
Just based on the numbers and I, without, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but if, how many, but I don't have the numbers of how many towns we were looking at.
Well, I can tell you that there's only two out of the nine.
Yeah.
And they were, one was forty thousand and one was forty-nine thousand. So there again, um, you know, it's a poor sampling to be able to bring it up when you don't, you're bringing up to the low of the two that responded. And the two that responded was Waldeboro at the high end and Ellsworth at the low end, which is odd.
No, it wasn't Waldeboro.
Well, I'm, uh, deputy town clerk right there, Waldeboro, forty-nine, seven, ninety-five.
See Ellsworth and Rockland.
Well, I've got a list...
Oh, there's another one, so there's three of them, then? Okay, so there's three.
Is there three? Oh, yeah, on the far side, forty-five.
Okay.
It's, it's odd that Waldeboro is, is so much higher than, um...
Do we want to give our town clerk an opportunity to talk about these positions specifically and maybe some of the range of duties and responsibilities?
Absol- absolutely.
Yeah, no, no, I'm good with that.
If you'd like to chime in, that's what you do for...
In looking at the towns that we're compared to... I have it.
It's gotta be near you.
Okay. Looking at the towns we're compared to, um, you have to look at what positions the clerk or deputy clerks hold. I'm not sure on the deputy clerks. I can tell you on the clerks themselves, Waldeboro is not a hospital town, which we are. They don't have as many tax bills as we do, um, because of the timeshare, so we have sixty-five hundred tax bills compared to other towns. I am the tax collector. Camden Town Clerk is not a tax collector. Rockland City Clerk is not a tax collector. Neither one of them have the registrar voters. Camden works thirty-seven hours compared to my forty hours. So the comparisons that are used, um, with Cassidy doesn't have a hospital, I don't believe she's ta- a tax collector either. So you're not comparing apples with apples with these positions, so...
So could you then, could I make the assumption that because of your additional responsibilities with timeshares and being a hospital town as the clerk, that there are probably additional responsibilities given to your deputies because of the strain on your own time to accomplish your job specifically?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and that goes back to my comment earlier about not, not taking nine towns in one size fits all, but you find specific towns that do similar jobs to your town clerk versus your fire chief and your highway person and that way you're getting a better sampling for that one position rather than trying to...
I mean, I agree, I, I think the challenge would be, you'd be, in some cases, you'd be look, using one town for one sampling for one position and another town for another position, which is, which is doable. I mean, this is not perfect. It's, it, it is not perfect. I have, it's not a perfect way to do it.
So I guess I, you know, in hearing...
Several years ago, um, I actually did the salary, I looked up the MMA stuff myself.
You did, you went back and did it yourself.
Um, and so maybe the board next year may want to get more involved in that ahead of time so that the board has, has their hands wrapped around those numbers.
Were you, were you part of the committee that got together years ago? You probably weren't on the board, but there was, there was a committee right there, thank you. There was a committee of civilians, if you will, the public, a board member and some other people that did a quite, an extensive comparison.
Yeah, that was before my time.
Yeah, before mine, too.
But, I mean, the board can look into doing that next year, as I said, we can, we can look into how we want to do that and...
This, this is not perfect.
Yeah, and nothing is gonna be perfect, but maybe, maybe we can get better. I, I accept that.
How about, how about before we have any other drastic increases, we suggest that we come up with a better moustache? I, because I really don't want to see this type of thing come up again next year.
Yeah, I think we can, we can't do it tonight, but we can...
No, but I'm just saying, I...
I think we can work...
I think you just volunteered to chair the ad hoc committee.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, we're making some pretty good adjustments this year, I don't think there should be anything for next year that we're aware of.
And actually, I just want to support that in that, and I could be wrong, but I don't recall in the previous two budgets that I've worked on that we had this, these many over three percent changes. It, are we doing it primarily to try to make, is this a slow incremental adjustment or is this a, it seems to be a, a pretty decent adjustment on some of these position payments, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around, you know, it seemed a three percent across the board was a, a good place to start and yet we've got some decent fluctuations between positions.
That was, that was the, based on how far they were below the averages. Granted, the averages are not perfect and we, we understand that. Sometimes they're not, perhaps not representative on the low end, too.
And I was only half joking about, you know, chairing that committee because I've discovered, you know, we talked about it now and we set our select board goals, uh, individual goals, but if someone doesn't take the leadership on this, it ain't gonna happen.
All right.
So, you know, if we don't want to have this discussion next year, Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest you work with the town manager and put together a review committee.
I'll consult my, uh, team.
Team will get with your team.
There's all those deer you feed every time I call in.
I'll consult my team and get back to you on that, but I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's a very...
I think the, uh, the budget committee would like to have representation on that group and help.
That would be, yeah, that'd be nice.
Not a problem, because I think if...
It's, because it's important, you're right, it's an important thing to do.
Not a problem, I could, because I think if we can get targeted towns for targeted positions, instead of one size fits all, I think we're gonna be better off.
We could work it out.
Let's get back to the town clerk's budget if we can and decide what we want to do with, if anything, with what the manager has recommended here.
Am I gonna sound like a horrible person if I say the deputy town clerk had a six percent increase versus eight point eight? And, and that is not that position or that individual specific, it's, I feel like we still accomplish our goal of trying to get on track with where other folks are at and giving a, what is a decent pay raise while not going on percentage numbers that, of some portion of me inside wonders what that does to the employee base. What does that mean to the assistant town clerk that they only got a five point nine versus the deputy town clerk that got an eight point eight? I don't, I don't know about the interpersonal dynamics of that decision, but trying to even some of these department increases out just doesn't seem like a horrible idea as long as they're still enjoying a good percentage increase in pay.
It does not make you a horrible person, it makes you a member of the club.
So let, let me ask you this one. Let, let me ask you this. On, on the department head recommendations, how did you come up with the three, the two-nine and the three?
I did not come up with those numbers, the manager put those in, that was their decision, not mine. We did not put numbers in for that.
Right, typically, the, the, the department heads don't put their wage numbers in, that's, that's what we put in.
Unless they request an, an increase.
Oh, really?
Then can we...
Well, move on here.
Boy, that really changes the whole complexion here.
We're...
Holy cow.
Turn the cameras off, we gotta have a talk.
Holy cow.
That does present, that does present a conundrum.
Now, uh, just to follow that line, uh, you didn't come up then with the deputy town clerk or the assistant town clerk even though they're not your position?
That is correct.
So how, so if you didn't come up with it, why is there a two point nine and an eight point eight? Why isn't it just say eight point eight? I mean, it's sort of, it's sort of deceiving, I think, in some of the...
I suppose we should ask Rick.
It's just rounding.
It's just a rounding number, the two point nine? We, we just went, we just went ahead and did everybody at three percent.
Rounding means you hit a number, not a portion of the number.
But it's, it's deceiving to think that somebody gave you the information to put in there and they didn't. It was put in there by you guys and then...
We just, we just took all of the wages and took everybody and gave everybody right, right across the board in those lines, in all of the, um, all those lines, a three percent increase.
And all the department heads are provided a letter with their budget that says if they would like to make adjustments in personnel, then they can put those adjustments in and we'll figure out the rest. Otherwise, we'll do the same across the board.
Hold on, just a minute.
I did ask for an adjustment on my budget, it was denied.
So let me, let me find somebody that matters. So I'm looking at the fire chief, he's got three percent, that's okay. So he put that in or you guys did?
Well, Megan, just say, say what you said again, Megan, so people can hear it, about the, about the department heads get a letter.
Every year when the budgets go out, Rick attaches the letter with the budget forms that says something along the lines, if they would like wage increases, to put those numbers in, if there's no numbers put in, then we figure the same across the board.
So I'll just be a, a horse's butt again because, you know, I'm looking at the harbor master at fifty-six, ten, which is a three percent number you put in, but over here under the manager, it's fifty point six, why not just say three point one on, on theirs and just call it good enough across rather than throwing a point one percent in?
Is that rounding again?
It's just rounding, I mean...
No, that one wasn't, that was the one where it won up forty dollars because it was, it was not under...
When you say rounding, you're rounding dollars and then the percentage spits out, because I was thinking of it backwards, because rounding is...
I think the quest, the question that's being asked is, um, why put the three percent in and then one column and then the other increase in the other column?
Well, the other question being asked is why is that column even labeled department head?
Because it's for the whole, the whole budget, for the whole thing.
So why don't them put their own number in and then...
They have that opportunity, if they choose not to, then...
Well, perhaps they don't dare to, I don't know.
Well, there's something flawed with the way this is presented because the whole time I've been sitting here looking at these things, I've, you know, I give the, the, the department heads a hard time about this stuff, uh, and I find out it's not really their number they're putting in there. You know, it just rolls over automatically from somewhere.
That's basically what happens, we decide, when I look at the budget, I look at the whole budget and say, okay, let's, let's do a three percent increase and let's roll all of these wages over at a, at a three percent increase for everybody, right across the board.
Yeah, but that ought to be under than the manager recommendation, because it's not a department head recommendation.
Well, that's where, it is under the manager, but it also, it appears under the department head.
I don't know, boy, that doesn't pass the sniff test. I mean, I, you know, anyway. You know, like I say, I, I just wasn't aware, that's how things were done, and I've been spending all this time going over this budget under a huge misconception that, you know, the department heads were, you know, putting this budget together and, you know, I think that the, the deputy town clerk should get this amount and the assistant town clerk should get this amount and, but that's not at all how it's been done.
I want to say two things. One is, I believe this to be true, that your purchase and contractual services, other contractual services, supplies, capital items, all those figures that are under the department head column are prepared by the department heads, it's more of the nuts and bolts versus the personnel services, salaries, et cetera.
Wages and benefits.
Which does seem inappropriate thing for them to be doing. At the same time, I will, I will echo what my colleagues have said, that this is news to me and I wish I had known this going into my third budget or had a, potentially just been aware of this before.
We're...
It, it, it helps us on our end know what we're dealing with and who came up with what numbers. I understand where you're coming from, I just wish that I had known this.
Were the department heads given a copy of the survey?
Hmm, I don't, I don't know.
I think we talked about it in the department meeting, but...
So they, they weren't provided with the information that you had to better make a guesstimate of what to put in on their part?
I didn't have the numbers until after they had to have their budgets in.
It is, has always been, the wages and benefits were always established by the town manager. That's, that's my job.
So there again, why have the department head line in there?
Because it does apply to all the other columns or rows, which ones are column, which ones are row.
Yeah, they could be just left blank.
They should be. They should just be left blank for further...
It's just sort of a miss.
I have, Tom wants to say something.
Um, in the future, I did understand what was going on. I think that there should be an overview letter for the select board and for the budget committee on how the budget process is managed by the town manager and any directions that are given to town employees and department heads in relationship to the budget should be public record, should be in this budget for everybody to see, so everybody knows what the process is and no matter what the line says, we understand what it means and where it came from.
Well, I, I can tell you from being a department head, I gave a number and was not instructed to do anything different. And that number maintained there and was either put up or down or agreed with. I was never aware that that wasn't up to me and that it goes beyond this manager to previous managers.
Well, but it sounds like if you put a number, yeah, the number stays, if you don't put a number in, they automatically fill it in. And I think there ought, there should be no automatic fill-in under the name department head, every department actually have to put those in it. And then the manager should work on it and then the select board should work on it.
Agreed.
All right, so barring all that, where are we at now?
So we, we gotta move forward with what we have, I think the comments have been noted. And, uh...
Well, are we, are we sticking with the numbers that are there?
Yeah.
Well, that's the question we have to ask on this, we're in the town clerk's budget right now. Ninety-six. And the question was on the, uh, the discussion was on the deputy town clerk's position with the eight point eight percent increase.
I would be okay reducing that to six and a half or seven or having it fall on an even dollar amount.
A six percent is thirty-nine, seven, fifty. Just for reference's sake, and I'll let, let the rest of the board decide where they want to go with that.
I'm okay with that.
I am also.
Bring it.
Thirty-nine, seven, fifty for that one position. Do we want to, uh, talk about the other positions at all? Want to look at the salary survey?
Hang on, yep, that's where I'm flipping. Where are we going, where are we going? We're looking at the, well, the other two, the assistant town clerk and the deputy, I mean, the town clerk, rather.
Well, and it's not because I don't want to get on track and have us be competitive, I'm, I'm just hoping that instead of, and I understand and recognize that it is still a minimal shock to our bottom line, even if we were to bump everyone up. a minimal shock to our bottom line, even if we were to bump everyone up, you know, 9% across the board, it's still a minimal shock to the bottom line. I'm just hoping that we can try to get on track in a multi-year process versus trying to play catch-up all in one year. It just, it still gets us to our end goal, but in a similar fashion that I've observed this board taking before I was even a member of it, which is you get to your end goal over time. It's a slow, steady increase versus shocking.
And the difficult part is that the end goal then changes as you move forward. That's, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
Because we've dealt with that in some years and, you know, we've had some positions that were terribly underpaid, more so than any of them this year. And we've looked at it and said, well, we can't do that all in one year. We'll do it in, in a couple of years. I think the finance...
And I think we've called into question too whether people have been underpaid or overpaid because it, it sounds like the numbers we're using are pretty flawed, the comparisons.
Well, I wouldn't... I, I think they're not perfect. I don't know that. Pretty flawed, I'm not sure I would go there necessarily, but they're not perfect. And I think that we've already talked about the possibility of doing that a different way next year.
Well, hopefully we don't have to go through this survey says next year because we've made a significant increase this year.
That's what, well, you're gonna take care of it.
Right.
My guess is you'll still find that there's places where your, where employees are underpaid. Even as, after this, after what we go through, uh, the increases we make now, you're still gonna find people are underpaid. The, the difference will be you'll have more numbers, you'll have more comparable towns to, to make that comparison to. So the more, the more data you have, the better, the more accurate that prediction is.
Oh, so having nine out of nine instead of two out of nine would help.
It certainly would be a lot better, yes.
Yes.
You know, it gets back to my question about merit-based raises and everything. And I understand what you're saying about, um, you know, it gets into then personnel issues if you have to explain why someone got some more than some others, you know, but that's basically, well, it's not what we're doing, but the point is, is that, you know, suddenly we throw out these manager numbers that's, you know, 8% increase, 5.9%, 3%, and it's all under the guise of trying to even out salaries. But again, it's not, you know, you're trying to do that on very flawed data. I mean, you know, why not make 8.8%, 10% and call it good or, so it, it just seems very arbitrary to me is, I guess, what I'm getting at.
Well, it comes back to the, the comparison numbers that are being used. The process wasn't arbitrary, but the comparison numbers weren't perfect.
There's some cases where you're, you're exactly right. There's some places where we don't, the data is not, there's not enough data there to have a, a real firm number.
I just want to make a quick plug for both Megan and Rick. The budget that we're going through now is, I would argue, not far superior, but superior to the budgets that I had worked on in the first budget.
Oh, yeah.
And then the second budget. And it was because we had identified areas that we wanted to see improvement. And both those two folks and everyone in the, you know, town office supporting them, they made these necessary changes. They're, they're very open and receptive to fixing our budget to be in the best document we can have.
Things like the shading in the library budget, which we didn't have originally.
Which we didn't have before.
You know, stuff like that. So I think, I think the point is that these discussions are useful.
Very useful. Difficult to try to change gears in the middle of a process, but I'm positive that they would, they would respond well if that's something you wanted to see in the next budget.
Yep. Anything else on the town clerk page? Mark?
I'm, I'm just trying to...
The word you're looking for is "I'm good."
Well...
Or that's a couple of words. That's two words.
I'm not terribly, but, um, I will have a document next year that might, uh, better reflect specific concerns.
You know what this is? This is the learning curve and we're all still on it.
All right. Okay. Um, so now we have to sort of go back and pick off the ones that we didn't do with department heads here.
So let's, we start in finance. Megan's still...
Oh, Megan's here, yeah, well.
She hasn't gone anywhere.
She's stuck here.
She's not going anywhere.
And actually, we have a... Say again, 114. And you have a correction on that one, as I recall, Megan.
Yeah, when we looked at the numbers, it, they, there was a...
2110.
Yeah.
There was a circular reference issue with the wages and the benefit sheet that we have used in the past, which ended up reducing 2110 to 66,726, which is up there.
66,726, okay. Now, it's because the salary bump is gonna come halfway through the year when you get your degree.
But what changed?
Uh, 2110.
Yeah. But where on 2110? Who are we talking about?
This number here. Or 66,726, yeah.
Manager number?
Yeah.
66... Page 114, first line, 2010.
2110.
Sorry, 2110. Look up, up there. And a lot of this is driven by the employment agreement.
The fact that she's gonna have her degree and the agreement was when she got her degree. And the problem with the previous number was that that assumed that she had the degree at the beginning of the year and she won't have it until December, so it had to be adjusted to...
So Megan, I have thoroughly enjoyed and felt like it was a phenomenal investment, that college stipend. My only question is how much longer, is this the last year of that or do we have one more?
This, this 18, 19 would be the last year of that.
Okay. And that was money well, well worth it.
Gets her degree in December, right?
Yeah.
Could have a party for that.
I was not, I was not expecting her to get it done this quickly, actually. I know it doesn't seem like it's that quick for you, but, um, I, I thought it would take, it would be a, you know, three or four-year process and you're done, you'll be done in two, two years.
Yeah, Megan, I, I know that this budget process has been maybe more contentious than you've been used to in the past and everything, but I, I think you've been doing an excellent job. I mean, there's no question in my mind of your dedication and everything to the job. So, you know, again, I'm sorry if I give you that impression, but I, I have the highest regard for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Is your training in edu, and I know it's outside of, your training in education line's good. Thank you.
Yeah, that's so that I can go to the New England State's Government Finance Officers Association.
What did we read you on 2110?
2110 is 66,726.
Whatever that works out.
As to her employment agreement. And it was, it was an error in the, in the manager's column.
Well, I hate to see errors, except that they're in our favor.
Oh, come on now. Sometimes you don't have anything nice to say.
Do we want to just go at the beginning and work our way through now or?
That would be fantastic.
Okay, let's go, let's go back to the beginning to start with administration. Page 86. We're right at the beginning, but I think we've hit, we've done the heavy lifting, I think.
Oh, not yet.
Do we have a meeting tomorrow night?
Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee.
Budget Committee, yeah. No. We have to vote tonight on this.
You can, you can come tomorrow night if you want.
We have to vote tonight.
Yeah, we have to vote tonight. So we've got to finish this tonight.
They have something to...
I, I'd like to see us remove 2105 from the line.
Oh, yeah.
I disagree.
Yeah, well, here we go.
There's two. So that means we have nothing, right?
Um, I, I think that in, you know, it's not, I don't do this for the money, I have to tell you.
Okay, then so zero shouldn't be a bad thing then.
It's, it's the optics of it. I think that, uh, the idea that the town should provide some compensation for their select board for the work that's done, I think is a good idea. I'm not advocating for raising this. It's actually been suggested that it be raised several times when I was on the board and I always said, no, I don't want it to be raised, but I don't want it to be lowered and I don't want it to be removed. I think it's important. I think it's an important sign for the town to be able to say that, yes, we recognize that you're doing a lot of work and here's a small token of our appreciation for it.
I would make it a dollar then.
No, and I actually, I very much agree with Ken. This is a difficult job to do and to incentivize anyone that's worth it, there has to be some money involved. That said, I'm perfectly happy with taking my, I got a thousand bucks, right, before taxes? I'm perfectly happy with throwing that into the UFB. I was reserving it for Bob Hopps' position in the event that, that we were trying to cut some things here and there. I don't do this for the money. I don't think anyone does it for the money, but I got to tell you, I mean, to get folks to want to do this job, there has to be some incentive other than the kindness of your heart.
Well, I, I... Each, each select board member has the opportunity to do with that stipend what they wish. And if Owen wishes to put it back into the UFB, he can do that. If the other members want to do that, they can do that.
I would still go with zero.
Quite frankly, I'll tell you what I, I'll tell you what I do with mine. I take my wife out to dinner a couple of times a year because she suffers a lot for the time that I spend here. And it's time that I don't get to spend with her and things like that. So that's what I do with mine.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I remember hearing your dear wife say that it was, it was quite convenient because the winter check came right around Christmas time and it made it so, you know, buying presents for the kids. And that's basically what I ended up doing with mine.
Or paying your property taxes, which is what I did with mine.
Sometimes people do this and they don't maybe have the means to continue if they don't have a little bit of incentive.
So my recommendation to, to you two gentlemen is to, to do the right thing with your meager thousand dollars that you get a year to do this job and, and putting it towards the taxpayer and the UFB and offsetting taxes is virtually the same as zeroing it out. But not everyone will be in the same financial position that you all are that maybe has a desire to do this job.
You could tell me too, when it's time to pay it out, that you don't want it paid out. So it would never, it would just sit there until the end of the year and then it would roll.
It's smarter.
I'm damn near destitute and I'm still willing to give it up.
Well, then give it up, but leave it in there.
Oh, I, I'm, I do it because I like Rockport. I'm not, I don't have a great deal of money, but I'm still willing to help the taxpayers as meagerly as it might sound by giving that thousand dollars back.
And that's fine, but what you're advocating for is not giving it back, it's taking it away in the first place.
If you're not raising it, you're...
May I, may I offer a comment?
Yes.
It seems to me that this is the same situation that we're talking about with provider services money, that members of the board and members of the public do not want the taxpayer money to go to places where it's not their choice. And I think in this case, there is a stipend of, what, a thousand dollars plus a little bit per person. Do with it as you wish, but just as you won't give somebody else's tax money to, uh, to, to a, to a charity, don't tell your fellow board members what they have to do with their
My recommendation would be to leave the money in and give it back to the taxpayers if you want to. And I am, I'm happy to do that. Megan, please withhold my check and roll it into the UFB or whatever keeps it there.
Well, that'll be, that'll be next year. This year doesn't necessarily, this is for next year.
When was the last time I got paid? I feel like when you pay...
We've got one more payment that comes in, in June. And you can do that, you can do that with last year's if you want. You can tell Megan not to cut the check if you like it.
No, geez, if I have it, I already spent it.
See, this, anyway.
Where are we at?
I want to, I want to leave it in.
We're at 2-2.
We're still at 2-2? Can't you just give it away and leave it in there for the, the person that's not you?
Again, the other thing we, you could do is you could make the motion on the town meeting floor to reduce the article by that much. You can't add it back in on the town We're out there asking, you know, looking now for people to run for a couple of spots on this board. And I think that if the message that's sent is that the town thinks so little of their select board that they're gonna take away this small, and it's a token amount of money. I understand that.
You know, it depends, you know, I'm getting different, you know, you're saying it's a token amount of money and Tom back here saying he pays his property taxes with it, you know?
Well, it's, it's, it's not, it's not respective of the amount of time we put in. Let's put it that way.
No, of course not.
But it is, it is an important sign, I think. And so that's why, and like I say, I don't do this for the money.
If it was representative of the time we put in, I'd be advocating for a greater increase.
Yeah.
But I wasn't because I actually enjoy what I'm doing for the town and don't think of it as something I, you know, I, we're, I guess we're still at 2-2.
I just kind of want to hark it back to what Jan said, is that that's fine if that's the decision you want to make, but to compel other future potential board members to have to share that same decision.
Well, the whole process tonight is we're compelling town employees and taxpayers to do something. So, you know, I don't think we can single out that, you know, we're compelling our, our colleagues.
And I think, you know, in the grand scheme of things, we were, I, I think we were, we were quite pliable as we went through. Uh, we didn't logger heads against each other and say 2-2 and have nothing, but I personally am okay being at zero.
I'd like to have it be one because at least, you know, that's what people frequently will do to town.
Helen, Helen wanted to have, say something.
Could I make a suggestion, a suggestion? Basically, what you're doing is voting on your own salary. Why don't you leave it to the budget committee to decide?
It's not terribly fair for you to vote on your salary. Let us do it.
I love that idea.
It is if you take it away. I mean, you know.
Yeah, why would you do that to this guy?
I think, I think that's pretty fair.
Yeah, Mark would have to accuse himself. Right. Because it's his money.
Or you could leave it in there and leave it to the townspeople at the, uh, the town meeting.
Make your best pitch.
Well, you be careful what you ask for because, you know, you may have somebody that stands up and says you deserve 25,000.
You can't go out, you can't raise it at a town meeting.
So, so if it's at zero, how can you raise it?
You can't. That's why, that's the point is you have to, you have to put it in at the...
You can't raise it no matter what it's...
But Tom, didn't Tom just say?
Thomas, but to do that, you would have to put the money in the article and then the town, town meeting floor could reduce it. So the choice, to give the townspeople the choice on the town meeting floor, we have to put it in the article on the warrant. You can't leave it zero because then the town people can't increase it. But people, the town meeting is free to decrease it on the town meeting floor if they so desire. Well, let me ask this. If we're stuck at a 2-2 here, that means we, we can't put anything in. The budget committee will review this tomorrow night and maybe subsequent nights. I don't know how long it's gonna take them to go through it. Um, and then the budget committee makes recommendations to the select board. And we can follow their recommendations or not, as we see fit. What, how are, if we leave it as zero now and the budget committee comes back and recommends and says put it back at 5,500, how, how are the rest of the board gonna, gonna vote on that?
Wait a minute, I'm trying to count votes right now in my head, so just...
Richard Nixon.
I guess, I ask the question because it's if, if, if the, because ultimately, I mean, we can say, well, let the budget committee decide, but ultimately it's the board that has to decide.
Right.
So if, if, if the votes aren't gonna change, then there's no point in, it's not what I was told, putting it in their lap.
Right.
Could I ask the members of the budget committee to stay out of this? Let the, let the select board do that right this moment? Mark is a member of the select board, so I don't think it's our place to, 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 to move around. We have a chance tomorrow to talk about this and we will. It was a procedural thing, but... Okay, well, I didn't know what you were talking about.
Yeah, I think, Jan, that's a good suggestion, I think. Thank you.
All right.
So where are we at? Is it zero?
No, I'll hang on a minute.
One dollar?
Let, um, let him say something.
I guess if I'm willing to go to the wall on this, I may as well do it at the town meeting rather than bog things down here.
Well, you wouldn't bog things down because we could stay here till midnight if you were insisting on staying at zero. I am still okay staying at zero. So we could be here until... So we could be here until whomever, till the tape runs out and you change it.
We just put it at zero and move on.
We don't have a tape.
Well, the disc, sorry, whatever, whatever he's recording it on.
Twenty hours is the max.
You mean, we don't have people?
So here's the procedure. In the next couple of minutes, we're gonna decide one way or the other as a board, where we're gonna go with this. If it stays two, two, it goes in at zero, the budget committee will recommend. And then we will have to revisit it at our April ninth meeting where we can be, have the discussion again. I don't know whether anybody's mind will change or not.
Can we start at this end of the table?
But if, if, if we, the other thing, before we start that end of the table, the other thing I wanna say is if you wanna let the townspeople decide, then we have to put the money in the warrant article and allow them the option to remove it.
Do, so let's start with Owen.
Okay, Owen.
Okay, and so before I say, yes, leave it in, for folks that haven't sat up there during town meeting, I, it's been my experience anyway that all board members are open to other board members making whatever pitch at whatever time. So I have not seen anything, any attempts to stifle a board member that feels strongly about singling something out from prohibiting or preventing them from doing that. So just know that however, you know, whatever pitch you wanna make at town meeting, you are free to make that and no one will stop you. So yes, keep it in. Now it's your turn.
I'm, I'm good at keeping it at zero.
And I'll keep it at zero and we can revisit it April ninth.
Perfect. Okay.
What else we got?
Hold on, I gotta wait a few minutes so I can change this.
Yeah, she's gotta keep up and, uh, Megan just gave, handed me the, a note from the finance person saying she has to be home by midnight. I mean, she's got work to do to get this up and ready so that the budget committee has it.
We gotta, we gotta move a little more quickly here.
But, but my.
How many online questions have we had? I'm sure it would be overwhelming.
I haven't, I haven't been watching. I've been looking at the budget. Is there any people watching?
According to this one, five.
Perfect.
Wow. Hi, Marcy. Okay. Page, uh, page ninety, town manager.
My offer still stands. To take a zero percent increase, you guys have done a lot of work here. Done a lot of work here with employee raises. And that's really important to me, so my offer still stands.
I couldn't in good conscience give you zero, but I would give you one.
I'll leave it at three.
I mean, we have a contract, so that's, well, by contract.
I would read.
That's sort of, I mean, when you read that and look at it, it also allows the, the wolf to guard the hen house, or however that saying goes, because, you know, if we're tied to that number as recommended for other people, you, you're familiar with the contract, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, my.
Yours, his is based on whatever everybody else gets.
His, yeah, his raise was based on, yeah, so he would get the, the three percent.
So that's sort of like the.
Across the board.
You know, the fox guard, the hen house.
That's, I'll tell you, that's not typical of town managers. Town managers typically negotiate their contracts with much higher increases, yearly increases than that. And when we interviewed Rick for the job and, and talked about the finances, that's what he told us. And said, I, I don't want any more increase than what the rest of the employees are getting. And to me, that was a noble thing for him to do at that time.
What happened last year? Between sixteen, seventeen and seventeen, eighteen? How much is that? That's only like a.
They're all three percent, I'm pretty sure.
Two point, twenty-one hundred.
Uh, you know, it's, it's gonna be within decimal points of three percent every year.
I mean, you guys have done a lot of work here and a lot of work with salaries and wages. It's not been easy work. And, I mean, I appreciate the fact that, you know, some of the, some of the changes you've made are, are, are good ones. And, and it's important to me that employees are treated fairly. And, you know, I'm, I'm willing to waive that term of my contract because you've done, you've done a good job.
Doug?
I mean, I'm not settled in on that one just yet, but I wanna hear.
I know Owen said three.
I only have one employee and I have, sure, had frustrations with that employee. But that employee does a good job. And I feel as strongly about rewarding the one employee that we have as much as all the employees that he has. I, I feel like if I, if I have anything that I need to get across to that employee, then I take the time and I get that across. But to, to somehow, you know, bring that person down a notch by reducing their pay, it doesn't seem to get my point across.
Owen, I'm offering that.
That was offered earlier today.
And I'm not taking that as, you, you, it's, I.
It's all good.
You guys treat me very well and I'm fine with my, my salary. And I just, if it helps, if it helps make that bottom line by a few thousand dollars.
I'll tell you what.
I'm, I'm.
How does Doug and, and Ken feel about this? Let me hear their.
I mean, I, we have a contract and I'd like to honor the contract. I wanna, I wanna have the town honor its contracts.
That's how I feel about it too.
Sold. Good enough.
Okay, move on. Good. Thank you for offering, Rick.
I wanted to see how far that offer would go, you know? I mean, I was willing to do.
The fact that you made the offer says an awful lot about you and I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And I, I appreciate the work, I appreciate the work you guys have done.
You know that, that comes with free rides on the Appaloosa, right?
That could be arranged.
Okay, Megan, what'd you say was next?
General assistance is the only other one. Unless you wanna talk about places that employees have cut, like recreation.
That's one place you may wanna go back to.
General assistance?
Yeah, can you give us?
What did Megan just say?
General assistance.
General, general assistance.
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven.
I won't forget that last one. Let's focus on one thing.
I just wanna make a comment that I view that the process here is a little flawed that we've been meeting since three o'clock. And, you know, it's just human nature to get kinda goofy and not pay as much attention. And I think next year, we oughta break this up a little bit more. I don't think we do the town a service by.
Well, this, this has been a lo, this portion of it has been longer than it's been in previous years. That's why it was scheduled.
Usually when we're at this point, we've got almost everything figured out and it's more of a formality.
But hasn't it been better? Hasn't the end result been better?
Well, we're not done yet. Okay, general assistance, personnel services. I'm gonna suggest that we raise the GA administrative stipend to forty-five hundred dollars and that we raise the assistant to one thousand dollars.
Cressen, did you look at my book? 'Cause those are the numbers I have.
No, I didn't. It was based on our discussion the other night.
Well.
And I understand that, you know, that the, the current GA administrator doesn't have the previous, the experience of the previous GA administrator, but I also understand that they've done a lot of hard work.
Well, and I don't, I mean, when you look at, it's a stipend. And I asked the other night if it was based on an hourly wage or how, or the number of customers. And, and I'm not sure yet that I still understand the answer, but. So, I mean, you're not having fewer people come in.
Actually, I'd say they have more coming in this past.
Right, so, I mean, that's, you know, to lower it by. Well, I understand the low, you have a new person in it, whatever, but I, but I think that that's, so anyway, my, that's my suggestion. It's forty-five hundred and a thousand for those lines.
And I would definitely support that.
As long as we can revisit it, if we have to. Get it below LD one?
Owen, you all right with that?
I'm fine.
Doug?
Yep.
Okay.
The, the other place was that, um, under recreation is that where the job we cut.
It was, it was nine thousand somewhere and there was something else somewhere else.
In rec, is it in recreation, Megan?
We're talking about the ones that be flagged?
Recreation, in the recreation budget.
We're gonna be two.
There's, uh, in, that's the position for the groundskeeper.
Oh, is that under culture?
Yeah.
Let's have a page, please. Two twenty-four, I think.
No, that's parks, darn it.
It's in there, that descend.
No, that, that was right. No.
I put it, it's under, it's under parks.
Oh, it is under parks? Right, it's lime kiln. Then it's two twenty-four.
No, groundskeepers in recreation.
Oh, okay, in recreation, that's right. That, it's.
The previous number is in parks.
Parks, right, that's why it's confusing. So if you go to recreation, twenty-two oh five.
That's page two forty.
Twenty-two oh five.
Right.
That is the groundskeeper, the person that is responsible for opening and closing up the Marge Jones Center and doing ba, some minor basic stuff. The, the idea was with the groundskeeper that when we went to the full-time buildings and grounds maintenance person, what we were trying to do was keep that cost, uh, impact to a minimum. So that was one of the places we cut. But I would think that if we, it would be helpful to put that money back so that there's a, a more of a smooth transition between going to the full-time ground, you know, the, uh, full-time buildings and grounds maintenance person and the groundskeeper. And I think that groundskeeper position with attrition over, over time will eventually just be unnecessary.
So what number are you suggesting there?
Uh, what, what did we have in there?
Yeah, twenty-six thirty.
Twenty-six, twenty-six hundred and thirty dollars.
Excuse me, what page are we on?
Two forty.
Well, that. Mine says two forty.
Forty, right here.
And it's zero, uh, zero.
Right.
Right.
Now, on two twenty-four, page two twenty, and this is an artifact of splitting the two budgets.
Right.
Yeah.
There was a budget amount for last year of twenty-six thirty.
But there's nothing in there this year.
Nothing in there this year.
We didn't put anything in there.
The initial thought, as Rick was saying, was that that would be covered by the public works, building and grounds person.
That's why there's nothing here. The one maintenance person. So now, what do you wanna do?
That's a cut. If you wanted to make any other adjustment, that would be a place to put that money back in.
And can I make my, my pitch real quick? So the individual that we're actually talking about is someone that I would argue spends more time than they are reimbursed for. They also live in extreme close proximity to Marge Jones. So in addition to locking and unlocking the gate, they monitor the grounds. If folks are there misusing our tennis courts, for example, this individual had an issue with someone, uh, being compensated for teaching folks tennis, which is not something that we allow. We allow all public use of that, but not for commercial activity. And so our groundskeeper monitored that individual and basically told them what the rules were. They do the same thing with dogs and ensuring that the trash is taken out. They also annually submit a, a maintenance sheet of small bits that need to be corrected, a basketball net here, a latch there. And like Rick was saying, the individual is getting up there in age and so will not be there, I'm assuming, for much longer wanting to do this. But the value of having someone who is intimately aware of all aspects related to Marge Jones, keeping this position for the remainder of this budgeted year will give us a great left seat, right seat, transition off-ramp to our grounds and maintenance person. And although I have offered my money to the general fund or the UFB, this is something that I was holding whatever money I have left to be paid in reserve to offset this position. I also talked with, um, Mike about this briefly. And he very much agreed that if we can put this small amount of money in, it will very much help the new grounds and maintenance person understand that complex to a higher degree, making their personal job, you know, transition to the grounds and maintenance a lot easier.
So the suggestion is twenty-six thirty on line twenty-two oh five on page two forty.
Well, and they called me up from Florida, wondering if they should start heading up to Maine now. Where's Marge Jones at? Do you need me? And I, I informed them that if you came up now, we'd probably have to plow out Marge Jones just to get access to it. So you're good where you are. But this is someone who has shown an extreme amount of dedication, not only to Marge Jones, but to the town as a whole.
And, and I don't disagree with that, but, you know, I'm gonna throw it there. If we take a couple of numbers that were already sort of placeholders and we massaged them already, in thirty ninety and fifty-three forty, and you lower thirty ninety to eight thousand and you lower fifty-three forty to six thousand, there's twenty-three hundred of the twenty-six you're looking for.
Well, let's put the twenty-six thirty in there and see, see where it goes first. Because we, we already had the discussion about those other numbers.
True, but I'm just trying to.
And we can revisit them once we, you know, have the numbers in. Do we have any other personnel?
Well, we, we haven't agreed on the twenty-six thirty yet.
We haven't agreed on the twenty-six thirty yet.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right, you, you've got other things to go back to.
Right. I think what Owen says makes sense. It's a one-year fund for this, um, with, to help with the transition. And it sounds like we're getting way more than twenty-six hundred dollars worth of value out of this individual.
He provides security there?
Let's hold this one.
I think he rinses out the trash cans when he's done. He compiles the trash cans. If, if anything happens over at that field, he meanders on over and takes a look.
Let's hold that one aside until we revisit our other flagged items. And there, aren't there two?
Well, I'd like to see where we are with LD one before we look at the flags.
Are we done with the personnel?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
So do you wanna know where you were?
So, yeah, let's see, let's see where we are. We've got the twenty-six thirty in there. Let's see where we are with the LD.
You're fifteen thousand, seven ninety over.
Fifteen thousand, seven ninety over.
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
So we wanna get down to fifteen, we gotta cut sixteen thousand someplace or add it to revenues. Yeah.
I'm looking for a cut before we add to the revenues, but.
I still, I made my pitch on the excise tax revenue. I think that estimate is too low.
Well, I mean, we, we just need to look a little more in-depth at what we've got.
Yeah.
How's this sound? Let's look for half of that cost in cuts and half of that in revenues.
We're fifteen thousand over.
Fifteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand, basically.
Fifteen, seven ninety.
So we're looking for eight thousand in cut and eight thousand in revenue.
And we also, this is also, uh, we haven't adjusted, haven't made any changes to the manager's suggestion on the use of the UFB.
Right. And I'd like to, if we cannot touch the UFB, that would be cool. If we have to, it is what it is. So what were our flags? Were the lime kilns, provider agencies, and what else?
Provider agencies, did they go in or not?
No.
No, they're out.
They're out.
Oh.
So the sixteen is with the, with them out?
Sure.
Right, 'cause I was told take them out.
Right.
So the provider agent, I, I mean, I'm gonna wanna revisit that at some point because I, I think the townspeople oughta be able to decide that.
Well, they ought to, yeah, well, that's a whole conversation we've chewed on earlier.
Yeah. And I think it.
Well, let's start at the beginning and look it through. See where we can come up with fifteen, seven. Hundred dollars here, five hundred dollars there.
I'm now looking at more like twenty-six thousand.
Well, no, I'm just, you know, start at the front, go to the back and.
As we're doing that, can I just throw out something that's a personal ideology? And I don't, I don't know how it jives with other folks. One of the things that's been interesting for me in my new positions of having to vote for things is sometimes you realize you're voting on something and the buck stops completely with you. And you have to make a very personal judgment call at that point in time. Other times, I voted for things that I'm not super comfortable with. But the reason I voted for it was I was handing it down to another more localized level of decision-making beyond that. So voting for something that gives the municipalities, on, you know, on the state end, you vote for something and it allows the municipalities to make an individualized decision on something that maybe if, if it came to me, I'd say no on the local end. But for a different municipality, maybe it makes sense for them and they wanna say yes. And I bring that up just as it relates to the citizenry and town meeting in that there may be some things in this budget that I'm not super comfortable with. But because I'm not the be-all, end-all determining factor of this and the citizens are, I wanna give them the opportunity to make a judgment call that is not mine, it's theirs. That was the whole point of that.
Yep, and I think that's reasonable.
So did the fifty-five hundred for the select board get zeroed out or is that still there?
Yeah, that's, that'll be an item for discussion at a later time.
I'm just trying to find, trying to find something for that fifteen, seven ninety.
Uh, I'm, I'm going through quickly and finding stuff. I go to page one-twenty-seven, generator seventy. I go to page one twenty-seven, Generator seventy-three forty-nine, and reduce that to twenty-five thousand. Think we can still buy the generator and use the reserve if we have to. There's five thousand.
I would agree with that. I'm willing to take that chance.
So, now we're down to ten thousand seven hundred and ninety.
Till we add in the Provider Agencies.
Sorry.
I'm just looking for stuff, trying to find stuff we flagged.
Let me look at my notes. Of course, a big place to go is Public Works.
Well, that's the biggest question.
It's where all the money is.
Well, I don't really want to go there, quite honestly, because I don't want to cut any more there. We're already a little below.
So, Megan, in Public Works Department, thirty-two ten Vehicle Repairs and Maintenance, we settled on seventeen thousand?
Hold on, just a second.
Just gotta get there.
Yeah, just 'cause...
That's what I have down, yeah?
Yes.
All right.
That would be, you want to let Ken know?
Let Ken know.
Oh, yeah.
Did we leave Lime... Oh, we're at a different one. We left Lime Kilns at nine, right? Sorry, we'll still stay with where we're at.
Page one ninety-nine, Public Works. I had advocated line fifty-three ninety, Winter Sand, raising to twenty-nine thousand. Guess if you want to, we can bring that back down to the twenty-seven five. I don't like that necessarily.
Sorry, what, Winter Sand, there we go.
Fifty-three ninety. Well, you know, it's the... Well, is that a department head? Was that Mike's recommendation, or is that you, Carol? Okay. So, if the department head and the town manager are okay with twenty-seven five, you know, who am I to say make it higher? So, I'd go with the twenty-seven five there.
I think it would really leave us really thin late in the year, but that's why I suggested it in the first place.
Well, it was an odd...
We're looking for stuff to cut.
We all agreed that it was an odd year, so...
Yeah, a lot of odd years.
You know, it will just mean, if it's wrong, it'll mean...
We have to overspend it.
We have to overspend it and come up with the money from someplace else.
Somewhere else, and, you know, that's what we do.
On page ninety-seven, on my revenues, if you look at interest on taxes, R zero one zero four. At the half-year, we're at twenty thousand five hundred. We've budgeted thirty-eight. Could we go to forty? There's another two thousand.
Holy wait.
Couple thousand bucks, we're getting close.
Our zero one zero four go to forty thousand? Does that seem reasonable, Linda?
We're already halfway there.
Yeah.
Actually, we're at forty-one, but...
So, there's another two.
Interest on taxes.
And where are we on the excise number right now?
Seven eighty-five.
Seven eighty-five, again.
Let's save that for the sacrificial last minute.
I felt quite comfortable with eight hundred there, but that would take care of most of it.
We're looking at seventy-two ninety. Seventy-two hundred and ninety more dollars.
But we've upped the interest on taxes to forty thousand?
Yeah.
I would certainly love to use the seventy-two ninety, and then consider upping the other one another fifteen. But I'd like to be able to find that without going to the sacrificial.
Well, I guess I don't consider... I consider that a good estimate. I'm not...
No, I mean, it's just, it's an easy out, so I'm trying...
Yeah, that's true, it is.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing, Ken, I'm just saying, I'd rather try to make a...
Okay.
But, yeah, she's just puking. Provider Agencies, I'd like to see it in, the citizens can reject it.
Well, I'm about ready to start puking myself.
Come on over to my...
Get me out of here.
Join the club. Thank you, everybody.
Good luck.
Good night.
Good luck.
Watch us online so we can go to six.
I will. I'll put it in the truck soon as I get there. Go text him and drive him.
The other bullet we have, by the way, is increasing the use of the UFB.
Yeah?
So, we're awfully close, and I think...
Thinking of making up easily with the UFB.
What about some of the reserve funds that we have?
Three thousand for the cruiser would take you... The three thousand reserve we put in there for the cruiser would get us just a shade over... No, actually, sorry, that would bring us down to forty-two ninety. No, I would offer up the three thousand for the police car, in the reserve.
Reserve, I mean, my calculations say we can...
Actually, we didn't put anything in that one.
You took it out.
We took it out, because we, as everybody agreed, we didn't need it, so...
What's the radio reserve, is twenty-five hundred?
Well, I don't want to touch that one. I think that that one, that we were given a lot of information about why we have to start saving for that. It just makes it harder in subsequent years if you don't put something in now.
How about Mount Pleasant Street?
Seventy-five back to seventy?
With, well, just with the...
Or sixty-five?
Well, go to zero, and I guess they had that pledge to do a bond.
But then it doesn't... The problem with it, and this is what I asked Mike the other night, is what does he need to keep it in good shape this year? I sort of, all along, figured we're gonna do a bond, but we can't get a bond in time for them to do construction this year. And he said he needed that money to keep the road from deteriorating this year. So, I'd rather not touch that one.
Send Mike a quick blurb and see if he could... Instead of the seventy-five from Mount Pleasant, if he could do sixty-five. I mean, I, you know...
Again, it...
Sort of nickel and diamond, but I...
It's all, in a lot of ways, it's smoke and mirrors. I mean, in the end, it is numbers, but, you know, if we don't have the money, it, you know, comes out of paper towels or something, you know?
Well, or is... No, no, I'm not gonna...
We always somehow find the money for things we need to do.
You know, I think that, you know, the seventy-five, seventy is an estimate. We don't have any hard and fast number.
Where would it work? So, the suggestion is to decrease the Mount Pleasant Street to sixty-five? Well, or to seventy, from seventy-five? I, you know...
I don't want to shortchange him, but, I mean, I'd go seventy, maybe. I think Rick's waiting a reply, perhaps.
And I know what Mike's reply will be. I'll do the best I can with whatever you give me. That's what he's gonna say.
That's what he's gonna say.
It's up to us to decide that. I know that Mike worked hard on his recommendations for the roadwork that needs to be done to keep our infrastructure in good shape, and we already cut his two eighty-five to the two sixty-four number. I'm a little hesitant to...
No, we didn't cut his two eighty-five. We brought his two fourteen that was recommended up.
No, his recommendation was two eighty-five. The manager cut it to two fourteen. So, we're already not giving him what he thought he needed.
I'm gonna get yelled at by Jeff if I don't sit down.
Yep.
I could feel that coming. You know, I think we're... You're so close, and, you know, where are we with the UFB, Megan?
Well, I think Ken's recommendation was to take thirty-seven thousand more out of it.
I think we're at seventy-two ninety over LD one at the moment.
Seven thousand two hundred and ninety.
So, if you took another thirty out of the UFB, what is... How does that...
Well, I don't particularly want to go there just yet.
But if you took the balance out of the UFB?
Well, actually, I mean, we said we were gonna find half in cuts and find half in revenues. We found the half in the cuts just about. If, because it was fifteen and some change, right?
It was fifteen seven ninety.
So, it's nearly sixteen, and we've got... How much have we cut?
Well, let's do one last one, and then I will...
Here's Mike's response. Yes, I will do what I can with it.
Well, okay, then.
At least it's allowing us to do some work.
All right, so let's lower that to seventy, which has given us five more, which makes us twenty-two hundred and ninety, which then I would agree to take and add more into the revenue by fifteen thousand up to eight hundred.
And then what do we want to do with the Provider Agencies? Because it's two to one now. I mean, as far as letting the town decide, I guess.
He snuck out of that.
Yeah, but we have to have all three of us agree now.
Right.
Ken, you can vote not to put it in now. The Budget Committee can make their recommendation to put it back, and theoretically, Owen could be back.
We can't even really vote on that, because we'd have to all agree to it.
Well, if we don't agree, it goes to zero, so that's where we are with it right now, so... So, where are we gonna grab the revenue from? The excise tax or the UFB?
Add fifteen hundred to your seven hundred and eighty-five thousand to make it eight hundred where you wanted to go.
Fifteen thousand, you mean?
Fifteen thousand.
And then we don't have to touch the UFB.
So, then we're at, we're thirteen thousand or so below
Right.
LD one.
How much of an increase was LD one this year? One point two, one point...
It was a hundred and ten thousand.
A hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And the thing we... And what does that come out as a percent, a tiny percent, isn't it?
Yeah.
Hundred and ten thousand.
Right now, you're over the tax cap by two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars.
So, if you increase the revenue for cars, twenty-two ninety.
That's in the...
If you increase that to eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand. I still think that's a reasonable number.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, and I'd happy to go up again next year, but I don't want to be...
You don't want to cut it too close.
Right. I mean, I talked about that with Linda, and, I mean, you theoretically could go up to two eight thirty or eight forty.
Right, right.
But that's borderline.
Yeah, I didn't want to go there. I've always advocated for trying to be reasonable with it.
That puts you twelve thousand under the tax cap limit, which would give you enough to put the Provider Agencies back.
If you wanted.
If you want.
I move the meeting adjourned?
Well, we have to actually open the meeting and then have a vote on the consensus numbers. So, we need the... Are we okay with stopping here?
Just remind me, because is there an opportunity to add, if there's enough pressure, to add back in the Provider Agencies?
We got the Select Board stipends, too.
April fifth, you guys meet again to review the Budget Committee's recommendations.
Oh, yeah, did we zero out the Select Board?
Yes. So, April fifth, you guys will meet again to review the recommendations from the Budget Committee, and then you have to do your warrant article votes, April ninth.
On April ninth, that's when we have to put the stuff on the warrant.
And I, and...
And we recommend, too.
And talking about the Provider Agencies, because I know it was a bugaboo with some of us that were there, about how there was no clear-cut directive as, this is how much you have.
Well, I'll disagree with that, but I don't want to have that discussion now.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, do what you feel best, or whatever the phrase was, but it wasn't like "thereabouts," I think was actually the phrase.
Yeah. You know, I'm gonna stick with it, because people I've talked to have supported me in it, so...
Well, I mean, we'll have to, we'll see what the Budget Committee recommends on that, and we'll have to have the discussion on April fifth, and then again, on when we put the articles on the warrant, and we'll have to have that discussion.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I guess at this point, do we want to add the... You don't want to add the Provider Agencies back in. Do you want to add the Select Board stipends back in?
I don't.
So, we have to go into a meeting to authorize...
Yeah, we need the numbers from Megan, for the...
Give me a piece of paper out right now. Do you have your motion?
I forget where it is.
I'll write it, read into the motion.
Is it seven o'clock already?
Nine o'clock.
My wife just texted.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she did.
We're not in cahoots.
Luckily, the good programs don't come on until nine.
Give her the... She'll write that.
We're twelve thousand... What the hell was it, twelve thousand under?
The, I didn't get everything I wanted, but...
But we got more? Well, no, we did, we did all right. I mean, we got some stuff that wasn't there.
I think so, yeah. But I, for some reason, I had it as today, but it's tomorrow.
What is the number that we're under, twelve thousand something? Yeah.
Alex Armitrot will be very happy. He'll probably come into my office.
We're probably still gonna have to have the LD one article on the warrant, because we don't exactly know where the LD one is gonna end up. We have an estimate right now, yeah.
Yeah, number one on the list, or as close to the top as it can be.
Well, I don't think it is, actually, right now, but it doesn't... I think, we checked with the lawyers, and I said that I don't think it makes any difference.
Well, it does, I think. I mean, that's, I mean, I would rather have...
Parents, if nothing else.
Right.
Okay, Jeff, are we on the air?
Yes.
All right, I will call this meeting of the Select Board to order. We have one agenda item to vote on the proposed budget at this point, and I'll just do the motion myself, I guess. I move proposed expenditures of five million nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, accompanied by revenues, projected revenues of two million seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, and a net municipal budget of three million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars for the fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
I just don't like that six-six-six number.
Do I hear a second?
Just look at this a minute. Boy, it'd make it awfully easy to make that six million. All right, never mind, I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Well, there was a moment in time when I thought I'd like to pull a filibuster and talk about this before my vote. And I realize that everybody has places to go and things to do, and you're all looking at me now like, put your hand up, Mark, and vote for it.
No, we're here in for the penny, in for the pound.
I'm in favor of it, which makes that unanimous, then.
Okay. That's a three to nothing vote.
You are.
There are no other items on the agenda, so I will undertake the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I guess I made the motion to adjourn then, second. All in favor of adjourned?
Roger that.
Thank you all.
For the Ambulance Review Committee meeting.